Good evening, good evening everyone if we could please settle down. We'd like to start the Spokane City Council legislative agenda for this evening. And I will start with the reading, as always, the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, we acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people. And that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Fister, if you call the roll.
Council President Wilkinson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Tonight, we have two board and commission appointments, two for the Ethics Commission, Dennis Looney and Rockwell Rutter. And for the Parks Board, we have one appointment, Lee Williams. We have one public comment on boards and commission. Edwin L. Andrews II, please come on down.
I live at 1503 East Wabash and I have a business in Spokane. And I'd like to speak about the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission should be made up of bipartisan people. And it's come to my conclusion that it's a far leftist group now that's been approved by the mayor. You would think the mayor would at least give some representation for the conservative side of things. And then that's not what's happened here. I mean, she stacked the deck so far to the left side, it's leaning so bad that even the Titanic would sink. So, anyway.
Please excuse me Larry.
Yeah, sure.
We have a full house and I am asking for stability and respect tonight. If you're unable to do that, please leave the chambers. Go ahead Larry.
So, I would ask that a further review done of these last two people before you vote. It's probably a waste of my breath speaking because you've already had your meeting today. But I am speaking because ethics is important, but when it's so one-sided, it's unbelievable. Okay? And that's not right, okay? The Ethics Board should not have a political agenda. It should be a group of people that, that on both sides of the fence are there, equally, equal representation. And that's not what has happened here, okay? And I think, I think we need to come up with a better way of electing these people than to have a left-winging mayor do all the voting. And that's, 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 that's only fair. I mean, because what we're trying to do here is have balance. And, and we don't have any balance left here anymore. And we can see what's happened. And it's five to two vote nearly every time unless it's something simple. And, and that's a shame. That's really a shame. And, and I've seen it happen here more and more. And, but remember, we all get a vote again next year, and this, this fall. And, and when you do a far-left thing all the time, a lot of us know what we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you Larry. Any council commentary? I will say that these people came before us, we had the opportunity to interview them, all of us on this day. In the application packet, they were not identified as Democrat, Republican, or Independent. I could not personally tell you how these people vote, personally based on their applications. So going forward, I would encourage you all to apply when there's openings. Council, Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's true. They, they don't give us their voting record, but typically how this works is the people who, you know, the administration in charge, and again, it goes both ways, but the administration in charge knows who that they're putting forward onto these boards, and so they might not explicitly say how they're gonna vote, but they know, they know. So, yeah, I think it's, I don't think it's intellectually honest to say we don't know. I think we absolutely do know.
Councilmember Klitsky?
I take issue with that comment. We do look at their background as far as their work experience and what they've said about their community volunteering and other things, but this is a board where people look at their expertise and that is how they are chosen. And there's no reason to think that they're doing any other kind of political litmus test.
Thank you. No commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? That passes, thank you. Onto the consent agenda for this evening. But before I get started, yes, before we go into our consent agenda, I would like to first of all thank Councilmember Dillon for running the meeting last week while I was out on Family Matters. Thank you Councilmember Dillon. And y'all got out early, so I hope it's not me. That being said, based on what happened yesterday in our sistering city with the loss of two firefighters, we would like to take a moment of silence out of respect for them, if you Thank you. Our prayers are with the family and the families and that community. Onto the consent agenda, we have two people willing to speak. Derek, so let me preface tonight, there are 185 people who want to speak tonight. So, please be succinct in your comments, and if someone has already said what you're gonna say, please take that into consideration. Derek Azaro, and after Derek will be Edwin Andrews.
Sorry, Council President, quickly, was it 100 or was it 185?
Those are the numbers I got from my office director.
87 individuals signed up and then some people signed up for multiple items, so we're like at 130.
Derek Azaro, here representing all the children of Spokane that are the least served and least represented. Real quick, the mayor's budget. Your party department is looking for equipment and you're having a hard time paying for it. She already took some money out of the Parks Department, 100,000 or whatever it was, don't know if she gave it back. How about we dip into the water department, because that's part of their tools? How about if we dip into the sewer department? How about if we dip into the waste management, waste management? See if we can take a little bit of money out of their funds to help buy the equipment for the power department. You're obviously short in the community, so that's my comment, just to save time. Thank you.
Thank you Derek.
Larry Andrews, I'm, live here in Spokane, and I also have a business here in Spokane. And I wanna, I believe this has to do with the mayor's budget, right? Is that correct, Mr. President Wilkinson?
There is part of that, yes, that's part of the budget.
Okay. But you know when I went to review the budget, there was nothing there. I didn't see a breakdown on anything to speak of. And so how can I ask you to approve something when I don't have the documentation of where the money's going? Okay? And it looks like to me it's covered up again, okay? And we got this big pot of money that she wants, but where are we spending it? And how's it being spent? Okay? It's, it's a tragedy. I mean, anybody that runs a budget should know where the money's going. That's why we put them in charge. But we don't have anybody here giving us any idea where all these millions are going. And that is wrong. And that's why Commerce got so far in debt and had so many problems as when she ran Commerce. They didn't even know where the money was going. And the same thing's gonna happen here in this city. And we're gonna go bankrupt probably because she spends more than she has. And it continually happens, got by in the state because we have a lot of extra bonus money, but we don't have that kind of money here in this city. And she needs to spell out where this money's going. And I would hope that you would postpone this vote tonight on this budget until we get some documentation where this money's going. Thank you.
Any other council commentary on the consent agenda? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Voice hold on consent.
Well, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Abstentions, the consent agenda is passed. Thank you council all, it's gonna get us all on record tonight.
Ms. Fister?
Council President?
Yes.
Actually, before we jump into this, I'm gonna actually make a motion that we defer C-36710 a week.
I'll second that.
If I could speak to it real quick.
All right, Councilman Cathcart?
So this was the issue I brought up two weeks ago. There's absolutely no information in the ordinance, the special budget ordinance in front of us. It simply says that we're gonna allocate 730,000 for contractual services. There is an unattached PowerPoint that's not a part of the packet that does have additional details, but it does not exist either in the briefing paper nor in this SBO. And you can easily see the difference by looking at the additional SBOS on our, in our packet here and see how they are very specifically delineating where the dollars are going. And this one, we failed to do that. So I'm asking us to defer a week to give the administration an opportunity, which I thought they were actually gonna do already, to bring an amendment that would address the specificity around how we're allocating these dollars.
Council President?
Yes.
We don't meet in a week, we meet in two weeks.
Two weeks, well, the next meeting, thank you, two weeks.
Happy July 14th. Any other council commentary? All those in favor of deferral until July 14th, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
No.
Let's do that. All those opposed? Councilman Cathcart, Councilmember Bingle, Councilmember Navarrete?
And Klitsky, I believe was the aye there.
We can, we can redo it. Let's just redo it.
All right. We do want to vote. All those in favor of the deferral, please indicate by saying aye. Or voting yes. All right, prepare to vote. Yes.
Betsy, how did you vote?
I vote no. I didn't get my, I was operating equipment.
Oh. Wait a minute.
Anyway, I vote no. So, the motion to defer, Councilmember Klitsky, you voted in favor if you were, for the deferral, if you weren't aware.
For a week? Yeah, two weeks.
You voted in favor of the deferral? Okay, deferral, approve four to three, that'll come back on July 14th.
Wait, I thought it was three to four.
How about we raise our hands?
Okay. All those in favor, in favor of the deferral until July 14th, please raise your hand. Again, we will not allow disruption of the meeting. If you cannot accommodate us, please leave the space. We have a lot of business. The deferral passes. Thank you. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C-36711 amending ordinance number C-36626 entitled in part, an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to purchase equipment and training for an explosive detection K-9 and declaring an emergency.
This is about the K-9?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Sunshine Wigan, Spokane, I support this, I highly support this. I think this is a good thing for, to protect our cops. And I wasn't sure if there's already one in place though, that was the only question I had about it, but I do think that this is a good tool for them. I just, I really, really support protecting our cops. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Tumush?
Yes, I support her.
All right, thank you. Any council commentary, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just real quick, I'll just say, this has been a little bit of a conversation for a couple of years because we've been without an explosive detection dog for a while. But ultimately, I think we'll actually find savings by doing this because we, it's not like we haven't utilized these explosive dogs. We've had to bring them in from other jurisdictions and, and pay, pay for that service. There's also, I think, a little bit of an economic development benefit too, because a lot of major shows, concerts, and things like that actually require the use of an explosive detection dog. And making that a little bit more available in the community for those sorts of things is gonna be beneficial for attracting more of those sorts of shows and whatnot. So I think there's a lot of really positive stuff. Obviously, public safety is the fact, the key factor here, and having the access to this dog that we don't necessarily have to share outside of our jurisdiction is gonna be super helpful, so I'm very happy to support.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? I support this as well. I asked, and I wasn't joking, we already have a dog and could it be cross-trained? And they were very specific that their dog is trained for one specific purpose and cannot be cross-trained. So, prepare to vote. My button's not working. All those in favor, please indicate by, raise your hand. 70, thank you.
Ordinance C-36712 amending ordinance number C-36626 entitled in part, an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to accept grant funding from the YWCA for domestic violence protection and prevention and declared an emergency.
There is two public comment, Sunshine Wigan and Larry Andrews.
Sunshine Wigan, Spokane, are we putting the word emergency on there to like get a certain type of funding, extra funding or something? Because domestic violence is never gonna go away, it's always been there. And yes, I mean, it's an emergency, it's a crisis in the situation, but I don't see it as a long-term emergency personally, because it's something that we're always gonna have to deal with. And I think it's something that we just need to, like, kinda maintain, you know, helping in that situation. And I just highly do not support the YWCA housing specialists that they have because they do not help the mentally ill that have borderline personality disorder. So there is a big flaw in that system of this system. But other than that, I'm just, we keep calling everything emergency to get this extra funding. And, and so I just want people to be aware, they put the word emergency just to get more funding than they already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Andrews, I live in Spokane, and I also have a business here in the great district of District One, thank you. I'm a real supporter for Hope House, and I'm hoping maybe some of this funding could be used at Hope House to keep Hope House for the women and the children in our city that encounter this domestic violence. Women and children need a place to go to be safe, okay? And, and we, we need to have this place for them. And, and I'm hoping this funding would go to that. So the, so people know where they can go and have protection and get the counseling and help that they need to get them back where they need to be. And they, they need a place that, that they can feel safe, that people will listen to them, help them, and get themselves back on their feet. And it's very important. Domestic violence is a terrible thing, and, and it should never, should never happen. I mean, I was brought up that you treat a woman like a lady, always, no matter what, okay? And that's very important. And the kids need to see that. The kids need to see that the woman is supported, okay? And with all the drugs and the alcohol and stuff that goes on anymore, if the kids don't see that there's support there for them, what are they gonna do? Where are they gonna go? We've gotta have this here in this city. And Hope House was supposed to be this place. And here again, I hear the mayor wants to move men in there. I, I just can't believe it. I mean, that used to be the shack. The shack went down, great eating spot, and they built Hope House where the shack was. And we need this desperately, okay? Women need this place. If they feel this way, they need a place to go where they can take the kids and, and be there with them, okay? And it's, I can't express how much this needs to happen in this city. We have to have this place, and I hope you make it happen. There's nothing worse than this. And when a family breaks up like this because of domestic violence, we just gotta have this place. Thank you.
Thank you Larry. Any council commentary? I just wanna be specific, the Hope House changed their model. The city had nothing to do with the direction and the services they are deciding to offer. That was the decision of their board, and we respect that. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36714 amending ordinance number C-36626 entitled in part, an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to transfer funding from the Office of Civil Rights, Equity, and Inclusion to municipal court for building repairs and maintenance and declaring an emergency.
We have two public comments, Sunshine and Larry? Larry, if you wanna speak, you wanna come on down on this one?
I wanted to see more detail, excuse me. Larry Andrews, I live in this city and I have a business in the city and in the great district of District One. I, I wanted to see the details of where, of what was happening here. And I, I couldn't see the details. And so I, I really wonder what's going on. And without the details, I don't know how you can make these type of decisions. I, when I looked... I, when I looked in the nine hundred and some pages of what was put in front of us tonight, and I'm going to make a suggestion to you people, is that these right here, the things that we're talking about, out of those nine hundred pages, maybe there could be a secondary paper that explains what's going on instead of we just bury it in here, okay? It becomes very hard for even me as a businessperson to figure out what we're doing here. And I, I mean, I've got some college education, and I even have a hard time with what's going on. So I can't imagine somebody that just looks at some of this stuff can even have a limp of an idea of what's really happening. And, but I think we need much more details than what we're getting, and I don't think we're getting it. And especially with all the money that's being spent here. And we need justification of what we're doing. And if you can't put it in writing to the people that are paying the bill, there's something wrong, okay? And that's what, that's the biggest thing I've got. I think, I think your legislative ideas here broke down, but then I think we need an additional paper that goes with these, not the nine hundred pages of documentation, but a shorter form that expresses, gets the key points of what we're trying to get across here. So the citizens have an idea of really what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary? Councilmember Kat Card?
Yeah, this one, I am going to support it, but it does really frustrate me because at our, in our budget discussions last fall, you know, we had looked at the Office of Civil Rights and tried to make some determinations. Okay, are all these positions going to be filled? Are they necessary? And the council, kind of will of the council was to move forward as it was. And so now we're in a situation where we've got these salary savings, and we are putting them into what I would argue is an important place. The accessibility at municipal court is really important, but that's not really what the dollars were intended for specifically. And when you're dealing with multimillion-dollar deficits, as we are, have been, and continue to be, all of these salary savings adds up to something real that can curtail your deficit. But we often, and this is a good example of it, we often take these on in a siloed way where you really aren't thinking about the holistic view of our budget, of the situation that we're in, how these dollars might apply differently, be prioritized differently. And so it's a frustration of mine, and that has a lot to do with the process, it has a lot to do with the culture, that unfortunately is very, very difficult to change and shift. But ultimately, the need for the ADA access at municipal court, the ability for folks to be able to understand what's happening is really, really important. So I am going to support this because ultimately, we would be funding it, I think, regardless. But the way in which we are coming to this decision, I do not agree with. And I think that we need to be much better stewards and thinking about a holistic view of our budget every time we're making these sorts of decisions.
Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Emergency ordinance C 36700 titled Safe and Welcome in Spokane, expanding protections against warrantless searches from immigration enforcement in designated non-public areas, amending section 12.05.005 and declared an emergency.
We have a number of public testimony, so I'm going to read off three names so you can be prepared to come down. Derek Azaro, Tyler Tumush, and Will Neville, and after that, Jennifer Banks.
Before I speak, can I have a clarification? Is the parks still a part of this now?
No.
So the word wasn't put back in?
No.
Okay.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I can help answer that. Parks was removed from the ordinance. It's only areas in public right of way.
Okay. Again, Derek Azaro, supporting all the underserved children of the city. Looking at this, I hope you all realize that you're, in essence, asking unionized city employees, SPD, and also federal and state, these are unionized workers. You're going to ask them to basically go against the law. I realize this is for, you know, warrantless searches and all that, but if you really look into it, don't look at that. Look at designated non-public areas. It really opens the door for any nonprofit or service provider to also ask for a part of the park or part of the city blocked off. This is not only just temporary, it could be permanent. So it opens the door for anyone else to ask for a designated area to be cordoned off. You could have one of the providers ask for part of, you know, a city area. They want to set up a homeless camp there. This would kind of authorize that because it would be considered a non-designated area, and the PD can't go in. We already went through Camp Hope, we saw what happened in that disaster. You know, the sheriff was kicked out, and PD was kicked out trying to go after problems there. So don't look so much at, you know, the warrantless searches. Look deeper than that into that it does open up that door that any non-designated area could block the law enforcement to come in. So that's kind of the center-up that I'm looking at, whether it's true or not, but basically, you're saying that you want to support people breaking the law, be protected, and law enforcement's not allowed to come in. So I think you have a lot of issues in Spokane that, where, you know, the PD is not really looked upon well. It's kind of an anti-police neighborhood throughout the city. But this ordinance, like I said, it's, this was on last, on the sixteenth it was on here, and now all of a sudden, it's back as an emergency ordinance. So you really can't dig into it because now it's on as an emergency ordinance, just like it's always done. Just about any time they want to, the five of you want to pass something to the mayor, you guys throw an emergency ordinance on it, so that's the end of discussion, pretty much. That brings the vote right up front. So I would say defer this even further, to have more time to talk about this and get deeper into it. And let's have some legal advice. I don't mean the city attorney, she works for the mayor, or he works for the mayor, excuse me. I'm saying outside council, an outside group, whatever. Look at, look at this, all this, and put a legal description to it. How does this going to affect legally the city? You're going to end up with a pile of lawsuits now because you're going to have people might be at an event or something. Like I said, they don't know what's going on, and all of a sudden, they're caught between protesters showing up and what you've already experienced in the city.
Thank you, Derek. Your time is up. Tyler Tumush, then Will Neville, and Jennifer Banks.
I look different because I forgot my glasses, so there's probably nineteen of you up there right now, if you include Mr. Wright and Jacoby. So Tyler Tumush, District One. I'm going to disagree with this one, probably for different reasons than maybe most people in here, but I'm just going to go ahead and read a few what-ifs if this were to pass. What if ICE challenges the ordinance or subpoenas any city staff for access to these public rights of way, which can create legal conflict and monetary cost to the city? This has already occurred in L.A. and San Francisco that have similar policies. What if dangerous individuals exploit these protections? These individuals could attend one of these events under the assumption that they won't be detained, which creates a blind spot for enforcement. Now, I know not everybody here that's undocumented, or anywhere for that matter, is a bad person, but there are those nefarious types somewhere. That's the what-if. What if the city is sued by a federal agency or private party for obstruction? That's always a possibility. This can result in costly litigation for Spokane taxpayers, including defending against claims that the city prevented lawful federal action. They always find a way. What if there is a public safety incident tied to someone the feds were trying to detain? If someone who would have been arrested causes harm at an event, the city could be accused of enabling that risk. And finally, what if ICE shifts their enforcement tactics? Rather than reduce activity, this not only paints a target on the back of the city, but agents could become less transparent, wear plain clothes or surveil from a distance if they're not already. So in my opinion, I think this just paints it more of a target on the city's back. We could possibly lose more federal funding than we already are, but that's in your hands. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Neville? And after Will, Jennifer Banks, and then Ari Dean.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Will Neville. I live in District One. I'm the, with the Communist Party of Eastern Washington. I'm here tonight to voice my support for this ordinance, C 36700, which is titled Safe and Welcome in Spokane. Over the past several weeks, we've seen Customs and Border Patrol agencies and immigrations and Customs Enforcement officers terrorize communities from L.A. to Spokane here. Here locally, we've seen a video of Border Patrol agents attack and arrest Martin Diaz on his own property. Many of us have responded to when, you know, ICE agents, you know, detained Ben Stucker's legal guardian. President Trump is working to fulfill many of his campaign promises by detaining and deporting many without due process. President Trump and Vice President Vance ran a fear-based campaign, scapegoating immigrants and the poor for the nation's plight. Much of this is reminiscent of the rise of Hitler in Nazi Germany, where he scapegoated Jews for the issues of the country, which is wrong. Fascism is rooted in a culture of blame, and it only pits workers against one another. Meanwhile, the contradictions of capitalism are intensifying, and with this dictatorship of monopoly capital, it offers no solutions to working people. In Spokane here, the motto is, "We all belong." We need to foster an inclusive environment where all people feel like they can belong without the fear of harassment, detainment, and deportation. I also think it's worth noting on this, just thinking about it, and how this passing would impact, you know, the coming SBS bond for revitalizing our neighborhoods and parks. What good are brand-new parks and revitalized communities if masked unidentified ICE bounty hunters can kidnap our neighbors and friends from those parks? Kids from all walks of life deserve to safely play in our community and our parks, and families deserve to feel safe, free of harassment for those, free of harassment from who they are and where they're from. We all deserve to live in a, live in a community where the people can have a democratic say in helping determining outcomes and not where, you know, billionaires, developers have a say in determining those outcomes. Thanks for considering passing this ordinance. Have a good night.
Thank you. Jennifer Banks, Ari Dean, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Jennifer, I'm Ari.
Okay, go ahead.
Jennifer's my friend, she's not going to speak. Okay. Can I start?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ari. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I live in Spokane, and I am in support of the Safe and Welcome in Spokane ordinance. The immigrants who live in Spokane deserve to feel safe here. They should be able to attend public events without the threat of being torn from their families looming over their heads. The false narrative that immigrants are dangerous is a racist lie. Immigrants are parents who want better lives for their children, or in the case of people like Martin Diaz, people whose parents wanted better lives for them. It is not a crime to want a better life. Immigrants work hard, and they see very little reward. They face horrible working conditions as companies take advantage of their vulnerable status and exploit them for cheap labor. If you are looking for someone to blame for your job insecurity, blame the CEOs that look for every way possible to cut corners at the expense of working-class people. Millions of people in this country are struggling to make ends meet, immigrants and U.S.-born citizens alike. The billionaires want us to blame each other so we don't talk about who is really causing all of our problems. But who do you think has more power over the cost of rent and groceries and health care? An immigrant who works on an orchard, or the billionaire CEOs and the politicians that they pay off? The truth is that all working-class people are suffering at the hands of a system that is rigged in favor of the rich and the rich only. As a working-class citizen of this country, I have more in common with an undocumented immigrant from Latin America, or Africa, or anywhere else than I will ever have with people like Elon Musk or Trump. The billionaires know that, and they use racist rhetoric to sow fear and distrust between citizens and non-citizens to weaken the working-class movement. When we believe their racist lies, we play right into the hands of the rich CEOs and the politicians that exploit all of us for their own profit. So the egregious violence that ICE brings into our communities, I believe, is a morally unacceptable misuse of taxpayer money. We should be funding housing and health care, not violent raids and kidnappings. For these reasons, I am in support of this ordinance, and I also invite everyone to participate in a National Day of Action tomorrow in solidarity with immigrants, and you can find me for more details. And I would like to use the rest of my time to talk about Martin Diaz, a member of the community here in Spokane who was detained by ICE on April 29th. His green card petition was approved on April 11th. His wife Kendall Diaz has been doing everything she can to keep him here, and we are hoping that some of our elected officials will be able to intervene in his case. He's lived in Spokane for nearly two decades. He's lived in this country since he was a baby. He is a member of our community. He deserves to be here. This is the only home he's ever known, and they're trying to take him away from his family and his friends, and we just don't think that is right. There is a petition to sign. So anybody listening, if you want to know more about Martin Diaz and sign that petition, you can find me for that as well. So I stand with immigrants. I believe our immigrant community deserves to feel safe, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sunshine, then Jennifer Mesa, and then Dylan Wilk.
Sunshine Wigan, Spokane, when I do my speeches, the first question I always get asked, "What do you think about immigration? You're homeless." I'm like, gosh, that's a really hard one. Everything done, you know, I think everything in moderation is good. I absolutely believe that. But when you come in here illegal, that makes me mad. But on the fact that we're going to give them a specialized part of a park for them, that's like segregation in my eyes. And I think that the federal government can still come in and say, "Hey, your ordinance, whatever." And I don't believe that this, I think this is more like, like, "Give me your votes" or something. I don't know. Like, I just, I have a lot of immigrant friends that came here the right way, and they're very, they'd taken me into their houses, Cubans, et cetera, when nobody else would. And so, but then at the same point, I did turn in a house full of illegal immigrants and showed them the text saying they were illegal and where they were from. And so this is a very touchy subject for everyone. And I do believe that if you want to come into our, our America, and these streets are not paved with gold, don't expect an easy road, but when it comes down to these jobs and things like that, the white people are not going and saying, "Hey, I'll go pick your cherries." These guys are willing to work really hard for what they have, and I really respect that. I really love our immigration plan that, when it's done right. And I believe in naturalized immigrants, too. I strongly support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Mesa? Let's see here.
Jennifer, if you're online, can you press star three to raise your hand?
If not, we'll go.
I see Jennifer.
All right.
Okay, Jennifer, you should be able to unmute by hitting star six. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Mesa, and I'm the executive director for Latin Open Spokane. And I'm writing, I'm really sorry in support of this ordinance because right now, our community has been under attack, targeted, and surveilled by ICE. And it's not only ICE, well, not only ICE at this point, we're seeing the surveillance coming in from different agents, from U.S. Marshal to ICE to Border Patrol. I mean, the immigration enforcement, we're seeing reach extensions even to the IRS. And we have been targeted as an organization. We're seeing how local businesses are getting targeted, and the people within our community are also targeted. These are racial profiling, this is driving well brown, and straight up just coming in to ask about your nationality and trying, and taking people to the point where people are taken, and sometimes we don't hear for days where they've been, if they've been detained, where they are. We're seeing community members who are being picked up, and they just disappear. I've heard of cases of people that are picked up at the gas station, their car, their belongings, everything is there. Workers leaving at 5:00 a.m. to go to work disappear, again, their car, their keys in the ignition, and they just disappear. We have seen more in detention for deportation in the last six months than what I have in my five years working in, within this organization, and also within my decade of work of deportation defense. So I want to urge the city of Spokane to really consider how it's going to create safety for the people who are here, the workers that are here, the families that are here and are contributing to this society, who are living, residing in Spokane. We deserve safety. When our community members get picked up, they get taken out of their homes, they get taken out of their work, and and they get dragged to other state lines to go to Kootenai Detention Center. We need to create safety for people to just be. We have a lot of families who are really worried about just going outside. Our program, El Mercado Cultural Market, that has been in the works, providing free, fresh cultural food every year to this community. We... Last year, we just provided 98,000 pounds of free, fresh cultural food. This year, we're getting closer to 140,000 pounds of free, fresh food, which we provide for free for everyone. At the same time, the market is a place where people can... Entrepreneur businesses can showcase their products. We have many cultural programs that we use within the city of Spokane and the parks. We pay for the permits every month. We pay for the insurance every month. And all of our events generate income. They generate a lot of opportunity for families to access free, fresh cultural food and also...
And Jennifer, your time is up. Thank you. Next is Dylan Wilks, Catherine Bozan, and Richard Cook.
Hi.
Go ahead.
My name is Dylan Wilke. I am a resident of Spokane, District Three. I am speaking in support of this ordinance. My friends and associates and comrades have spoken to the more business side of things. I think we can say so. What I would like to say is, from a deeply personal side of things, as a host parent for exchange students and currently au pairs, I've had a young woman from Mexico ask me if it is safe to leave the house. This is a young woman who came here to better herself, improve her English so she could find better employment as an electrical engineer. She is the absolute best of us. And the fact that the Trump administration is with great aggression, expanding revocation of green cards, visas, et cetera, does create the idea that no one is safe. And I did not know what to tell her. I think that it's an imperative that this city take a stand against that and actually stand up for civil rights of these people, stand up for opportunity, and make sure that everyone feels safe here and everyone can strive to better themselves. That's about all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine? Catherine Bozan? And after Catherine, Richard Bocook? And then Luis Manriquez.
And Catherine, if you're online?
Did you say Catherine Bozan?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kat. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm speaking today in support of the Safe and Welcome in Spokane Ordinance. I'm a child of an immigrant family. My parents came to the United States in the '90s, fleeing Ukraine after the collapse of the Soviet Union. They arrived with minimal belongings, a poor grasp of the English language, and a belief in the American dream. And indeed, through years of hard work, they were able to build some semblance of financial security and laid the foundation for my and my sibling's success as American citizens. But for immigrant families today, that dream is slipping further and further out of reach. Instead of valuing the enormous contributions immigrants make, whether through underpaid labor and essential jobs or through the cultural richness they bring to our communities, this country increasingly turns its back on them. Whenever the United States faces economic or geopolitical instability, it turns to a familiar playbook, scapegoating the most vulnerable. It's easier to blame your immigrant neighbor who is simply working hard to survive, just like the rest of us, than to confront the reality that the system is the problem, a system which serves the wealth and the power of the few at the expense of everyone else. To justify that scapegoating, those in power rely on manufactured narratives, such as the lie painting immigrants as criminals. The reality, backed by decades of data, is that immigrants commit crimes at a significantly lower rate than native-born citizens. This narrative is deliberately designed to make people feel unsafe and manufacture consent for the violence of ICE detention centers and deportation. And let's be honest, what could be more ironic than a settler colonial nation deciding who does and doesn't belong here? This country was stolen from native people through violence, displacement, and genocide. Nearly every one of us, unless we are indigenous, descends from immigrants. What gives us the right to police borders and decide who gets to exist safely on this stolen land? I believe that future generations of Americans will look back at ICE with the same horror and shame we feel towards other atrocities in our nation's history. This ordinance may only be one tiny step towards justice, but it's a necessary one. Even if it only limits ICE's ability to target people in public spaces, that still means fewer opportunities for them to terrorize our community. Every immigrant deserves the same chance my parents had. Every child, whether born here or not, deserves to feel safe and welcome in this city. We can't allow the dehumanizing conversation about the so-called legality of people's existence to distract us from the truth. We're all human beings who deserve dignity, safety, and peace. I urge this council to pass this ordinance and work towards making Spokane a true sanctuary city. Let's send a clear message. We will not cooperate with cruelty. We will not be complicit in injustice. Everyone, regardless of the circumstances of their birth, is welcome here. Our safety should not depend on our citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Bocook, Luis Manriquez, and then Larry Andrews.
The only thing that I want to make sure that these areas you're talking about, that it doesn't interfere with individual freedom of speech or First Amendment activity. Other than that, I personally think that any time these guys violate rights, I think the police or the sheriff should arrest them. Like, when I seen that picture of them breaking somebody's car window, the police should have arrested them for violating Fourth Amendment rights. They never give warrants out that are legal, and they hide their faces. They're not transparent. They're paralleling Nazi Gestapo Germany, and nothing is no accountability for them. And so I think that we should protect the immigrants as much as possible because one of the biggest constitutional amendments that they're violating is the violation of due process. And people say, "Well, they don't deserve due process because they're illegal." Well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't say that in our Constitution. It says no person. It says that right there. That means everybody that is in this country has the right to due process, and people need to get educated on that and quit thinking that the other person that's telling this not is... They're in the right, because they're not. Just remember our First Amendment rights. Nazi individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Manriquez, Edwin, Larry Andrews, and Jay McPherson.
Good evening, City Council. So I wanted to start by saying that I am the proud grandson of an illegal immigrant. He did not come into this country as an illegal immigrant. He came as part of the Breslau Program when the United States wanted Mexicans here to work in the fields and support them. And when the country decided to discard him and turn its back on him, he stayed. And because of that action, America is better for it. My mother, Dr. Manriquez, works on the cutting edge of cancer therapeutics and companion diagnostics and has helped extend the lives of millions of people around the country. I work three jobs as a physician, caring for the underserved and rural members of this community. And in that, I am in no way special because immigrants work very hard to support their families and their community. You know, in the other Washington, they feel entirely comfortable trampling on the rights on which this country is founded, and they are turning and seeking to spend more money turning ICE into a masked militia. Fortunately, in Washington State, we know better. I'm glad to live in Washington, where we have the Keep Washington Working Act. I'm glad to live in Spokane, where we affirmed, this council affirmed its support for the Keep Washington Working Act. And I would like to say that this ordinance is what supporting that statewide legislation means for Spokane. That's what it looks like in Spokane. So thank you to the council members who vote in support of this. And for those of you who do not, I pray that you are never in a situation where you are hunted by masked vigilantes. But if you are, I would be there to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry, Jay McPherson, and then Wendy Fishburne.
Larry Andrews, citizen of Spokane and a businessperson and a taxpayer. We've heard a lot of stories tonight. But the first story is more than 14 million people came across the border. And they came across the border illegally. That's the first problem. The problem was allowed to keep happening and keep happening, and the administration didn't do anything to slow it down. So then, things became to such a point that our funds can only do so much. I mean, you had the city of New York nearly going bankrupt because of all the immigrants that were put in there. And I have no problem with immigrants, immigration, as long as they do it legally, okay? Because they become a legal person, just like my family immigrated here and many of yours. And they did it legally. They came, they did, and they produced, okay? And they produced revenue for all of us and brought to it prosperity for most, more than what they were. And anyway, I... And you want to know why the people wear masks that are doing this? It's because there's been threats against their family, that they're going to shoot them and kill them, okay? These are the kind of people, a large percentage, that came across the border. We have known Iranians here hit squads here in the United States that are being... Sitting here. We have known Chinese here that have bought land next to our air bases and our military facilities. And if you've seen what happened in Russia when they released all the drones to the airbase, okay? Believe it. It's going to happen. And the only way we can control this is through proper immigration. And first, we need to get legal immigration where people have been proven that they want to become an American and that they can produce. There's too many out here with bad ideas that are going to cause huge devastation. And we need to protect the people that are here right now so we can provide for immigration in here legally. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, Jay McPherson, Wendy Fishburne, and then David Brookbank.
Jay, I see you online, and you are unmuted. Go ahead and start whenever you're ready. Jay, I'm having a tough time hearing you in chambers. I will come back to you. I'm going to help you troubleshoot.
Wendy, if you come on down.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Wendy Fishburne, and I actually wasn't planning on speaking on this one, but the events yesterday kind of stirred me to give a response. So I get what you're trying to do with this. I understand. I have lots of compassion for our migrant community, especially, you know, our legal migrants. I know that there's a problem with our naturalization situation. We really need to fix that because these are hard workers and good families. But I think there are other ways to provide these protections, and this ordinance is missing the point on what our public parks are for. I read this about parks, so that's how I'm responding to this. Our public spaces are not for encampments, and they're not for potential chop zones where law enforcement isn't allowed. Our public parks are for our kids, our families, basketball, fountains, and family outings. Giving one person the right to temporarily or permanently reallocate our parks as non-public is a crazy violation of public trust. We pay for parks to have open, safe, public access where law enforcement is welcome. In light of the incredible tragedy that happened yesterday, I think we need to be really careful about the messaging we're sending about our first responders and law enforcement. They're the good guys, keeping us safe from bad actors. I want our law enforcement to be able to keep us safe in our public parks during public activities. It's always so reassuring to see them around at the Fourth of July, just providing a safe and present deterrence for bad actors, which I don't think are migrants, just so you know, bad actors. We need to be really careful about how we're messaging appreciation for or demonizing that thin blue line that stands between good and evil, between order and anarchy, chaos, and lawlessness. They stand in the gap for us, and we should stand in the gap for them. Take a beat on this one, if you would, please, and consider other options. Designating law enforcement-free zones is an invitation for bad actors, potentially endangering the very people you're trying to protect.
And thank you, Wendy. Your time is up. David Brookbank, Jerry Quinn. And do we have Jay online?
Jay, could you try one more time unmuting? I see you're unmuted, but we can't hear you in the room. Go ahead and try speaking. Okay, Jay, I'm going to have you give me a call, and we'll put you on speaker through my phone.
Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Spokane resident David Brookbank, former US Vice Consul in Mexico and El Salvador, and a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation, here in support of the Safe and Welcome Spokane Ordinance. Only the people can save the people. That's a phrase you hear frequently in Latin America and on the streets of this country. On June 11th, the people of Spokane rose up and stood up, peacefully acting to save two of our young immigrant siblings, here legally and in compliance with the law, from ICE and Border Patrol Agents backed by violently rioting militarized Spokane Police and Spokane County Sheriff deputies who are trying to transport the two to the privately-run, for-profit immigration gulag in Tacoma. We are all now in an extremely dangerous period with heavily armed, unidentified masked and violent agents of the US government roaming our communities, assaulting, kidnapping, and removing beloved, integral members of our working-class communities, members of our families and our neighborhoods, members of our diverse school, artistic, and work communities, people in every way essential to our everyday lives. In the end, they're our beloved siblings with whom we pledge to stand and defend. When this city council passed a similar resolution in 2018 to prevent near-daily armed Border Patrol raids on Spokane's Greyhound bus station, the then-mayor would not enforce that resolution. So the community organized, mobilized, and repeatedly confronted the Border Patrol and thoroughly documented their armed raids, racial profiling, and violation of rights. Backed by the community's documentation and testimony, we won a lawsuit against Greyhound, which was collaborating with the Border Patrol. We won, and those Border Patrol raids stopped. On June 11th of this year, people came together and again confronted unjust and unlawful state power, exercised against organized and mobilized working-class people. state power exercised against organized and mobilized working class people. We stood our ground. Now it's up to all seven of you to take a stand. We also now have a different mayor, a mayor who must now act and enforce this new resolution when it passes. But first, you, the elected representatives of your community, must, and I urge you to, pass this resolution for the sake of all our community members and as a statement to all of our rejection of this billionaire regime and our resistance to it. The current administration in Washington, D.C. is building on the ICE machinery built by the two prior administrations. Its acts represent a dangerous escalation of state power, which the U.S. two-party ruling class regime has always used to advance its own ends of wealth and power at the expense of working people and particularly against our sisters and brothers of color and from nations to the south. We must all stand together because when we stand together, we win. Only the people can save the people. And remember, everyone living in this hemisphere is an American. Todos somos americanos. That's an appropriation of a concept that I'm tired of. I don't call myself an American. I live in the United States, but todos somos americanos in this hemisphere.
Thank you.
Okay, and I have Jay.
All right, go ahead, Jay.
Thank you. Our trustee, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. I wanted to point out this ordinance doesn't mention anything about illegal immigration, but that's precisely what the ordinance is about. It doesn't include the word illegal anywhere, though it mentioned immigration without the word illegal 10 times. I know many of our progressive council members refuse to deal with the real issue of illegal immigration as being illegal. It must be easier to fool people when you talk about immigration in general, as nobody could argue against immigration in general. And we've been seeing that tonight. When you don't differentiate from legal and illegal immigration, you're attempting to deceive people. That's exactly what it is, deception. Speaking of deception, the ordinance also states, whereas the heightened enforcement by federal immigration officials locally has resulted in civil unrest and protest most recently on June 11th, compelling the mayor to declare an emergency and to impose a curfew to quell violence and prevent injuries. You really think we have a mayor who's doing what she was elected to do, especially in regards to the riots? I think an objective voter probably doesn't think that anymore. But the ordinance seems to blame federal law enforcement for the actions of progressive vandals. Do you really think our people are not accountable for their own actions of bullying, violence, vandalism and rude verbal abuse toward law enforcement? Some protesters may have been peaceful, but all of us are responsible for our own actions. The idea of individual accountability is what helped make America great, and it seems to be foreign to many on this council. So I don't think you're very sneaky about this one. I think you've got where you are with deception and plan to continue to use deception to create more of the lawlessness and chaos this city has come to be known for under your watch. Please reject this deceitful ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Quinn, then John Alder, and then Amy McCollum.
Hi, I'm Jerry Quinn. I'm from the South Hill, I think that's District Two. And it's a district that doesn't have to deal with all the consequences of the things we vote for in District Two, because we keep them in Shadle and Hilliard and everywhere else. But I like living there because it keeps me protected and safe from some of the things you guys are doing. But I agree with one of the earlier speakers, our community is under assault. Heavily armed, masked agents are terrorizing our community, but they're terrorizing the right people in the community, the people who are here illegally. And just like the last speaker, it's the illegal part that you have to deal with. Nobody's going to challenge an immigrant coming to America if they do it legally. If you don't like the law personally, your job is to elect the kind of politicians you want to come up with the laws you like. If you don't like warrantless searches, then you can vote for politicians who will ban those. And so every time you go to the airport, you will no longer be checked out by TSA. Every time you go to Canada, they will never, without a warrant, have the right to inspect every piece of property you carry into their country. So what's happening here is a bunch of hysteria over enforcing the law, and that's it. And I'll tell you what, I, I challenge the council to put this to the vote for the city because I can guarantee you, majority of people in this town don't want to deal with people we don't know, we don't know their backgrounds. I know that certain groups like to paint these people as saints running around and saving us from whatever calamity could happen and that there's some sort of Nazi enforcement group out there going to kill them and hunt them down. All of that's hyperbole, and it's not true. What is true is they're here illegally. And why would you create a law or ordinance which contradicts a federal law? You just invalidate the entire reason why any of us should care about any of the laws you create. Because if I can, if, I don't agree with some federal laws either, should I just not follow those? Yeah, I don't have the authority to legislate that as a citizen, but I have to follow it. I have to pay my taxes. Do you want me to pay my taxes so you can fund all these things you want to do? That's the law. And the same thing with these illegals. They may be contributing, they may not. They may be a bigger drain on our community than a benefit. And as one citizen in this, in this city, I'm speaking out against it. I want you guys to encourage ICE to come here. I want them to be terrified. I want them to be scared because they broke our law. And by you voting to, to create this new ordinance, you're basically breaking the law. It's obstruction of justice and you all have to deal with that at some point or change the law. Don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Alder, Amy McCollum, and then Barbara Woodbridge.
John Alder, I live in northeast Spokane. I was at Refugee Day on East North Foot Hill about two weeks ago. All I saw was people of all cultures laughing, playing with their kids, enjoying good food and company, just like those at Hoop Fest or Bloom's Day. But as far as I know, you don't have no ICE or Border Patrol at those events, do you? Yeah, World Refugee Day, they had to have a sign denying ICE and they had to hire security and peacekeepers to enforce it. Why can't immigrant families enjoy their time with their families just like the naturalized citizens do? There really should be no need for this ordinance, but in the meantime, we do need to pass this ordinance and enforce it until the day comes when immigrants have the same rights as the rest of us.
Thank you, John. Amy, and then Barbara, and then Vic Colton.
Amy, I just requested you to unmute. Go ahead and start.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Awesome. Okay, so my name is Amy McCollum and I'm a resident in the East Central Neighborhood. And I'm very much in support of this ordinance. It's been very disheartening to hear so many people refer to human beings as illegals because, you know what? Slavery was legal. Fegregation was legal. The, the people who are getting terrorized by supposed law enforcement in masks are people who pick our food, are people who work in our local stores, are people who have families, who have children in our schools, who are being absolutely terrorized by government officials who are not following due process. When Border Patrol was in Spokane not following due process during the first reign of terror, we fought it. And we're going to fight it this time too because our constitution says every person gets due process. And just this illegal thing drives me absolutely nuts because most of the people they're scooping up were following the rules, are doing everything right. These are not criminals and they deserve the same protections as any other resident. I'm very grateful for Keep Washington Working because if this ordinance passes, the only people who would be denied are immigration officials, not Spokane Police Department. So that was a lie. I'm hearing so much misinformation from the people sharing here that it's actually really challenging to listen to. So I really am a very strong supporter of this ordinance. I think all families here deserve to feel safe and secure, so please pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy, Barbara Woodbridge, Vic Colton, and then Hadley Morrow.
Hello, I'm Barbara Woodbridge for District Two. And, you know, with this particular ordinance, of course, I think all of us want to make sure that we have a safe and welcoming environment here in Spokane. Absolutely. Most all of us came from immigrant background in various ways. There are processes, as we know. Overall, when we take a look at this particular ordinance that is being presented, and the reason that I'm not in favor of this particular ordinance is because I feel like it's tremendously vague in the way that we're all interpreting it. And as we take a look at it, once upon a time, when we took a look at the Homeless Bill of Rights, we kind of had to put a halt on it as well because there was a lot of questions. So when I'm reading through this ordinance and it, you know, we all want a safe and protected environment to be in. But in reality, when we take a look at this here, we're saying that there's sections of different areas that we're going to declare, okay? Who decides what those sections are? Who decides what's happening? The problem is too, we don't know the backgrounds of why these people are having situations with ICE or with the federal government or with immigration. There's a lot that happens behind the scenes that none of us know. We can all have compassion and we all have compassion, we do. But the bottom line is, it's hard for us to put a blanket over something like this when it comes down to this protection in reality. And that's my biggest complaint of this ordinance, is that there are no clear lines of what it actually means. There's no clear areas when I take a look at the ordinance that was published in here. It was just so vague. I just feel like there is not enough information for us to truly take a look and adopt this as an emergency because there's no true parameters for us to follow, there's no accountability, there's no guidelines. It's just a thought. It's just a want. It's just something that says, hey, we have concerns, but there's not any true parameters to this that we can use for guidelines and expectations, so, and accountability. So, thank you.
Vic Colton? Vic Colton, Hadley Morrow, and then Jeff DeBray.
Hello, I'm Vic Colton from Spokane, District Two. Our community has been deliberately and methodically traumatized by those who would have us abandon our conscience. To look away from cruelty, to pretend it is not happening, but we will not. Immigrants and refugees are not strangers. They are our neighbors, our coworkers, our loved ones. When the powerful use laws as weapons, they are amongst the community members who are hit first and hardest. My grandmother was in her 90s when we discovered she was Mexican, adopted from a Puebla reservation. She lived her life a devout Catholic. She believed in love, family and grace. She was a true embodiment of her God's love on this earth. We only learned of her foreign heritage near the end of her life, but volunteer and ICE would know. I am an American of immigrant descent, and I cannot imagine learning that truth because I came to steal someone I loved. To those who unleashed institutional violence on June 11th, who defended it, who lied and misrepresented the public about it, I say this. Your actions were shameful. Your names remembered in infamy. Your legacies tarnished. To our mayor, our sheriff, our police chief and our city council who gave the inhuman orders, stood in silence or condoned directly, I name and denounce you for what you did, for what you allowed and what you refused to speak against. One day, you'll go back to private life and I pray the public servants who govern your future treat you with more grace and humanity than you have shown. And I pray that day comes soon. But to those who stood up, who put your freedom on the line, who offered aid, who showed up and said, "Not in our city," I thank you. You are heroes. Your courage keeps hope alive. You remind us that even in the face of fear and terror, we can still choose love and grace. We are united in our humanity. It is our strength, our power. Not only is a better world possible, but we are already making it happen day by day. While we are fighting injustice, we are winning. In solidarity, thank you.
Thank you. Hadley's online.
Okay, Hadley, go ahead and unmute whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Council. My name is Hadley Morrow. I'm a resident of Lincoln Heights. I want to remind everyone, as many others have, that ICE is currently believing that they can behave above the law and ICE has proved that they are willing to use violence against your constituents who are behaving in non-violent actions. I really hope that we can empathize with the fear that this has created. By their own reporting, 65% of detained people by ICE have had no criminal history. ICE has already blown through their federal budget allocation and we should all be worried about the ways that they will begin to push into the limits of what they can get our local resources, of how they can get our local resources to do their jobs for them. I'm sad that I have to say the obvious that this is not in any way a sanctuary bill for any criminals and in no way does it prevent any law enforcement agency or officer from operating in the bounds of an actual judicial investigation and with an actual warrant. And this is what prevents unnecessary risk for our community. I do think though, this is a moment to be proactive in responding to what is incredibly alarming evidence of federal overreach from ICE that's impacting all of our constituents' sense of safety and ability to actually feel like they can belong here and participate in vibrant community events that are part of Spokane's culture. In this moment, I think we really need local leaders to double down on their commitment to being the checks and balances that high school history teachers love to talk so much about. And I do think that that's going to need to include a conversation about enforcement because we are pushing towards the conversation about whether or not SPD is going to be used to protect people or continue to enable dangerous unlawful behavior from ICE. I am in support of this legislation. I hope we continue to move forward with ordinances that continue to protect and send the message that we are going to stand up to alarming federal overreach and I strongly encourage my support. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff, and after Jeff, Karen Pooley.
Good evening. My name is Jeff DeBray. I'm the Eastern Washington Director for Fuse Washington. On behalf of Fuse and our 6,000 members in Spokane, I urge you to vote yes on this ordinance. This is a vital step toward ensuring Spokane delivers on its promise to be a city where we all belong. The administration and its allies are attacking immigrant communities. The operationalization and expansion of ICE unjustly detaining immigrants without due process is not only an attack on human rights, but a threat to us all. These attacks are about stoking fear, not creating public safety, and Spokane has an obligation to protect immigrants, not drive them further to the margins. In addition to tearing families apart, these attacks have placed huge burdens on local organizations providing services every day in the form of preventable legal expenses. Public statements in support of immigrant communities that lack the policy necessary to protect them mean little to nothing and we must put our values into practice. This ordinance ensures that Spokane's vibrant public community events like Hoop Fest, Pride, Tacos and Tequila, El Mercadito Monthly Market, and many more remain spaces of safety and celebration. It provides needed protections from warrantless immigration enforcement in non-public areas and affirms Spokane's commitment to being a safe and welcoming place for everyone. Please vote yes. Our city and the immigrants who call this place home are watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Pooley.
Good evening, Council. My name is Karen Pooley. I'm District Three. I'm opposed to this proposal strictly because the Democrats in the last four years led a flood of immigrants into our nation and our state unlawfully. Our federal government is now trying to reverse this travesty. To restrict federal officers because you don't like federal government's policy is not what this city should be doing. If I wanted to immigrate to any other country, I would need to follow that country's laws regarding immigration or face their deportation process. No other country reacts this way to unlawful immigrants breaking the law. Allowing lawlessness is not progressive. I feel this is, this is totally a partisan issue. I also never, not, never saw any Democrat creating such opposition to deportation under the Obama administration. As you remember, Obama was designated deporter in chief. It sounds like some of the people that are in, in approval of this ordinance want slave labor. They, they talked about people picking our food and mowing their lawns, and I found that really odd. I don't want anybody to be in slave labor. And finally, I was really offended by you, Councilmember Navarrete, when you admonished people, speaking out against people who entered this country unlawfully on the June 16th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony. Any council commentary? Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thank you for, everyone for showing up and speaking to this ordinance. So just, yeah, as noted, and I think to clarify some of the commentary, this was amended from the earlier ordinance that we heard in committee that was specific to parkland and park authority. We are limited in how we regulate park authority because of the city charter and the park board. There was certainly some hesitancy to go that direction, given some of the different roles. So even before the, the protests at June, on June 11th, there was already a discussion underway with Councilmember Navarrete and I about ways to pivot this, to look at city property and our current code around non-public areas. So that was kind of the impetus behind it. There's a lot of information available, you know, around the Fourth Amendment. That was certainly the impetus behind the 2018 ordinance. That was certainly the impetus behind the 2018 ordinance with Greyhound and being able to designate nonpublic facilities because the U.S. Constitution does place limits on immigration enforcement in community spaces. So, you do have a right to reasonable expectation of privacy in nonpublic areas. ICE and Border Patrol may not enter these areas without a warrant or consent. Why is this an emergency? Because, quite frankly, we have a disappearing machine in this community. It's across the country, but Spokane, being within 100 miles of the border, us being so close to Cootney County, which has led to really circumventing the Keep Washington Working Act. These are our friends, our neighbors, our family. It is causing a great deal of community pain and trauma, and that really merited the emergency clause, so this would go into effect immediately. But we did amend that two weeks ago to give community more time to look at the ordinance. And I didn't do a personal point of privilege earlier, but this is Councilmember Navarrete's last meeting. I really want to commend her for all she's done for immigrants in Spokane and beyond and seeing this through despite a lot of challenges. And I'm glad that we are here tonight, and I'll just end by saying, no human being is illegal.
Thank you. Councilman McCarty, then Councilmember Klitschke.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks to everybody who came up and spoke this evening. I'll be quick. So, one, there's no legal analysis of this version. There has been of some previous versions, but there isn't of this. So, some of this is kind of trying to understand exactly how it would work. And one of the commenters earlier did point out the fact that there is no detail, and that is very true, and that's a huge concern of mine. Effectively, the ordinance is an update of definitions, and so there's no process, there's no thresholds. Would this apply to something as big as Bloomsday, as small as, you know, tacos and tequila? It's not clear to me at all what the process would be for this to apply. I also really do not believe that we have the ability to discriminate between one law enforcement agency and another. And so, to suggest that one cannot enter tells me that none can enter. And if that's the case, I have serious public safety concerns. In fact, we mandate as a city, and also not in this ordinance, we mandate a lot of events to have protection, be it security sometimes, but police other times. In fact, if there's a threat or anything happening, that typically the tack team is actually sent to be a part of securing that event. I've seen this happen a couple of times in events my wife has been involved in. And so, to suggest then, what? They just can't enter? They have to post up somewhere outside and just hope something? I don't know. I just, I do not know. There are so many questions. And again, it's yet another example of where I just don't understand the lack of legal clarity on some of this, particularly when there's no process spelled out. And so, the other piece to this is, I am concerned. And I pointed this out with the Keep Washington Working Act vote, that we are creating, frankly, we are creating a captive audience opportunity for enforcement. You are telling, you are telegraphing, you are communicating directly to the federal agency where they should go to observe for individuals that they might want to be arresting or detaining. I don't think that's a smart thing to do. I don't think we should put more of a spotlight on Spokane if things are exploding, as has been kind of commented. I don't think that actually helps the situation whatsoever. Now, I disagree with some of the tactics, some of the things that have taken place in some instances, but at the end of the day, federal immigration is decided at the federal level. And we have Senator Patty Murray we don't talk about. We have a Senator Maria Cantwell, who we don't talk about. We also have ten congressmen in this state, and then, of course, the president. We don't talk about outreach to them or, you know, ways that you could outreach to them to change laws. That's the proper way to go about this. But, so at the end of the day, we are just limited in our ability to do, enforce, implement what is in this ordinance, whatever it is that is in this ordinance. And I just, I'm very concerned about where that is going to take us. Imagine, you know, Bloomsday, seven miles of the city. If officers are not able to access that without some sort of a warrant, what if something is happening that they can't then observe? We have officers all over. Hoop Fest isn't a ticketed event, so I believe it would be exempt from this policy based on how it's written, I think. But we had officers all over Hoop Fest, and I can't tell you how many people today have told me, thanked me for the visibility of those officers. And does that go away with this? I don't know. These are just questions I have because I don't have answers at this point in time. And so, I guess as this gets implemented, we'll find out, but it sounds like it would really just be up to the administration to decide when and how it would apply, which I don't really think is the right way to do policy, but that's kind of my interpretation. So, needless to say, I'll be voting against this. I think it needs a lot of work even to do what it's trying to do, but I just don't agree.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Thank you. I just want to kind of speak back up to where we originally started with this event. What we are trying to do is make it safe to have an event for all people. And that means if you rented the space, if you're having a ticketed event, if you have a permit, then you can decide who comes in and who comes out. That doesn't mean that the police can't come in if you called the police, if there was a crime. It doesn't mean you can't hire police as security guards, but people should be protected from warrantless search and seizure. Those are the law in this country. Those laws haven't gone away. We still have habeas corpus. We still have the right to be protected from unreasonable search and seizure without a warrant. And so, anybody who would be trying to enter these events that are permitted, that's your space when you get a permit or you rent a space. And so, you would be able to say, no, you cannot come in here without a warrant. And that seems perfectly reasonable to me. If I rent a space, I also don't want people who are not part of my party coming to my party. So, it just seems perfectly reasonable to me that we can work this, and there isn't any reason why we can't. The reason that we moved it from parks is because we don't have necessarily jurisdictions over parks. But this is a tool parks could also use. If you rent a pavilion in the park and parks chooses to use this tool, they could say, all right, you've rented this pavilion for these hours. You get that pavilion. No one can come and break up your kid's birthday party because they want to intimidate a certain part of the community, or they're looking for someone and they don't have a warrant. That's what this is all about, is making it safe to have community celebrations without being terrorized by folks that don't have warrants. That's all.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Thank you. So, again, to clarify, we wouldn't be putting this ordinance forth if federal agents would be following the law. And the law is, if you come in with a warrant, nobody's going to argue that anywhere. But unfortunately, they are not coming in with a warrant. They are disappearing people, and they're not giving them their due process as the Constitution states. And I've said this before in other meetings, regardless of documented or undocumented immigrants, they are protected by the Constitution. I don't expect a lot of people to understand this. You would have to walk in the shoes of immigrants to understand what is like to not commit any crime, to be targeted, and to not walk freely because of the way you look, because of your accent, or where you come from. And, you know, I don't expect you to understand, but try to see it in the human way, the families that are being taken apart and how they're just not, they're not going through a due I'm glad, and thank you to Councilmember Klitschke to co-sponsor this. And, you know, if I hurt some feelings, I'm sorry, but I am an immigrant that is proud. And to be here, and a lot of times, I am an example of what people don't like to see, a successful immigrant Latina being in a white space.
Any other council commentary? Oh. Are we ready for recess? The next council outburst, we will adjourn and go into recess, and then we will come back when everybody can be respectful with their outbursts. So, the next one, we will adjourn and go into recess. Was there any other council commentary on this? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming down and speaking on this. It is a pretty important issue. I have a lot of responses to a lot of the testimony that came in today, and then I'll get into some things here. So, first and foremost, I just think that it'd probably be a good idea for us as a community to stop comparing everything to Nazi Germany. I don't think that's a really great idea. I mean, there was a real tragedy that happened. I mean, millions of people lost their lives. And so, I would say for us, maybe pump the brakes on comparing the United States to Nazi Germany. That's just a thing I think that that's probably a good idea for us. Second, for me, you know, it's always a giant red flag when the Communist Party is supporting something, and so that tends to give me a little bit of pause. You know, the Party for Socialism and Liberation, the Communist Party coming down and supporting something that makes me, like I said, that gives me a red flag. I don't think I'd like to support things that they're supporting in general. There's other stuff that I heard tonight, you know, no human is illegal. I totally agree. There are actions that are illegal, though, and that's what people are speaking to. It's not that the person is any less human, that they don't matter, that they don't have the same moral worth as everybody else. That's not the conversation. And to make that the conversation, I think, is a gross way to, you know, to shame people into seeing your side of the story. And I don't think that that's a really honest way to have this conversation. So, I also don't think that's a good direction for us to go. It is important to know that while parks could, in theory, implement this, Parks Board did write a resolution opposing this. They told us that they did like this ordinance. They should know that. And now I want to get into the meat of it. There is one really good thing about this ordinance. There's one really good thing about this. And the really good thing about this ordinance is the title, "Safe and Welcome in Spokane." I think that's a great goal. I think that's a wonderful aspirational statement. And I would ask you, when you hear that in an ordinance that it's going to be passed that says "safe and welcome in Spokane," what does that mean to you? For me, "safe and welcome in Spokane" looks like we have less crime in Spokane. I think that's a great aspirational goal for us to do. I think less drug use in the city of Spokane would make Spokane safe and welcome, right, for people coming here. You know, I think that it's great that, you know, we wanted to make these events, you know, safe for all. Great, now let's do the rest of Spokane, right? I think that we could make Spokane a safer and more welcome place. And it's not just these events that we need to be protecting. I mean, I hear about people who are coming in for the Pacific Northwest Qualifier, which is a massive draw for us, and, you know, they're breaking into the girls' locker rooms and stealing their jackets, or breaking the windows of the folks who are coming to the city of Spokane, again, trying to enjoy a time with their family, and they're left with a bad taste in their mouth because as they're leaving Spokane, what they know now is now they have to call their insurance, and they have to fix their windows, or somebody keyed their car, or whatever it is. Those are the things that we're dealing with in the city of Spokane, and if we really wanted to make Spokane a safe and welcome Spokane, I praise that goal, and I think that we should really focus on that. The problem here, and oftentimes, I think with us in the city, is that we get out of our lane. I mean, we have so many issues in the city of Spokane that we shouldn't be telling the state or the federal government how to do their business at this point. Let's focus on the things that we can actually affect. Let's focus on making Spokane safer. Let's focus on your neighborhoods being clean and accessible. Let's make it to where when you're going to your parks, you're not checking for needles because you're worried your kid's going to get, you know, a disease from a dirty needle. I think those are the things that we should be focusing on if we wanted Spokane to be safe and welcome. And then, in doing so, I think it makes it safe and welcome for all. I think that what this, even the aspirational goal of this ordinance, I think, is not going to be achieved through this ordinance. Because what is going to happen is, this is a sanctuary policy in the same way that the city of Spokane is a sanctuary city and the state of Washington is a sanctuary state. The federal government is very determined on this issue right now, and they have told us. They are going to put more spotlight and more attention on the cities, on the states, on the counties, everybody who is adopting sanctuary policies. This is a sanctuary policy. There will be ramifications of this that negatively affect the citizens of Spokane. There's a lot of federal money that we could lose in a lot of different areas because of policies like this. That is something that will hit the pocketbook of every single person in this city, and that needs to be understood as well. It's not just that it's only going to affect a certain few. This will affect the entire city of Spokane. The other thing is that we're creating certain spaces where, you know, maybe ICE can't go in there, but what's to say they can't just, like, wait on the borders of the event that's taking place? And we've basically told them there's a bunch of people here who may not have come here legally. I think we've created an unsafe environment for them. And then what happens if we decide, okay, we're actually going to protect these spaces, and we're going to tell our law enforcement officers, right? I heard somebody say that we should be arresting those people. We're going to have our law enforcement officers fighting federal law enforcement officers? Does that make sense to anybody else? I don't think so. Safe and welcome in the city of Spokane looks like less crime, less drugs, right, a cleaner, safer city. That's what it is. I think what this ordinance accomplishes is actually less law enforcement in the city of Spokane and potentially more crime. I don't think this accomplishes it, but I hope that we can, as a city, decide that we're going to focus on the things that we can affect and focus on that, so.
Councilmembers opposed, I'll go back to Councilmember Klitschke.
Yeah, I absolutely agree that we want to make Spokane a safe and welcoming place for everybody, and that's why I'll be supporting this ordinance. And I think a lot of those issues that Councilmember Bingo referred to are being addressed by other ordinances, other ordinances that we'll even be considering tonight. So, I fully agree with that and have been proud to support a lot of the efforts that we've done on that. I think we have to listen to all members of our community, and we do see that happening every day in our community, that not everybody feels safe and welcomed in our community. And we have ordinances or lack of ordinances addressing their concerns. And so, this is one ordinance that will address their concerns that we're hearing from those communities, and that makes it an option for their events. And so, this gives people the options to do things that they want in our community, and I fully support them being able to take those actions because at the end of the day, it's about making sure that Spokane's a place where we all belong.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitschke.
Thank you. This is not a sanctuary city, and this is not a sanctuary policy. This is a constitutional due process policy. This isn't us telling the federal government how to do their business. This is us allowing people in our community to do their business without fear of racial profiling and harassment. When we're talking about enforcing the law, our Constitution tells us how law enforcement can enforce the law, and one thing they do need is warrants. And when it comes to immigration, they are supposed to be following due process. The reason behind this effort is not to protect folks that are committing crimes or doing illegal things. The reason for this ordinance is to protect folks that are law-abiding, who meet a certain profile from that kind of discrimination that has been happening. Also, we have had a lot of folks be detained by ICE who are following the rules and who do have green cards. We don't want that happening at our community events. We don't want people afraid to show up to events because they might become a victim of racial profiling or be detained despite following due process or having green cards. If you don't know that that's happening in this country, please look around. It is happening, and we don't want it happening at our community events.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, no, I do want to jump in here and say that I do want many, many people to come to the United States. The United States is the greatest country on God's green earth. I understand why most people are coming here. Most people are coming here for, the vast majority of people coming here are coming here for economic opportunity, and I totally understand why, right? I am very lucky to be born here in this country. I'm excited to be an American. I understand why people want to come here. And I do understand that the immigration system is broken. It's real broke. It needs to get fixed. Congress really does need to do their job there. As a matter of fact, earlier this year, I partnered with my friend Luke Jasmine. I wrote a letter to Congressman Baumgartner, particularly about some of the immigrant communities in District 1, where folks did come here legally, and now they're having difficulty navigating the system, and they're wanting to stay here legally, and I totally support that effort. Those are the things that I think are going to make a difference if we're wanting to protect immigrants. protect immigrant communities in the city of Spokane. Those are actions that I'm taking. Those are policies that I'm pursuing, because I do want people to feel safe and welcome in Spokane. And so I think that those efforts are going to be far more effective in protecting people in the city of Spokane than something that puts a target on our back. And so I truly hope that council joins me in those efforts, because I think those are going to be the things that, again, make immigrants feel more welcome in Spokane and are able to get through the system quicker and in a legal way.
Any further council commentary? This has been super difficult for me, but been interesting to me because I'm listening. I haven't heard any outrage over the employers who are employing immigrants who are not here legally. Where is that conversation at? That they're going to workplaces and doing raids there? So just put that on your radar. I'll be looking for ICE to go and arrest employers who have employed them illegally. I will not be supporting this, not because I don't support it. I do. There are some legal nuances to this that was not clarified for me before the vote tonight. I was hoping for a deferral, so I could support it. So I will not. But the intent of this is the opportunity for people to gather. And we're just thinking immigrants, I think people are just thinking Hispanic, Mexicans, but there are other cultural groups that are facing the same issues that they are. The group that Councilmember Bingo wrote with Congressman Baumgartner to support, same scenario in where they gather. So don't just think it's one group of people that this will impact. It will impact others. With that, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Just a point of information, that means that that ordinance...
Councilmember Bingo, you were not recognized by the chair. Ms. Fister?
Resolution 2025-39, honorarily naming the Post Street Bridge over the Spokane River the Friends of the Falls Memorial Bridge.
We have two public comments, Rick Hastings and Sunshine Wiggins. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Rick Hastings, a retired city and regional planner. I moved to Spokane in 1993. I've been a downtown resident since 2006, and I'm the co-founder of the former group Friends of the Falls. Twenty-eight years ago, a group of citizens began meeting regarding a then-proposed four-lane bridge spanning the Lower Falls. That group, which became Friends of the Falls, helped convene dozens of groups and hundreds of citizens, not simply oppose the bridge, to propose an alternative, like the 1908 Olmsted Parks Plan, to advise making the River Gorge area the centerpiece of our entire parks system. After three years of struggle, including contentious elections, a citywide initiative, and an opinion upheld by our state's shorelines hearings board, support for the Lincoln Street Bridge was officially withdrawn on February 15, 2000. By 2002, with assistance from the National Park Service, a conceptual plan was completed. This led to securing funding for and completion of the 2005 Spokane River Gorge Strategic Master Plan. These efforts were informed by unprecedented levels of involvement, including neighborhoods, downtown organizations, the Parks Department, approximately 750 citizens, and representatives from the Spokane Tribe, including the late Brian Flett and his mother Pauline Flett. Now, over 20 years later, many of the plan's project or program objectives have been realized, including the 2014 rebuilding of Huntington Park and the creation of the Gathering Place Plaza that connects Riverfront Park to the falls. Parking and river access at Peoples Park, the boat launch at Red Band Park, the recently completed Gorge Loop Trail, including the Centennial Trail completion through Kendall Yards, the Santafer Pedestrian Bridge, a trail route through Peaceful Valley, under crossings of the Monroe Street Bridge, interpretive signing and art highlighting tribal history. Also redevelopment of the Post Street Bridge as part of the Centennial and Loop Trails. Even work regarding the relationship of Kendall Yards to the Gorge, as developer Jim Frank can attest, was informed by the Strategic Master Plan. For eight years, Friends of the Falls also led the annual Spokane River Cleanup Event in the High Bridge and Peoples Park areas. All this, and also no bridge over the Lower Falls. Friends of the Falls merged with the Spokane River Forum in 2016, which continues today as one of the most influential river access and advocacy groups in our region. Thank you for considering this resolution, and know that honors will rightfully be extended to the many groups and individuals who have made the plan so compelling and made the story about shared vision, resolve, and collaboration possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunshine?
Sunshine Wiggins, Spokane. This bridge has been a huge part of my life. I slept under it for quite a few years, and it kept me alive when I met the Mark Terrell from Cup of Cool Water. This was the bridge I was sleeping under, and I absolutely love this bridge. I do support this. I love this idea. The only thing about this bridge that I do not support is you guys do not have ropes up, and people keep walking out in front of me, and then the lady yells at me, "Hey, I thought this was a walking bridge." Or they're like, "Come on, lady, go through." Or just, they're very, very rude, and it's going to take a little kid running out there before you guys do something about it, obviously. What are you going to do when a little old lady gets hit? Because these are old people walking across that bridge daily that are walking out in front of me and not paying attention. I have to stop my car, completely stop, and wait for them to pay attention, because I'm not going to yell out in my window, "Hey, you guys, you know, like, can the cars get through?" All it would take is you guys put in a couple of little ropes. How hard is that? But yes, I do support this, and I love this bridge. I used to run across the bottom of it all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public testimony. Any other council commentary on the bridge? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, I guess I want to thank Rick for coming on down, and I think this is a really great way to honor the folks who were instrumental in that effort. And it is great to see that we have a great parks master plan that has come together, and there have been a lot of people who have been working on making our parks and our natural resources focal points for the city that have only made Spokane a better place, have, again, protected our natural views, protected our natural resources. And people like Rick and all who are involved in that, you know, deserve, I think, to be recognized by this. And so I'm excited to be supporting this. I was excited to be a council sponsor on this, and I hope that more people continue to fight for this city, continue to make Spokane the best place to live, work, and raise a family. I hope more people continue to find issues like this that they're passionate about and make a difference in the city of Spokane, because there's only seven of us. We can only do so much work. And again, folks like Rick and many community members in here taking it upon themselves to make a difference in Spokane is invaluable. So thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitsky?
Thank you. I have to admit, when I first was introduced to Friends of the Falls, when I was part of the planning committee of the Spokane River Cleanup, and Steve Faust was representing Friends of the Falls, I thought they were just the group that was responsible for the Great Gorge Master Plan. If you want to take a look at that plan, it is wildly ambitious, and almost every project in that plan happened. But back when they started, none of that stuff was there. So I encourage you all to take a look at it. It's still online on our website. And also look at the number of community members that contributed to that plan. It is amazing. So I already knew this group was amazing, but I didn't understand why the Post Street Bridge. And one of the many, many things that they worked on was saving that bridge and getting it accessible to the community again. So I'm very appreciative for Rick and others bringing this forward, and I think it's a great way to celebrate this great organization who accomplished their mission and then decided to move on. So Friends of the Falls no longer exists, but what they accomplished in this community is amazing, and folks that were involved in it have all moved on to work on other amazing things in this community. So I really appreciate that, and I encourage you all to take a look about the history of this great organization if you get a chance.
Thank you. Any councilmembers opposed?
Yeah, I will also be supporting this. I had not heard of Friends of the Falls when this came up originally, so I think that's a sign that there's lots of people in our community that aren't familiar with the work. And I think throughout this process, I learned a lot, and I think that's a great reason to be naming it after this. I'm not super enthused about naming things after people, because I think there's a lot of examples of things that people are not perfect about, but I really appreciate that this is about a group coming together to make a change in our community. And so I'm really excited to support that and hope that other people can take inspiration from a group coming together to make a positive impact in our community.
Any other commentary? I will not be supporting this resolution tonight, not because of the people who had the plan. It was the process. Every Monday night, I read the land acknowledgement, and when I reached out to my tribal friends, they had not been contacted, the ones I had spoken to. I think that is disrespectful if we say we acknowledge them, and they didn't have, did not receive the courtesy of engagement around this. And this had been in the works for some time, from what I understand with the Friends of the Falls, that there wasn't a process. Again, nothing against the Friends of the Falls, but the way this came about and the lack of engagement with our tribal community, I will not be supporting this resolution. Prepare to vote. All right, I cleared you out. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36707 relating to streets closed to trucks, submitting section 12.08.010 of the Spokane municipal code.
One public comment, Larry Andrews.
Larry Andrews, citizen of Spokane, great District One, and business in great District One. I'm hoping that my trucks can still drive through the city in these areas, because my trucks are fairly large. But just to give you an example, and I spoke about this last time, my trucks encountered three trees this week, and we got some major scratches on them. And we busted the limbs off the trees, too, because we're not doing a good job of keeping the 14-foot distance at the curb. And many of those areas, you're supposed to have eight feet above the sidewalk, so you could actually walk, okay? If you go up the south hill there, there isn't five feet above the sidewalk as you go past Lewis and Clark and you make the turn to the left. I mean, the overgrowth there is so bad, you'd have to walk out in the street to get there. And then it was put to me, well, you need to call in and get this, get these areas identified. Well, there's so many of them, I'd have to put a person full-time to do this, okay? And then I dial 311, right, and then I'm on hold for 10 to 15 minutes, okay, before they even pick up. So at my charge out, it's close to 200 bucks an hour, okay? So you can kind of get an idea what the cost is here, okay? And it's not right, okay? It's not right that a moving van that comes down the street should be all torn up so we can get to the house to move the people in or out, okay? That's not right. How about the garbage trucks? I can't imagine what it costs you guys to get the garbage trucks fixed all the time, because you just see them, they're just, the tops of them are all beat to hell. And it's not my job to enforce the rules, okay? But you need to do some maintenance here in this city. And we're not doing it. We're spending it all different ways, but we're not maintaining what we have. And that's a crime, because you're going to ask many of us to support a park initiative here. And to be quite honest with you, because you don't take care of anything, I don't want my money thrown down the toilet anymore, because you don't maintain stuff. And that's what it is. You put the money out, and then it goes down the drain. And that's a crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36679 regarding obstructing access to and unauthorized camping upon public property, repealing sections 10.60.010.020, 12.02.1002.1010, and 10.11, and adopting new sections 12.02.1001.1007 and 10.109 of the Spokane municipal code.
Thank you. We have a page and a half of public comments. We'll start with Emily Cameron, Earl Moore, and then Richard Rep.
One, sorry, quick question for Mr. Wright. Before folks come down and testify, because there's been different iterations of that, would you be able to touch on the amendment that was passed? Thank you.
Sure. Would you like me to discuss knowingly obstruct, too, as well? Okay. So I'll talk about knowingly obstruct, because that's the conduct that's involved in the ordinance. And there was a question raised as to, you know, what's the difference between intentional conduct, which was actually a part of some of the old ordinance or the current ordinance, and knowingly obstruct? And I had some communication from legal about this, so it's not really my area. But the intentional conduct is when you intend to do the act that's prohibited, and you know it's a crime, and you intend to commit a crime. Knowingly obstruct is actually, you intend to do the action, and you just have to have a reasonable expectation, or it should be reasonable to assume that you would know that it might be a crime. You don't have to show that you intended to commit a crime. That's the major difference between the two. I'm sure other criminal law lawyers could probably explain a little better. As for the amendment itself, I'll start with the way the ordinance appeared on the agenda before the amendment. And before the amendment, it did a number of things. It provided for a three-day notice. This was the amendment that was approved by council last week. And it also only had three general areas where notice would be required before you would enforce action against an unlawful encampment. What the ordinance on Friday, it's drafted on Friday and adopted today, does, it adds some words to the obstruction and unlawful camping sections that indicate that you could be violating the ordinance if you are doing this on public property or any portion of public property. The words "any portion of" have been added by this amendment. The amendment also expanded quite a bit the notice requirements related to unlawful camping and when you could do, take expedited action. As I indicated earlier, expedited action could only take place under three general categories relating to public safety or public welfare. This particular amendment adds several different categories of circumstances that would qualify and allow law enforcement or code enforcement to remove an encampment. And I don't know if you want me to go through all those? No, okay. The other thing that this ordinance does, this particular amendment does, it removes the three-day minimum notice. There is no notice, minimum notice provision in there anymore. And it also removes the requirement for a public rule. This is something that I personally push for, just related to any regulations by, you know, that are created by the city. I think we'll be talking about that later. But for purposes of this amendment and this ordinance, there is no public rule requirement. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Again, Emily Cameron, Earl Moore, Richard Rep. Welcome.
Quick moment of privilege, two questions. Is it three? Thank you. And then just confirming that there, the amendments are from the 3:30 conversation today. that there, the amendments are from the 3:30 conversation today. Thank you, I apologize. There's been lots of amendments, and I think all of us have some questions. So Emily Cameron, I am the president, CEO of the Downtown Spokane Partnership, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of downtown employers, small businesses, nonprofits, residents, and voters who strongly support and believe that a thriving downtown Spokane is critical to our region's economic health and our community vitality. Along with 600 community partners, we've asked that you protect downtown, the heart of Spokane, with compassionate accountability and clear enforcement that ensures safe, accessible, and a welcoming city center for all. Downtown sidewalks are not designed as places to sit or lie, and as you've heard from downtown businesses, employees, and residents, event producers, and others, this is behavior that directly affects the quality of life for people who live, work, and visit, specifically in downtown. It inhibits access and threatens safety, intimidates customers, creates health hazards, and creates an unsafe situation from individuals who could possibly want to harm our community. This results in closed storefronts, vacant residences, on and on and on. But it's important to understand how this affects not just downtown, but every part of our city. That's why we appreciate that last week, you sat down with us, you listened to us. We had the opportunity to share our concerns, and we thank you for an amendment that specifies any portion. That is so critical. When we think about our public property and our sidewalks and the public space requirements in managing those spaces, we have to make sure that we're including that and that the intent of including that is said. There's been a lot of questions, a lot of concerns about what does this mean? And we realize that there is some confusion and that there is going to be an opportunity as this is implemented. So we ask that you restate, reiterate your commitment. Then when we say "any portion," we mean we are prohibiting sitting and lying on a sidewalk without permission, because we need clean and clear right-of-ways. Downtown is unique because of the architecture, the amenities, and the people here. This is a special place where the concentration of activity in our public spaces requires special protections. We're gonna, I'm not going to address knowingly, since you just talked about it, but there are other parts I want to make sure to address in my time. When you think about coming back in 90 days, think about not just reporting on enforcement, look at what is the outreach? What are the providers doing? What is the data? Look at this comprehensively. Think about repeat offenders. We are saying that the intent is to refer this to community court. What does that look like? Are we actually creating interventions? I want to, in my last few seconds here, reiterate, I want to thank you for your commitment to work with us on a downtown zone. And stress, again, we still need that. This is a first step, but there's much more that we need in creating a downtown hospitality area so that we can not only address the challenge of saving lives, but also livelihoods, especially in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, Earl Moore, Richard Rep, and then Derek Azaro.
Hi, Councilor Earl Moore, District Three. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all your efforts. Whether I agree with you or whether I don't, I appreciate your time and your effort. Also, I'd like to take a minute and say, Bengals, I'm glad your fingers and hands are going to be okay. Be safe. At this point, what I would say to you, I don't even know if this is a resolution or an ordinance. I can't keep track of how you guys flip the pages, change the rules, change the word. I don't, I'm not even sure, I'm listening, I'm not even sure what you're voting on. I think there are too many rules and changes, and I can't keep track of what you're doing on this ordinance or resolution, whatever it is. I think there are too many unknowns. And you guys are great at just pushing stuff through, just pushing stuff through. And the citizens are not being informed. And I think with this whole house, you can see, they care. But you guys, it's like you speak a different language sometimes. As I have taught my nephews, there are people that do things that you just don't understand, and I call them sneaky Pete's. And I think we have a few of them right here on this city council. And I'm not judging you. I'm sharing what I can, I'm trying to figure out. But one thing I will tell you is I will continue to pray for you daily on your discernment and your decisions of what you're doing in our city. I pray that you are listening to the citizens and are not at the will of our mayor. She did not elect you. We did, all of us here. And I want you to hear that clearly. And that's all I have to say, but know that you are prayed for on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl, Richard Rep, Derek Azaro, and then Tyler Tumush. Welcome.
Good evening, Richard Rep, resident of District Two, and in love with the city for over 50 years. I am back for a third time, because even though the Dillon Amendment is an improvement, thank you, over the Zappone Amendment, I still think that there's a few people on this council that seem to be missing and not recognizing, not understanding the will of the people. And so I'm here to break it down for you a little bit. Number one, we want more enforcement, not less. We want our city safe and clean. So more enforcement, not less. And number two, that means we want a Proposition One that is restored in its original intent and enhanced, not weakened, not watered down. So let me be clear, more enforcement means, does not mean doubling down on the failed housing first or street medicine policies that are not working. The mayor, even the mayor, even the mayor herself was recently quoted as saying, "The status quo is not working." All right, well, the status quo has been housing first, street medicine, rather than focusing on cleaning up the streets from the bad actors. So we can't have more of that. And we can't keep calling it a housing crisis when what we're dealing with is an addiction crisis. Those of us, we can all see with our own eyes the open-air drug dealing. We can see the crime that's happening. You can't tell us that it's a housing crisis when the more housing we've put downtown, the worse the problem has gotten. Just this past week, a family friend, mother of four, is downtown bringing her children to a soccer clinic. She's minding her own business, holding the door open for her children. Some whack job comes up and hits her in the face with his backpack, completely unprovoked. That's the kind of crime and chaos that's scaring families away from our downtown. That's what's contributing to the doom loop is more businesses leave our core because we're not protecting their customers. That's the kind of nonsense that's just not acceptable. And that's why we passed Proposition One with 73% of the voters, because there should be some places in our city that are safe for our children, period. We need a Proposition One that has both sit-in lie and obstruction ordinances. The three-day camping pass was a disastrous idea. Thank you for voting down the seven-day camping pass, that was even worse. But we need, we can't have squishy expedited outreach definitions. We need a hospitality zone that saves our tax base. We can all see the drug trade turning our city into a free-for-all for crime. Overdose are up. That blood is on your hands. This is happening on your watch. It's time to stop it. Let's put this tax-paying citizens first ahead of all these other people that are getting freeloaded. Let's put the citizens first. We cannot be the easiest place to avoid treatment and die on the streets.
Thank you, Derek Azaro, Tyler Tumush, and John Summerlot.
Derek Azaro, back again, speaking on behalf of the children of Spokane and their safety. Before I speak, I'd like clarification, please. Which version are we speaking on? You've rewritten it, what, three times? And what time did you just put forth this resolution? The new version?
Go ahead, point of privilege, Councilman Dillon.
Yeah, I'll just speak to that. So we, the amendment was circulated last week. It was adopted in briefing today. There's been a lot of discussion about the day notice period, so now it is a notice. So not a three-day notice or a seven-day notice.
But you rewrote this, and it was presented at 3:00 today?
There was discussion about it last week. We-
No, I know, I realize that. But what time did you put the new version up?
Oh, it was published to the clerk last Friday in its final form.
But I heard that you changed something at 3:00.
We adopted it at 3:30 in briefing, as we would normally do with amendments that were filed.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking, you proved out the last meeting I went to, we couldn't trust any of you guys. You proved it. The only reason we're here tonight is because of about 20 of us that hung in until 1:15 in the morning and forced you guys into a deferral. So we're back here tonight doing this again. So we can't trust you. You broke that. Proved it. Now I'll speak. I can read something, I saw something here that stood out. You did away with the no camping around the school within 1,000 feet, parks and daycare centers, to keep the kids safe. You took that away, and now you're going to put homeless shelters 1,000 feet. And I'm reading in here, again, that "the city shall prioritize and expedite outreach efforts for navigation and relocation assistance to services or removal for any authorized encampment." You changed the word to "encampment." So now you have to have an encampment around a school or a park or a daycare. So you're back at your tricky words again, switching words around, changing versions, and not giving the people a chance to speak. You almost did that last, on the 16th. Like I said, we stood here, we fought it out, we waited, we forced you into it, because you were going to go ahead and pass the change for Navarrete's ordinance at the last minute, and everything else that you guys have been doing. You just keep, you change things at the last minute, when either people aren't here and can't speak, or you change the wording around at the last minute, so nobody can really look at it and really digest it. So we don't trust you anymore. Nobody trusts you anymore, because you proved that you're not trustworthy at all. You go together on your five-to-two, you're still doing it, and you're going to do it till the end. I guarantee you're probably, you're going to pass this tonight, whether we like it or not. I guarantee it. I'd put money on it, because that's how you operate. You twist everything around, and you try to say, oh, well, we're going by the rules, Robert's rules, you know? Klinsky's always saying that all the time. Well, you know, we're going by the meeting rules. We're not just, we're not arguing with the meeting rules, we're using how you twist it, how you use it, manipulate it, to go against the public and the will. Prop One should be reinstated, tolerated to keep the children safe on the street. I can tell you, I did use Prop One to get the motor homes away from Yashiru Junior High. You know what? I also fought for the dirt pile. Guess what? The dirt pile's back.
And thank you, Derek, your time is up. Tyler, John Summerlot, and then Trent Meyer.
Good evening, Council. Tyler Tumush, District One, once again without my glasses. I want to focus on Section 6A, where it says, "A notice shall be posted, et cetera, et cetera." What does that mean? So obviously, we did away with the three and seven-day timeframe. So how long is the camp allowed to be there? Is it 10 minutes? Is it 10 hours? 10 days? 10 months? It seems pretty vague, just a notice. How is the notice given? And then how, I guess if there's a citation that's issued, like how long after the notice is the citation issued? So trying to understand that. So I don't, I don't know where, it's kind of vague there. So there's no really clear guideline here to when the encampment would be addressed. And I would also suggest that in addition to the expedition of encampment 1,000 feet away from schools, daycares, parks, and emergency shelters, that maybe also add in safe routes to schools as well. I know in my neighborhood, there's two vacant lots owned by Washtot, but enforced by the city, and it's consistently seeing new camps pop up all the time. So I know this is a safe route to school, and I'm always thinking about the what-ifs. I've already brought this up before. So I know that not every single individual that is unhoused is a bad person, but what if one of them was, a child walks by, and then that's all you hear from them. So just another what-if to think about. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. John Summerlot, Trent Meyer, and then Aaron Rifkin.
Good evening. My name is John Summerlot. I'm a resident of Spokane Valley, and I work downtown. I'm here on behalf of Greater Spokane Incorporated. I'd like to start by thanking the council members for kind of engaging a little bit with the community, especially Councilmembers Dillon and Kath Cartt, and trying to hear our concerns and address them. We appreciate that. We want to build trust, and we want to work on solutions together that we can all agree on. So big changes that we appreciate. One was the inclusion of a full public right-of-way, as well as the special provisions for the 1,000 feet of schools, parks, and childcare centers. We do have some current concerns still around clarity with a number of items in this. I stand, you know, very strongly with DSP and kind of their assessment. One of the things I want to focus on is moving forward on proposals, and regardless of what happens tonight, there's a piece in here that looks at a 90-day effort, essentially, you know, go back and review the assessment. The first thing that I'd like to point out, and we'd like to point out with that, is to work with us in that 90-day assessment. Speak not just to our members and leaders within the business community, but speak with the people who work in those businesses as well, because they're the ones who come downtown, spend their money down here, have lunches, get drinks at new bars and whatnot. And then the other thing is, before that 90 days elapses and you complete that assessment, also discuss and work with us on long-term solutions that unite both advocates as well as business leaders in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent, then Aaron, and after that, Dean Feldemeyer.
Thank you for having me. My name is Trent Meyer. I'm the owner of a business that is actually based in Liberty Lake, where I also live. However, I'm also the owner of the same business that just expanded into your downtown. I just opened a space in River Park Square. I've seen a few of you in there already. Thank you. My perspective on this is, I wear several hats in the business community. I am the board chair, or the chair for the committee at GSI, that is our regional advocacy committee, speaking with folks like yourselves, to try to engage with our elected leaders as much as possible to make the best decisions for this community. I look at these decisions as business decisions for yourselves. And when those of us that are not necessarily residents of this city do not vote, I have not voted for a single one of you, because I don't live here. And I think that gives a healthy perspective, especially when we're talking about the economic vitality of downtown. I am somebody who has spent six months of my last, six months of my life among money. I've watched my partners, the Coles Real Estate Company owning River Park Square, put some of their money into this. And I look at that, I've been in this downtown for all hours of the day and night, and I have seen improvement. I thank you for that improvement. I thank you for the engagement you have with the business community. Emily, other trusted leaders that large and small organizations put a lot of faith in, a lot of money in, to try to help make the best decisions in this community. And, you know, businesses in this state, tomorrow marks an interesting day. It's July 1, and new BNO taxes kick in, a lot of taxes on the same citizens that are here kick in, and we're all going to experience some lack of investment in our community, because people don't have as much money in their pocket. And I think that's important to consider when we are looking at things to make this downtown as economically viable as possible. And I say that not as a voting citizen that's trying to politically guide you in any way, but as a concerned business owner and an investor, that I don't want to see other investors scared away. And I think that's a very important thing to consider when you're voting on things and maybe taking your time to ensure that they're done correctly. I really appreciate all of your engagement with us. I really do. I think that that now, and as some of these future decisions throughout our community, I hope our mayor does the same thing here and engages in that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, Dean Feldemeyer, and then Teresa McGinnis.
Good evening, Council. My name is Aaron Rifkin. I am a business owner in clarification in District Two, or sorry, District Three, not Two. I spoke last week and said Two, so it's actually District Three. I have been affected in multiple areas of both of my businesses. One, just right outside, literally on the border of downtown, we butt up right against downtown. I am that close to being in Bengals, wish I could be. And then our other one is just north, where we just continue to see this continued nonsense of people coming into our businesses, camps showing up, just would be east of our downtown location. And it is so difficult to get ahold of people within our city to be able to realistically enforce these laws that we already currently have. So adding these new ordinances, I don't think is actually going to be a benefit to our company. We asked for Prop One, reinstate Prop One in the way that these other two council members rewrote it. They had it, they were ready for it, but the other council didn't want it. I also would like to say, I would really make the suggestion that all council members be off their phones and not eye-rolling at people when they're speaking. There should be- There should be some sort of decency as the elected officials that you all look at us when we're talking. It's so unprofessional. With that said, Prop 1 was perfect. It needed to be rewritten in a way that the courts liked, or legal whatever. Great. Pass Prop 1 in the way that needs to be. Because this ordinance is not going to sustain any sort of business in Spokane. Thanks.
Thank you, Aaron. Dean Feldemeyer, Teresa McGinnis, and then Will Quinn.
Good evening, City Council. Dean Feldemeyer, District 2. I'm currently serving as the General Manager at the Spokane Club. It's a couple hundred yards to the west. I think you all know where it is. Prior to my current role, I also manage the Doubletree Spokane, and I have over 15 years in hospitality. I am here tonight to really strongly advocate for this hospitality zone concept. I think it's extremely important for the community. I think that we are missing a huge opportunity to do the right thing for the local residents and for visitors to Spokane. The Spokane Club has been an important part of Spokane, and the clubhouse on Riverside dates back to 1910. A lot of things have changed over the years, particularly our focus on families. And I'm not sure that everybody realizes, that is a major part of what we do, families and young children. Amenities at the club now include daily childcare, kids' camps during the summer break and holidays, children-focused events like the recent Princess Dance, swimming lessons, and a swim team. In addition to dropping off and picking up camps, we have off-site programming utilizing all of our amenities downtown. Unfortunately, the area under Monroe Street Bridge has become hazardous. I think some of you know that and recognize it. I don't think that anyone has ever considered the new walking and biking path would so quickly devolve into a hangout for open drug use, camping, human waste, and other unsavory behavior. It's not fair to the kids who simply want to walk safely to Riverfront Park for their camp activities. Creating a downtown hospitality zone would ensure our members, staff, and their children will not have to navigate around these dangerous conditions. I'm imploring the City Council to find real solutions for what is obviously a serious problem. Ignoring the problem or waiting days to resolve safe access is not realistic. It's really not compassionate or noble to let people live outdoors and to potentially die on the streets. Spokane Club is proud to be a longtime downtown landmark. Please help us continue to serve the community with safe and clean downtown hospitality zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Teresa McGinnis, Will Quinn, and then Kyle McCarthy.
Hello, my name is Teresa McGinnis. I was born and raised in Spokane, and I am a recently retired business owner. First, I want to tell you how ashamed I was of the actions of June 16th. It made me want to say, "I am not from Spokane with the way my City Council acted." I have 11 grandchildren, four great-grandchildren who live in Spokane. I want to know what entitles you and the mayor to endanger my grandchildren and anybody else's children and grandchildren from allowing, by allowing camping and sitting in line anywhere in the city? They will not be able to go to any public property which they frequent because they're kids, let alone anywhere else you enact any form of this ordinance. I have interacted with many of people shipped in to Spokane and asked them in my travels during my business why they are here. And why don't they go to a shelter? They don't go to a shelter because they like their lifestyle just the way it is and won't go to shelters. They're only here for the lack of law accountability and what they can get from the city and the state. Period. The taxpayer payers voted for Prop 1. Great numbers. It was thanks to the Supreme Court. Wasn't because of the Prop 1, it was because of a technicality that was found unlawful. And you were trying to bait and switch along with hiding true motives in paperwork. 900 pages, people. 900 pages. To allow any form of disorderance to pass, which is a pretty crappy thing to do. Public property is property paid for by us, the taxpayers. So for you and the mayor to allow camping and sitting in line anywhere is against the taxpayers who have told you over and over again that we do not want it. So your jobs and what we pay you for is to stop the camping anywhere in this city along with sitting and lying. Do not endanger my grandchildren or any other children or families in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Will Quinn, Kyle McCarthy, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Well, on a lighter note. Betsy, I'm taking the night off from my weekly beration of you and your four comrades. By the way, did anybody happen to catch Paul's interview with Justice for All? If not, you missed an absolutely spellbinding example of hard-hitting journalism. But seriously, I'd like to give my deepest thanks to those of you who showed up tonight to have your voices heard, and to my wife, who did everything in her power to get you here.
Thank you. Kyle McCarthy, Sunshine Wigan, and then Richard Klein. Is Kyle online?
Kyle, if you're online, you can hit star 3 to raise your hand.
Okay. Sunshine? And after Sunshine, we'll go to Richard Klein, and then Jamie Hudson.
Sunshine Spokane, so I'm not really good with all you guys' mumbo jumbo crud and whatnots, but, so I have my friend's kid, and she passed away, and I have him, he's like in his 30, 31 right now. I don't know, maybe he had a birthday. But he is in addiction, and he is bipolar. And I tell him all the time, "Correct your behavior, correct your behavior." If we don't have ordinances like this, I cannot push him towards doing the right things. I don't want him camping on a sidewalk for three days. I'd rather see him in a shelter and doing his things that he needs to do to better his life. And I think as a home, both of us are homeless right now, and I think us as homeless deserve a place to go. I mean, if you're going to push us off a sidewalk, then where are you going to push us to is the question that you need to be asking yourselves. Because there is not going to be enough shelter beds. We are 500 shelter beds down, now you guys are talking about taking the Cannon Shelter Beds, too. Today, we just had 56 beds go at Hope House. So we really need to think about that. We don't have the track. So what are we going to be doing? Where are we going to push these people to if we don't let them camp? Because camping is not a good, healthy thing for them to do. And we need to find a place where we can let them be because they are going to be here no matter what you do. And I think we have plenty of outreach to go in there. Our problem is, is we don't have a designated spot for them to go. And so when we come in, we find them, and then next thing we know, they're gone, and we cannot find them. And when there's a designated spot, like the Methodist, we used to use that for the DOC people, and the DOC could come down there and find them whenever they needed to. But when we had a designated spot, it made it a lot easier for these social workers to find them. Because they're always going to go to the feeding hole, so why not make it the feeding hole? Or whatnot. But if you're going to push them around, you have to push them in the right direction. And with this, I don't want my kid on the sidewalk camping for three days, seven days, not even for 24 hours. I want him to start making healthy choices. And I cannot embrace that in him enough without ordinances like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Richard Klein, Jamie Hudson, and Teresa Knudsen. Richard Klein? Jamie Hudson? And after Jamie, Teresa Knudsen. No, this gentleman behind you, then you'll be next. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jamie Hudson, and I'm an officer of a large local company that employs approximately 50 people in downtown Spokane. I'm here today to advocate for stronger, more consistently enforced public safety ordinances in our city. You know, this isn't about targeting individuals, it's about fostering a safe and accessible and welcoming public environment for all Spokane residents and visitors. In my role in my company, I'm responsible for much of the hiring that takes place in our headquarters building, which is about a block east of here. It's our objective as an organization to have as many people as possible working here downtown. We feel like this provides a more vibrant and economically sustainable downtown core. One of the difficulties that we face in recruiting is getting people who are willing to work downtown. People who are, feel that they're unsafe and they have issues that we currently face. First, currently, we witness frequent instances of individuals occupying public sidewalks and entryways for extended periods, sleeping on sidewalks, using drugs, defecating in our entryways, and harassing our staff. This leads to obstruction and sanitation issues and creates an environment where many of our staff feel unsafe or deferred, or deterred from walking to and from lunches or other services downtown, or even concerned about going to parking back and forth. Our downtown in particular is experiencing negative impacts of businesses and pedestrian traffic when storefronts are blocked, or sidewalks are difficult to navigate. It discourages commerce and detracts from the vibrancy that we're all seeking here in Spokane. Very much appreciate the amendments that were proposed in this bill. We recognize that, or I feel like it is not perfect in its current form, and I understand that there are some concerns about creating laws and ordinances when we don't always have the resources to help all of those in need. However, I do not think it is prudent to wait until all possible resources are available before we enact common sense ordinances. While this ordinance is not perfect, I try not to let perfection be the enemy of good. This is about balancing compassion with community responsibility. We have to address the symptoms of complex issues to create a more livable city for everyone. I urge City Council to prioritize and strengthen our public city ordinances. I would love to see a hospitality zone implemented. Let's ensure our sidewalks and public spaces are safe, accessible, and inviting for everyone who lives, works, and visits our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, and then Robert Henry, and Jerry Swab.
Greetings to the Council. My name is Teresa Knudsen. I'm from the West Central Neighborhood. I'm here to fully support Proposition 1, the way that it was written and voted on by the citizens of Spokane. It doesn't have anything to do with are there good people camping or bad people camping. It has to do with are we blocking the sidewalks and the public commons? And the public commons, that's an ancient right that we all have, that we can walk on our sidewalks and in our public spaces and not be harassed or intimidated the way many of us are. It also interferes with the American with Disability Act to have people blocking people on the sidewalks. So I think to save time and to have the Council turn their focus onto things that are very, very important that we've heard other people bring up, I think we should pass, and I ask you to pass Proposition 1 the way it was originally written and voted on by 74 or more percent of our citizens. I was going to say something else, too. We just can't waste the time or money, and I was going to say something else. And I wanted to say that I was really, really glad I didn't hear a lot of people talking about leadership. Because as we all know, we're all citizens of this city, and you all are in the position of being elected officials. You're elected for a job. So everyone's the leader. It's not like you guys are the leaders and we are the followers, because that's not what our Constitution was built upon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Henry? Jerry Swab? Kaitlin Monquist? Richard Bocook? Doyle Wheeler? If you're going to speak, Richard, you better come on down, just call your name.
Kaitlin is online.
Okay, we'll have Richard speak, then we'll go to Kaitlin online.
They sure got a lot of hate towards the homeless out here. They're not citizens, you know? That's what I keep hearing. And they don't have constitutional rights either. I keep hearing that, too. They want to have really strong enforcement for people that sit on the sidewalk exercising their First Amendment right. Every person out there that I see is homeless, I'm going to encourage them to panhandle and have a sign to exercise their First Amendment rights. Because what I get tired of, I don't care if you're a business owner, you don't own this world. You don't own those sidewalks. Those sidewalks are part of our Constitution. They're for everybody. Yeah, I get when somebody breaks the law. Somebody breaks the law, we'll call the police on them. That's what you should do. And then wait for the police to come pick them up. But coming against people that are exercising their constitutional rights, that's why the sit-in lie law has specifically, people exercising their constitutional rights are exempt. So like I said, just to throw it in your face, every homeless person I see, I'm going to encourage them to panhandle. I'm going to encourage them to play a rattle, to play a little drum, because they have a right. And you need to quit attacking them and saying that they're not citizens. And they need to be locked up. And what Sunshine says about the people that are camping, where are you going to send them? That's the part you got to take. You're going to enforce this camping thing if you're going to create it? Where are you going to send these people? If you don't have a place to send them, then leave them alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaitlin, online.
Kaitlin, go ahead and unmute yourself whenever you're ready.
Great. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Thank you. Hi, Council. My name is Kaitlin Monquist, and I work and live in Spokane, and I'm a parent of young children who are afraid to go downtown. My kids have had repeated encounters with unsheltered individuals, many clearly in crisis. Sidewalks are blocked, public spaces are overtaken, and open drug use is everywhere. This is no longer the exception, it's become the norm. Families like mine no longer feel safe coming to the heart of our city. One of my kids is in counseling because of a frightening encounter with someone in a mental health crisis outside of my office on First Avenue. This is what you've allowed this city to become. I also work for Ruby Hospitality, which owns and operates hotels, restaurants, and event centers, all in downtown Spokane. As a business stakeholder, I see the impacts daily. We are investing, hiring, promoting Spokane every single day. And what are we up against? A public health crisis and council people who aren't listening to their constituents. The current approach is failing. We need a city and a downtown hospitality zone with firm and clear boundaries. Why wouldn't you ban obstruction of sidewalks and public rides away? Ban aggressive panhandling and unauthorized camping? Enable immediate removal, not excuses, not delays. Impair all of this with access to shelter, treatment, and stabilization services, but with real accountability. We also need increased Spokane Police Department foot patrols and expanded outreach, so families, workers, visitors, and those in crisis all have support and understand the boundaries. We cannot pretend this is about people making rational choices. When individuals are deep in addiction or a health crisis, especially with substances like fentanyl, their ability to make cognizant decisions is fundamentally impaired. Expecting voluntary compliance is not only unrealistic, it's a failure to acknowledge the severity of their condition. To stand by and hope they'll choose differently is not compassion, it's abandonment. It denies the clinical reality of what these individuals are going through, and it leaves them and the rest of the citizens of Spokane trapped in a cycle of chaos, crisis, and preventable harm. Downtown Spokane deserves to be a place of pride. Right now, it is not. Please take decisive action to restore safety, accessibility, and dignity for everyone. What are you waiting for? Thank you.
Thank you. We have Doyle Wheeler, Luis Menrichus, and Robin Bernhardt.
Good evening, Council members. Thank you for being here. My name is Doyle Wheeler, and I'm here on behalf of my family, my employees, my customers, and my downtown neighbors. I own three businesses in downtown Spokane, and I've seen many of you imbibing in my places, and I thank you. I want to ask how this ordinance will help my business be safer and more welcoming. Let me start with what's possible. During Hoop Fest this past weekend, I walked the streets intentionally as a dad, just checking things out, seeing what's going on. I saw something amazing. Happy people everywhere, kids, families, locals, and visitors from across the region. Spokane felt alive, safe, and welcoming. The streets were clear, businesses were buzzing, the sidewalks were open, and people were genuinely stoked about our city. But what happens when they come back this weekend? Now let me tell you about a very different walk I had just a week ago. I was walking an 18-year-old employee. She was female, and she was on her way to her new job downtown with me. As we headed from the parking lot at the Holly Mason Building at Second and Howard to Stevens and Riverside, where she was about to be employed, we encountered a large group obstructing the sidewalk, some sitting and some standing around, then they were all under the railroad bridge. Some sat, and again, most stood, but none moved. I told her, "Stand tall, be confident, they won't be a problem." But as we passed, she was catcalled, stared at up and down, and they were all like grown men. Not only did it wake me up and force me to think critically, I was also embarrassed. One block later, we passed people sleeping in doorways, strung out on the sidewalk and also yelling in the air. I told her, "Don't worry, you're safe. Just be confident, we're only five blocks away." She quit the next day. That's heartbreaking, not just because she was a great fit for our business, but it's also that she didn't have an opportunity to help. I have many, many instances of things that have affected our businesses because of ordinance, of things like this ordinance not being strong enough. I support the establishment of a downtown hospitality zone that will prohibit sit-in lying or obstructing public rights away without shelter space requirements for enforcement, prohibits progressive, aggressive panhandling and solicitation of, on public property and rights away at all times, and encourages voluntary compliance for access to emergency shelter and treatment to avoid citations and arrests, allocates more resources for outreach engagement, and increase foot patrols by the SPD. I want to thank Councilmember Dylan for meeting with us this past week and committing to the hospitality zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Menrichus, Robin Bernhardt, and Tyson Schleck.
Thank you, Council. I'm not speaking on behalf of my employer, I want to make that clear, but as someone who works with unhoused every day, I do understand how difficult homelessness can be, especially for the real human beings who are sleeping on the street. This discussion strikes me as trying to hit a bullseye on the wrong target. In medicine, we have to have the discipline to respect the evidence. So here is some evidence around how to address homelessness. It costs an estimated $134 a night to have people incarcerated in Spokane. That's before adding the cost of police and court enforcement. Department of Justice data shows that the recidivism rate, which is people returning to jail, is 68% on average. There's, one study shows that with housing navigation centers, that can drop to 9.6%. A study in the American Journal of Preventive Medicine showed the average cost of housing first to be $45 a night. That's across 20 studies, and that's a savings of 76%. So the problem with a conversation focused on incarceration as a way to address homelessness is that it's not effective and we can't afford it. Unfortunately, this ordinance strips opportunities to provide services and connect people with services, and it provides nearly any excuse to criminalize homelessness. And so it will continue to be ineffective in addressing the issue that we're addressing the real problem on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Burnett, Tyson, and then Christopher Savage.
President, Robin's on a flight. She's unable to call him.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you so much for that. Tyson?
Tyson Schleck, District 2. Thank you. I'm struck, instead of the, instead of the clarity of Prop 1, which you had the chance to pass when it was struck down and really institute that leadership, the proposed ordinance, even with the amendments, and thank you for the amendments, it does demonstrate a lot of, a lot of listening in many ways. However, the language in the overall ordinance is still, still the same in its character, namely, it provides very little clarity on what the city, what you all are actually obligated to execute, to do in response to the homelessness crisis. The language in the ordinance could be used to continue a very permissive stance toward homelessness, or it could be used in ways that produce measurable improvement. It really seems like a big, "Hey, trust us, we're the city council, we're going to handle it," which is ironic, given what happened two weeks ago. Quote, "Additional time or assistance in complying with this section shall be accommodated." Quote, "City shall expedite the outreach efforts for navigation and relocation assistance to services. The city determines if an active campsite requires integrated outreach," or in the amendment, "Notice posted prior to a citation so that the Spokane homelessness outreach team may offer navigation and relocation. Upon what timeline, it's unclear." Or you can circumvent the notice if there's reasonable belief that such encampment presents an immediate threat and/or unreasonable risk of harm to life, public health, et cetera, in a longer list now than the list that was there before. But what happens when the city police actually use that piece of the ordinance and don't provide notice prior to a citation and clean up a camp? Is the council going to back them up when that happens in the interest of, of enforcing that ordinance? "Just trust us" is the idea. And we kind of know what we think will happen. The council is about establishing, in the quote, "Establishing, maintaining administrative policy and procedures that integrate housing-focused outreach and behavioral health services." In other words, more of the status quo. Here's the hard truth. I understand the goal to compromise, but the ordinance is so, it could go either way so much that you're still going to have to decide what to do with it, and you're going to have to pick, because the hard truth is, in being welcoming and safe for everybody, a man addicted to fentanyl screaming at the wind, and my daughter, cannot be safe and welcomed in the same downtown at the same precise moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Savage, Larry Andrews, Julie Carpenter.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Christopher Savage, and I'm from District 3, Spokane. The original Proposition 1 passed with overwhelming support of 74% of the voters saying yes. But what now, but what's now being pushed by Mayor Brown and the five progressive council members is not the same measure. It's a watered-down version that ignores the will of the people. Mayor Brown claims this version is better than Prop 1, but Spokane residents see through the empty promises. Instead of protecting families, this proposal invites more of what voters wanted to stop: street camping, aggressive panhandling, and pedestrian interference. If passed, well, actually, when it's passed, this new Prop 1 will do nothing to improve our streets or restore safety. Safety. It should be called Prop None, because it does none of what Spokane needs to thrive. Councilmember Sipone insists the proposal is based on community input from homeless roundtables. But when asked who participated, it's clear the discussions lacked real diversity and broad stakeholder engagement. He talks about listening to the community, but fails to do the work of generally collecting public feedback. Spokane is not just a city for this transient population. It's a city for families, children, and hard-working citizens. We need policies that reflect our values. Spokane must be a city for all, not a city for some. Vote no on this ordinance and follow the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Andrews, Julie Carpenter, and Jay McPherson, and then Brad Barnett.
Larry Andrews, I'm a citizen of Spokane, and I'm a business here. And I had an encounter, and I don't think you were here that night, Betsy, so I'm going to explain it. With Will, I took him home after that night, and right in front of the Rid Path, there was like 40 homeless there getting lined up to the guy that was selling the drugs. And it looked like a movie out of, out of Darth Vader or something. It was these people, they were all hunched over, and they were paying their money, and the guy was giving them their drugs. But the thing that was even more shocking was what the man and the woman were doing at the front door of the Rid Path. They were doing it right there. I mean, the door, I used to walk through to go up to Anthony's up on the top floor and have a restaurant dinner. Okay. That was very shocking to me. And what Will said, what he's encountered, is so much underneath of what's actually happening late morning, early morning in the city, okay? And I don't know how many thousands of dollars you've spent cleaning up the viadocks on Medillia down, on the railroad down there. I mean, I've called three times, and you came out three times, and it took multiple days to clean up all the mess. And so we spent thousands upon thousands of dollars, probably each time, to clean this mess up. So we haven't solved the problem. We have to solve the problem. The first problem is, is we got to get them off the streets, period, for their own good. Number two is, yes, we can build a place out by the jail, the prison. I checked, that land is available out by the prison. So you put a facility for tents right now, they have some really nice tents, that you could put a slab out there, you could put porta-potties, porta-wash, and we could have something for probably maybe $150,000, $200,000 to house people until we could build something out there. Okay? These are solutions. We don't have solutions here. What we have is you guys exploiting these people over and over for money. You get so much ahead for each one of these people that are out there, and that's what you're doing. You're sucking the well dry. And the well is drier than dry, and we're all fed up with it. And you've tried to water it down so you can get your more funding, but you're, you live off these people, and that is morally wrong. These people are crying for help, and they don't know how to say anything. And you continually just push them off and push them off, and that's wrong. And please, please, start doing something with the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Julie Carpenter, Jay McPherson, and Brad Barnett.
Hi, my name is Julie Carpenter, and Jonathan Bingo, I live in his district. This is the first time I've ever spoke at a city council meeting. It's a little intimidating. I was raised here in Spokane. My kids were born here. One of them still lives here, and one moved away. I had my notes prepared on my phone, and my phone died. I did write an email to everybody. My heart is really sad for Spokane. Spokane's a beautiful city. I had family members from California here. Now, California has its issues as well. They were very surprised when I gave them a tour of the city of Spokane for some of the things we saw. We saw people shooting up. We saw some pretty bad stuff. And it was embarrassing, and they were really surprised, because I always talk so highly of Spokane. It's affected, I live in Hilliard, and it's even affected Hilliard. There are people, sadly, camping in Hilliard. They're moving their mobile homes from our church to around the corner. They're parked in front of our post office, which is around the corner from me. I've had cars parked in front of my house. It's sad. Something needs to be done, and I don't have the answers, but I think this ordinance, or whatever it is you're trying to pass, is very confusing for people like me to read, because it keeps changing, and it's like this big package that is gobbledygook. You can't understand it. I really wish that you would listen to the people, and I don't understand why you didn't stick with Prop 1 that the people voted for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay McPherson, Brad Barnett, and then Derek. Pizzanis. Gosh, Derek, I found, screwed your last name, sorry.
Okay, Jay. Jay McPherson, born, raised in Spokane. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Well, I'm not sure we have a homeless problem in Spokane, per se, because I see that homelessness, like we have in Spokane, stems from other issues than simply homelessness itself. I believe we have a problem with compassion toward the wrong people. Most folks, when they feel compassion, they assume they're right. They assume they're on the moral winning side. But compassion towards those, for example, who've committed crimes and not have enough compassion on the victim of the crimes is what I call misdirected compassion. Many of the laws aren't enforced, or sanctions are often so inconsequential, they don't do enough to deter immoral and unethical behavior. Misdirected compassion is toxic, fanning the flames to the problems we already have. Misdirected compassion causes confirmation bias of the worst kinds and inhibits people from seeing the world as it truly is. We need compassion for kids and other vulnerable people to be able to safely pass through our city. I think tough love is in order. It seems like many on this council want homeless people to continue in the behavior that keeps them homeless. It seems that the state of Washington and local policies have drawn homeless people to Spokane. So we do have a drug problem in Spokane, and it contributes to homelessness. We have a crime problem in Spokane, and it contributes to homelessness. We have a safety problem in Spokane. We have a law enforcement problem in Spokane, where misdirected compassion sides with criminals while holding police officers to unrealistically high standards, even when they take undeserved verbal abuse simply for doing their jobs. We don't have a homeless problem as much as we have elected officials with priority problems. This has to stop. Safe and welcome in Spokane, like we heard earlier tonight, but growing homelessness stemming from these issues hinders the safety of citizens and tourists. Growing homeless, homelessness hinders citizens and tourists feeling welcome. I'm sorry, but making Spokane safe and welcome involves tighter sanctions on homelessness. I have compassion on homelessness, and I'm assuming most of us do, but we've got to understand what's going to work. I believe as city council representatives, you don't really have the option of compassion. You have to referee. A referee can't have compassion on one team at the expense of the other. They've got to, they've got to be fair. They've got to be just. Let's return to something more just, like Prop 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Barnett, then Derek, and then Nick Hodge.
Good evening, Council. A pleasure to be here this evening. Brad Barnett, president of the Spokane Business Association. I want to applaud you for listening to the community and being willing to remove the seven-day and the three-day waiting period for the enforcement of illegal camping on our public sidewalks, although the revised legislation still falls far short of making a real difference in our downtown and really has no teeth for enforcement. Open drug use on public sidewalks should be illegal and not allowed. Sleeping on public sidewalks should be illegal and not allowed. My second week in Spokane, I was 15 minutes late getting back to my car after a meeting downtown. I got a parking ticket. It's clear the city's willing to quickly enforce those laws. If the city was enforcing, if the city was enforcing open drug use laws, if they were enforcing no camping on public sidewalks, we wouldn't have the problem that we have today. It appears that some at City Hall, and possibly some on the dais, have the attitude they don't care about businesses. care about businesses. If businesses succeed or fail, they don't care. Well, representing a business association, the business owners and the property owners in downtown are some of the biggest taxpayers. And those tax, if they don't pay taxes, if they leave downtown, our property owners are going to pay more taxes because we're not going to have budget cuts. I have personally talked to four business owners over the past month that within the next five years plan to relocate their business out of Spokane. Three of them to Idaho. We cannot afford to continue the current policy. We have to make changes now. We need action. We need enforcement. The current policies aren't working. The SBA calls on this body, our elected officials, to do three things. First, to vote down these ordinances that have no teeth for enforcement and enact the provision, and many have said here tonight, that the voters, three-quarters of our voters voted on for the 2023 Proposition One. Second, begin enforcement of public safety laws tomorrow. Stop waiting. While you wait, people are dying, businesses are leaving. And third, once again, as I've done several times, the SBA calls on the city to work with the county and the state of Washington to declare a ninety-day state of emergency so that we can get those that are in the most need of help, give them the treatment, get them off the streets, and create a better life for everyone. If you truly care about Spokane and you really want to help those in need, take action now. While you continue to discuss the language week after week after week in committee, the economic future of Spokane continues to suffer. The business owners and our citizens can't afford these failed policies any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek, Brad, Derek, Nick, and then Wendy Fishburne. She's still in the room.
Good evening, Council President Wilson, council members. Derek Bazanas with Washington Hospitality Association, representing Spokane's restaurants and hotels. We're disappointed that this ordinance, even with the amendment, fails to include a downtown hospitality zone. While we appreciate the clarifications like protecting any portion of public property and removing the three-day notice, the ordinance's citywide approach and vague knowingly term don't address downtown's unique safety needs. Our businesses with 1.5% margins have lost up to eighty percent of the revenue due to public drug use and encampments deterring customers. Voters supported strong safety measures in Proposition One, yet the ordinance falls short. A downtown hospitality zone with immediate enforcement is critical to restore vitality. We've urged this since the roundtables alongside DSP. Please reject ordinance C-36679 and work with us to create a hospitality zone that ensures safe, welcoming streets for our customers and our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Hodge. And then Wendy Fishburne and Jerry Quinn.
How's it going? I'm Nick Hodge. I don't live in Spokane. I live in Cheney. I actually moved here from Baltimore because I could live anywhere in the country I wanted to live. I'm a business owner, multiple businesses, and investor. And we came here because of no income tax that the state has, and now you in fact have an income tax on capital gains because of semantics. You called it a excise tax instead of a capital gains tax. And we're here again tonight because of semantics, because of something between administrative and legislative. So I came here eight years ago because, you know, we came and visited. I've visited lots of states. I've been to lots of states, Tennessee, you know, Nevada, Alaska, all the tax-free states I've visited. You guys won. It was beautiful here. Downtown was beautiful. The park was beautiful. We came here to start a family. We left Baltimore to get away from ineffective city government and public drug use and rising crime and rising taxes. And all those things have seemingly followed me here. You know, I've made some connections as a business owner in the past couple of years, and I hear lots of people saying the same things. I talk to a lot of real estate agents, a lot of commercial real estate folks, people at NII Black, Four Degrees, kind of, hey, good. You know, those folks are really struggling. My family struggles to come downtown. You know, my wife tells me about the things she sees driving around, the questions the kid asks. She said they saw three people shooting up on the way to school, the last week of school, a couple of weeks ago. You know, I own property downtown across the street from Kendall Yards, right across the demarcation line, right? Where you guys let the grass turn brown and don't, and don't cut it, and Kendall Yards takes care of all their stuff really nicely because they're private, and they have private security that keeps the homeless out of Kendall Yards. That's why it's so nice to go there, right? Because you're not allowed to sleep on the sidewalk in Kendall Yards. So, I mean, a couple of things I wanted to get out here is like, we're not asking you to solve homelessness. We're just asking you to do the will of the people, right? I don't want to talk about beds or the complicated nature of the problem because it obviously is, and drug use and wealth inequality and on down the line. Like, y'all aren't going to solve homelessness, right? No, the city, the people, the taxpaying citizens of the city just asked you to do one thing. Pass Proposition One. By the way, seventy-three percent, they like that more than they like any of you, right? One of you wasn't even elected, right? So, I mean, like, this is, this is what we want here. Gavel, gavel, gavel me. Like, the people voted for Prop One, seventy-three percent. Do the will of the people, not some bastardization here that hides behind semantics, right? You know, like I said, I got property over across from Kendall Yards, right? I'm pretty sure the mayor lives over there and likes to go there. Again, private because they have their own security that keep the homeless off the streets. That's all the people of Spokane we're asking you for, right? No sit and lie. Get them off the streets. Clearly, it's effective. You got them off the street for the past two days, as someone else said, right? I took my family down to Hoop Fest as well, and my daughter played. I didn't see a single one. Well, actually, I did see one. But today, today I counted on my way from my office from Second Avenue to here, seven blocks, and I counted thirty-six. So get your head out of your orifices.
Thank you. Wendy, and then Jerry Quinn.
Good evening, city council and members. I'm Wendy, vice president of the East Spokane Business Association, regulate the homeless coalition, and a marriage and family therapist. Thanks for being here. It's another long night, and it's another long night because we're still dealing with the wrong problem. So if we keep working on the wrong problem, we'll get the wrong solution. We don't have a housing problem. We have an addiction problem. And right now, Spokane is number one in the nation for overdose deaths. We're also number one for neonatal, for infants born addicted. We're number one on all the wrong things, and I think we even beat Baltimore, which is tragic. So another thing I want to address is, there's no hate for the homeless. It's not like business people or therapists hate the homeless. We hate seeing people suffer. We hate seeing people struggle on the streets without pipelines for treatment, not necessarily pipelines for housing, because we're actually finding that more people die in shelter than unsheltered. So it's because we care. Where are you going to send them? Research shows that people do better creating, recovering from addiction when they're surrounded by their families of origin. Find out where people actually come from and compassionately send them home. And that's not where they stayed last night. Everybody knows the point-in-time count is flawed. So we need to find out where their family and system of support are and send them home so that our resources can be used for our folks. The next thing I want to address is delicate. It's trust. Integrity matters. You guys are representing the will of the people. And we saw some really unseemly interactions on the sixteenth. So I'd love to see your eyes. What we're actually really looking for is an admission of error. I see that in some of the adjustments. Thank you for that. But I'd love a public admission that we actually want to hear the will of the people. We actually want to solve this problem, and we will honor the will of the people and go back and enforce Prop One. The lack of clarity in this current is still, it's still messy. It makes, I've talked to law enforcement. They're like, we don't know how we could enforce this. So it's still messy, which makes it still not compassionate. We asked for Prop One, and we're hearing you say, trust us. And the problem is, we don't. So we'd love to hear that, and we'd love to have you represent your people by bringing back Prop One, sit and lie enforcement citywide, and making a new facility, a detox facility for juveniles and adults with housing and workforce pipelines on the other side of treatment. That will help our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Jerry Quinn, and then John Alder.
Jerry Quinn, I'm still in District Three, I think. No, Two. Could we just call them the South Hill District, the Northwest District, the North, all these legislative and, I can't keep track. Anyway, do you guys know whose responsibility it is to maintain sidewalks in the city of Spokane? Yeah, it's my responsibility. And if I don't pursue that responsibility, what happens? The city will come and make sure that it's taken care of, and I'll pay for it, right? So we have a kind of a problem here because you're actually creating a law that gives people permission to occupy something that a property owner is responsible for. So I think that needs to be addressed in whatever ordinance you come up with. But I also want to say, I appreciate the compassion. I think everybody in this room cares about the existence of these people who are tragically desperate, and it is heartbreaking. But that only goes to a point, because when I drive down Washington at three o'clock in the afternoon, I don't see desperate people. And not that I need to be the judge of that, because I don't know what's going on inside, but I do see people look like they're having a party. They're having fun. They're not desperate. They're not dying of hunger. They've got that, and they could probably order it on the mobile phones we give them. So we have, we have a conflict here that we got to solve. And I think one thing that I want to stress is that, yeah, where they go is an important question to be solved. That's not my job. That's your job. Your job is to listen to the people, fifty-three thousand of which said, keep these people we don't know anything about, we don't know their history, we don't know if they're carrying any weapons, we don't know what they've done in the past. They might be perfectly fine. They might be Mother Teresa disguised as a shopping cart, but we don't know. And until we know, we don't want them near our kids. So that's what we want done. So I appreciate the effort you're making, councilman, but you're not there yet. And if you're wondering why we don't just trust you, it's because we've been trusting you. And all your ordinances, it's not getting better. It's getting worse. So I want you to explain to everybody in this city how you reconcile all these noble, compassionate ordinances that don't have any results attached to them. The problem is worse, not better. So, yeah, I'm a hard, hard no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Alder, then Brandon Dewey, and Dave Billsland.
First thing we should get straight, it wasn't the city that killed Prop One, it was the Supreme Court that killed it. Second of all, somebody tried to say there was a treatment problem, but no housing problem. Well, he's part right about the treatment problem, but that can go all the way back to when alcohol is a problem, still is. I know. My brother died from that. In the eighties, you had crack cocaine turned into a felony possession where you get arrested three times, you were in jail for life. And about twenty years later, we're spending tens of thousand dollars to clean up meth labs in the houses around. But all during that time, anybody who was healthy, a person who could work forty hours a week on a low-income job could find a place to live. Yes, we do have fentanyl, and yes, that is a treatment problem. But we also have, since 2010, housing costs that have gone up so far that nobody can now afford housing on a full-time, low-income job like they used to do before that. As far as the campy goes, I would bet at least ninety percent of those people would not like to be living in their trailer home or on the streets. And we could build homeless shelters twenty-four-seven with food, beds, showers, and storage and seats they can sit in. And plus, the most important thing, start building housing that low-income people can afford.
Thank you, John. Brandon Dewey, and then Dave Billsland.
Good evening, council president and council members. My name is Brandon Dewey. I'm a Spokane resident of District Two, father raising two young kids, and I work downtown as part of a team responsible for stewarding the place where our city gathers. For the past fifteen years or so, I've worked in place management and community development, supporting both small-town main streets and larger districts like downtown Missoula. And I can tell you, no other neighborhood in Spokane carries the civic weight or complexity of our downtown here in Spokane. It's our city's front door where government, business, culture, and community collide every day. And with that comes a level of demand that requires intentional and balanced management. That's why I support the creation of a downtown hospitality zone. If there's a way you can incorporate that into this ordinance, that'd be fantastic. This zone is a clearly defined area with enhanced expectations for accessibility, safety, outreach, and engagement. We need sidewalks, entryways, and gathering spaces that are safe and usable for all residents, workers, visitors, and families like mine. I do want to be clear about something. I do not view sidewalk obstructions or camping solely as public safety or health issues or nuisances. I view them as humanitarian issues as well. It's simply not acceptable that some members of our community have no place else to go. Spokane's streets should not be the last resort for anyone. I don't claim to have the solution for where people should go in Spokane, but I do know that leaving people outside, unsheltered, in unsafe conditions is not a solution either. And that's where you come in. Spokane elected this council to solve hard problems and to do so while balancing input from the community where impacts are felt. This ordinance and its proposed amendments represent a step forward, but they must be paired with thoughtful implementation, compassionate services, and an immediate commitment to defining and activating a downtown hospitality zone. Downtown is different. It needs and deserves a different level of care. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Billsland, then Angel, Tommy O'Sam, and then Bill Conley.
Good evening, council, Dave Billsland, Logan. I support this because I know of about six organizations that work towards eliminating campgrounds, and they try to place the people into housing. Now, there's six organizations doing this. I don't know what all of them are, but I know that Jules Helping Hands is one of them. Now, the point about this thing, the nice change that you made by taking the three- or seven-day limit, when's the last time any one of you looked for a new place to live? Seriously? If you had to suddenly move, how long would it take for you to find an apartment? That's a rhetorical question, but think about it. These people are on the street. Why? Because they lost their housing. They got evicted. That makes it more difficult to get into a place. And you expect them to get into a place in three or seven days? It took me two years to find the apartment I'm in now. I had to stay with a buddy. So putting that time limit was exactly the wrong thing to do. Let these people do what they do so well. They have been going in and taking two to three weeks, and they can eliminate the encampment and get everybody housed and get the encampment cleaned up. It's already in place, and it works. But you're not going to get everybody inside all at once. It takes that hard work. And I think that this ordinance allows for that. Because you got to have some consequences, but Doug, can't put a time limit on this because you can't get a security check done in a week. Okay, they got to get a security check done. They got to get this done, an economic check. They got to find out this, that, and the other thing. They got to research these people and let them get into a place. It's not that easy. I had goodwill in my corner. I let the goodwill guy talk to the landlord. I didn't need to get involved. I had an advocate. Okay? And that's what these, these six groups are. They go out and they advocate, they help them do it, and they bring the people back to help clean up the encampment. We have something that works now, and will work well within this framework. So I'm all for it. I thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Dave, Angel, Bill Conley, and then Dana Harbaugh.
So I'm Angel, Tommy O'Sam. I am the executive director of Yo-Yo at Spokane, and I'm also with the core leadership of Experience Matters. We are a coalition of folks with lived experience and also providers, homeless service providers. Born here in Spokane, Hilliard Girl, District One. So I just want to say that I think that before anything, before we can even move forward with any of this, that we need to figure out how we're going to really, truly engage with our unhoused neighbors. I feel like this legislation is open-ended and unsupported. I also feel like with this- I also feel like with this legislation, the city of Spokane, we are staring down disaster. We're not prepared. We do not have the shelter beds. We don't have a hospitality zone. We do not have the behavioral health beds or the workers or the housing units necessary to do this the right way. Where will people go? We don't have the trust or tools in place to prevent this from becoming another cycle of displacement, trauma, and incarceration. I mean, listen to the room. We're not even unified as a community. You've received opposition from across the spectrum. When groups with historically conflicting interests are sounding the alarm, we have to listen. This is not just an idea. This is not theoretical. The proposed ordinance will directly harm medically fragile, traumatized, unhoused people, many of whom are disabled, elders, or fleeing violence. People who are already falling through the cracks will be criminalized for the mere act of existing in public. So please, do it right, or don't do it at all. Take the time to build the remedies and the capacity Spokane needs, like shelter, outreach, housing pathways, and best practices, best-practiced care. We cannot punish people into stability. We cannot arrest our way out of a housing crisis. We can choose right now to reject urgency that only leads to harm and instead invest in real care, real support, and real solutions.
Thank you. Bill Conley, Dana Harbaugh, and Barbara Woodbridge.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate that. I'd like to, as I listened tonight, I heard a lot of what I call word salads. Let me start with one interesting one is the sanctuary city word, which all of a sudden hits people wrong somehow, but the newspaper, I think it's called the Spokesman Review or something, said it was a sanctuary city law when you did it. So why play with those kinds of words? What you're doing tonight, and I'm here to oppose it, is you're playing with the words. Our community asked for Prop 1. Okay, so there was a problem with Prop 1, let's fix that. But you don't need to play with this sanctuary city idea. What it is, is a beacon. The city of Spokane has become a place to be proud of bringing people here. We have homeless people being bussed in. We have people coming through Spokane of selling drugs because it's easier to bring it through Vancouver, British Columbia. We have more homeless, or more deaths happening because of fentanyl. We have a problem in Spokane because we have sent a beacon up saying, "Come here." Well, now we got to fix it. It's not going to fix it by these fancy words, and it's not going to fix it by having these so-called homeless fixing people who advertise low-barrier housing. The organizations that really want to help people are the ones you guys should be working with, not the ones where there's somebody with pretty fingernails and pink eyebrows on her car. That's not the person you want to be working with. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Harbaugh, Barbara Woodbridge, and Alicia Barbiere, and then Steve Corker.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Dana Harbaugh. I live in District 2, also a downtown property owner and employer. I'm here today to urge the City Council to continue consideration for the downtown hospitality district. I think that the conversations that have occurred to date have been fruitful and am appreciative of those. But a downtown hospitality zone is necessary for our downtown businesses. The second thing I'd like to ask is that the council make sure that this new ordinance is enforceable, that it's not ambiguous, and that it actually leads to improvements in downtown. We need change, and we need it drastically. You know, the city of Spokane does an amazing job of rolling out the red carpet for our big events. Hoop Fest, it's an amazing event. Bloomsday, amazing event. We can do that because of this amazing place that we call home, that's vibrant, that has a beautiful downtown, beautiful city, beautiful river. But then what happens on the Monday after, as another person talked about, we need to turn our attention to the people in our city, and those are our families, our businesses, and our employees. We need to support them. These are waitresses, they're baristas, they're barbers, they're cooks, they're salespeople. And yes, they are, some of them professionals that work for us. Those professionals, 50 to 70 of them, that work in downtown Spokane, that are employed by us, make a nice living wage, which allows them to go downtown, support those local businesses, support our people, and helps pay our taxes. But here's the experience of our employees, our 50 to 70 employees that we have employed over the years at any one time. We have people arriving to work early, afraid to go into the office because of people sleeping at the front door. We have garbage and human waste that we need to deal with on a weekly basis. We've had to put up security fences at all of our alcoves to deter people from sleeping wherever they can find a spot. And we now have to lock our door 24/7, our front door. And this is the experience that a lot of our fellow businesses have downtown. It never used to be like this, and it's just really a shame. So it's critical that we look at this law and make sure that we are actually making improvements to change the conditions and to make things better. It is a wonderful place that we live, but the laws that we have in place, they are not working. We need something that is going to work. We need to make sure that this isn't ambiguous and that's enforced. And I, again, urge a hospitality district be created to protect this investment.
Thank you. Barbara? After Barbara, Alicia? And then Steve Corker.
One thing that you could do to stop homelessness is stop giving money to the fucking thugs in blue and give that money instead to social programs like housing.
All right, everyone, if you please come back together. If everyone would please take their seats. Please take your seats so we can resume the meeting. Yeah. Council members, we will need a motion to extend past 10:00 p.m.
So moved.
It's been moved to second to extend the council meeting past 10:00 p.m. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstention, that is passed. All right. Thank you all for that. Barbara up, and then Alicia Barbiere, then Steve Corker.
All right. Well, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I honestly just want to say what an amazing turnout that we have for all of these people in Spokane. Coming to speak at a city council meeting, like somebody said, it's intimidating. It's a lot. You come and you don't always feel like your voice is heard. But having everybody here tonight, it is definitely a kudos that says we all love Spokane. We all want what's best for Spokane. And I know as the president for the East Spokane Business Association, there are so many times when we listen to the businesses and the residents in our area, and we hear what their concerns and their cries are, and we're dealing with this right now with this ordinance. After the last meeting, we, as Espa, sent out an email that went a letter to each one of you, and Council Member Dylan replied back, and he shared that he has this new ordinance. So I took a look at it, and I thought, okay, let's take a look at the new ordinance and see what exactly it says on there. And as I go through it, and it says that the city intends to establish constitutionally sound laws and regulations with clear standards for conduct on public property that are applicable citywide and with respect to all persons. And I thought, yes, we absolutely want that. But I know that there was a modification because we're trying to make sure that everybody's all included in there. But in reality, when we take a look at it and we have the campers and people on the sidewalks and under the viaducts and railways and different things like that, the people who are out there, in reality, they don't have the same regard. And they have a tremendous amount of garbage when they're out there underneath those viaducts when they're on the streets. We often see that there's feces everywhere. And when I take a look at that and I think, is that really a fair and clear standard on how that is and how it's protecting Spokane? When I also take a look at the different requirements for this ordinance, in reality, all of these camps, when you take a look at them, there's drugs. The people in those camps will tell you there's violence. They steal from each other. They hurt each other. They're not good to each other, and they basically give each other drugs which are killing each other. So they're damaging amongst themselves. When they're close to schools, it's awfully close to school. It doesn't have to be a whole encampment. One person can also be damaging. We all watch Dateline. We all watch that. It usually takes about one person to create a problem. We have to protect those kids. We have to protect our city. There's too many vague words in this. In order for us to approve it today, it does not give a timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Alicia, Steve, and then William Dline.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. My name is Alicia Barbiere. And while I don't believe ordinance C36679 is perfect, I do want to begin by thanking you for listening to the community input and particularly your decision to eliminate any delay in removing encampments. your decision to eliminate any delay in removing encampments and keeping any portion of public ride of ways clear. The changes reflect a real response to what residents and business owners have been asking for. However, after the council meeting two weeks ago, I hope you have heard how important transparency and public input are. Along with many downtown business owners, workers, residents, and speakers that have expressed tonight, I still have serious concerns about how this ordinance will actually be enforced and how the city will track whether outcomes are improving, not just for downtown businesses, but for those experiencing homelessness and addiction on our streets as well. We must keep ride of ways clear and address the complicated question, where will people go? Passing legislation is only the beginning. The real work is now how you will implement it, through coordinated services, consistent enforcement, and clear accountability. I implore you, continue involving constituents in that process. Don't let this be the last step. We want to be part of the solution, and we need to be. Lastly, Spokane still needs a dedicated downtown hospitality zone, a collaborative strategy that protects public safety, supports tourism and commerce, and ensures that help gets to those who need it. Please don't let this conversation end tonight. Our region's economic heart depends on how we care and invest in downtown, its businesses, workers, residents, and visitors alike. Thank you for continuing to listen.
Thank you. Steve?
Tonight, I'd like to speak to you as a former council member who sat on the dais for eight years, and I appreciate the challenges that you face in approaching them. In watching tonight, this is the second ordinance that I'm concerned about with safe and welcoming Spokane, I was concerned about details that are lacking that could really exacerbate the problem. And with this particular ordinance, I find that the lack of a written administrative policy that accompanies this important legislation is unfortunately just kicking the can down the road. And people are unfortunately going to be provided the opportunity to avoid actions that in this policy would allow them to not make the critical decisions they make to really become recovery and get back on the road to a normal life. In the last year, I think three or 400 people have died of drug overdoses. And I've often wondered, what would happen if that many people died in traffic accidents in our city? What would happen if 350 people died in bicycle accidents? What would happen if 300 people died because our water system was polluted? What would happen if 350 people were victims of police brutality or were shot? What would happen if 350 people were poisoned by food coming out of our grocery stores? What would you do? You certainly wouldn't kick the can down the road. You would take the type of critical actions that basically recognize that if people don't get into programs that can change their lives. And that is one of the keys to helping people get back to a quality of life, to get back in housing. Housing first is good for some people, not for everybody. And it's just critically important to do the homework, to write the legislation that will work. Both these ordinances tonight will not work. The devil's in the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. William Delain, Tara Coulter, Chris Batten, and then Hannah Swinson. William? Tara Coulter? Tara?
Good evening. My name is Tara Coulter, and I am a proud resident of North Spokane. I have been a downtown business owner for 25 years. That is over half of my life, so I feel like I can probably speak to this. Two years ago, I became involved in the bid, and today I stand before you because I believe it's my responsibility to get involved. As a business owner, I carry the responsibility of the safety and security, not just of my employees, but for every client who walks through our doors. With 25 years under my belt, there's not a story I couldn't tell you. That includes personal threats to myself, to my staff, to my clients, attacks on my business, picking up waste, both human and drug related. But I didn't come here to reiterate the challenges downtown faces because you all are aware of them. Instead, I want to emphasize a critical point. To truly love someone or some people does not mean we have to enable them and their behavior, especially at the expense of our downtown businesses. These businesses are the heart of our city. We dress, we entertain, we feed, we employ, we counsel, we console your families, and genuinely listen, I'm sorry, and console the community. We do that. We elect you to these positions with faith that you will support us and genuinely listen when we reach out for help. In our recent efforts, we gathered over 700 signatures and over 50 voices asking to be heard, yet you have disregarded each and every single one of them. You cannot pass an ordinance that offers quick fixes filled with uncertainty, especially one that continues to enable our ongoing drug and homelessness issues. Last week, a group of us had the opportunity to meet with a few council members to share our personal experiences and thoughts. During this meeting, we posed several specific questions about the new ordinance. Some of the responses were simply, I'm not sure. I'll have to check. City council cannot lead with uncertainty in vagueness. This leaves police officers answering our calls with the same uncertainty, which is not true leadership. It does not address our issues. It rushes your agenda at the cost and the trust of our downtown businesses and residents of this community. My salon lease recently came to an end, and over half of my clients asked me if I finally was ready to move my business north. I'm proud to report the answer is no. In fact, I am relocating to a new place downtown with a seven-year lease because I believe in standing up for my city. I ask the same of you by supporting the establishment of the downtown hospitality zone that is clear and without question. It would prohibit sitting line obstructing public rights of ways without shelter space requirements for enforcement, prohibit aggressive panhandling, solicitation on public property rights of way at all times, prohibit unauthorized camping on public property with prompter
Thank you, Tara, your time is up.
Thank you.
Chris Batten, Hannah Swinson, and then Michelle Pappas.
Good evening, council. My name's Chris Batten. I'm a resident of District 2, a downtown property owner and a small business owner. I want to thank some of my own tenants out here, Doyle and Tara in particular, for coming down and speaking this evening. It is difficult to come in front of council and talk, but I'm here tonight to say that the legislation in front of us tonight is not a reenactment of Prop 1, is actually a repudiation of Prop 1, in my opinion. It doesn't go far enough. I appreciate Councilman Dylan's amendment, and truth of the matter is downtown's struggling. We hate to admit it, but we're bouncing along the bottom, okay? And I can tell you, as it is right now, we need much stronger enforcement of the laws that we have. Sit-in line needs to be reinforced. Pedestrian interference is not a solution for, a replacement for sit-in lie. In fact, sit-in lie was enacted in 2014 because pedestrian interference did not work, okay? And so I think it's critically important, as we look at our downtown, to recognize that this is everybody's neighborhood. It's not mine, but it's everybody's. And I think that's why tonight, as everybody's coming in front of you, they're telling you specifically what district they're from. It's to let you know that everybody that's coming in front of you tonight is not necessarily from downtown, but is from your districts, and that they're asking you to be the champion for downtown and help support downtown. A healthy, vibrant, active downtown is critical for what we need for this city, and it's critically important. So in my opinion, I appreciate the amendment. It's a step in the right direction, but it's not nearly enough, and we need more for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Hannah Swinson, Michelle Pappas, and then Karen Pooley.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Swinson. I'm the managing attorney of the Housing Justice Project. We are eviction defense attorneys, and I've had the luxury tonight to listen to a lot of stereotypes of what everyone thinks homelessness in Spokane looks like. I see what happens before, the faces of eviction. And what I'm going to talk about is the numbers, because the faces of eviction in Spokane are now the faces of homelessness. Spokane County averages 175 households that are filed for by landlords for eviction every month. That there cannot be that many bad actors every month who are being put on the streets. Of those evicted, of those facing eviction, Spokane County has the highest amount of the state that identifies as disabled. That number is 40%. The reality that the faces of eviction that are becoming every month, new faces of homelessness, are the most vulnerable populations and demographics that we see, that we are switching to talking about who needs to be prosecuted for being on the street, and that concerns me. It fascinates me that as soon as a vulnerable human, because they're all humans, loses the roof over their head, they suddenly become someone, they become a they. It is now us against them, and them is the ones that no longer have a roof over their head, yet they're the ones that we're talking about as being the most vulnerable, the most in need of resources, and the ones who cannot do it alone. We need to prevent the narrative of unhoused individuals in our community as criminal and of those to be untrusted, those that our daughters should not have to walk next to on the street, because this is not the reality. We need ordinances that help people stay housed so that we don't reach these crisis points, and we also need to protect those who have lost the ability to say they have the roof over their head to get rehoused, and that's not putting a mark on their back. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle Pappas, and then Karen Pooley.
Hello, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Michelle Pappas. I am here on behalf of Experienced Matters on their leadership team, and I am a Spokane resident. I come to you today with lived experience of being homeless myself. I've experienced housing insecurity as a teen, then later homelessness, and then homelessness again later as a parent. I spent the majority of my time downtown. I have chosen to have my son attend a daycare in the downtown area. We love downtown, and we have always felt safe. I want to point out that many council members agreed to meet with service providers prior to that vote happening. As far as Experienced Matters is aware, that meeting did not take place. We believe that those closest to the problem are closest to the solution, yet often left out of the conversation. So how can we move forward when we have tried to collaborate but to no avail? I also want to point out that in Spokane, we all belong. We've heard that a lot tonight. Yet at the same time, the narrative has been, you belong so long as you're from here. The messaging is inconsistent. Humankind has historically enacted these types of policies in the past. I was actually speaking to my mom earlier today, and she reminded me of this story. Caesar once demanded the people return to their homeland, and as a result, a woman gave birth in a stable. They continued to flee for their lives under the ongoing oppression of not belonging. What I would ask you to focus on today is requiring shelter availability before enforcement. I would ask that we have designated safe parking and camping, public restrooms, increased garbage can and pickup, storage options for those living on the street, bigger investments in affordable housing and homelessness policies. There are already laws on the books for extreme measures like open drug use and public nudity. Let's please move forward. City council cannot reinstate a law that was struck down by the Washington State Supreme Court that is simply not how these systems work. Today, I ask you to delay this vote so we can work off sound and current data emphasizing outreach with those with lived experience and service providers and centering belonging here in love. Please delay and tell us where people can go, not just where they can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen Pooley, and then Amy Manning.
Hi, council members. My name is Karen Pooley. I'm District 3. My first question is, do you purposely shut off the air conditioning to send us home? Anyway, I am opposed to the housing camping ordinance. It is basically providing camping permits for our public spaces to the homeless. I'm going to reiterate that much of this homelessness issue was caused by Lisa Brown's terrible decisions while she was Senate Majority Leader back during the great financial crime spree of 2008. She could have advocated to stop the massive foreclosure wave, but instead, she made the decision to allow for skyrocketing homelessness, and now she wants the council to defy the voting public. It also appears she's colluding with some members of this council to pass this homeless camping permit ordinance. The spokesman review after the June 16 vote quoted Lisa Brown, saying, what happened to some of the members of this council? That, to me, sure sounds like collusion and impropriety between the mayor's office and some members of this council. This entire opposition, where the public has had to come down here en masse in opposition to the mayor, or to the majority of this council, is actually insulting to the voters. We voted for Prop 1 by 73%. I mean, the majority of us here are asking to codify Prop 1, the same proposition that Councilmember Bingel proposed. And otherwise, you are just defying the will of the people. And if you defy the will of the people, maybe the people should start a recall vote. There are some people that have asked for a citywide zone. I oppose a citywide hospitality zone. The reason is that's valuing people visiting businesses over our city residents. I propose a citywide zone. And finally, I'd like to address you, Councilmember Navarrete. I've never seen such an unprofessional and racist comment like the white space that is totally gross, and I'm glad you're stepping down.
Amy?
Good evening, council members, council president. My name is Amy Manning, and I'm here as a member of Experienced Matters. I'm here as a person with lived homelessness experience, both as a child and as a young adult. Experienced Matters, we are organizing for better homeless and housing policy informed by both provider and lived experience. We know that our experience can build a more compassionate and effective housing policies. And I just want to say that homelessness is a housing problem, and I want to give you some national statistics since we seem to be really talking about like who's from here and who's not. 6.8 million more affordable housing units are needed for extremely low-income families right now, today, over all across the nation. There's no state or county where a renter working full-time at minimum wage can afford a two-bedroom. 70% of all extremely low-income housing are severely cost-burdened, paying more than half of their income in rent. And we've talked about kiddos here. As somebody who experienced homelessness as a child when my house burned down, it is really, really hard for people to do anything when they're homeless. They have to work infinitely more for everything from like where they're going to eat that night, to where they're going to store their things, to how are they going to make their appointments. And these policies that we're talking about that banned their existence throughout the city... And this, these policies that we're talking about, that banned their existence throughout the city without having places for them to go, like 1,000 beds-ish short on shelter, thousands of units of affordable housing short. In Spokane County, we need more than 70,000 units of affordable housing in the next 20 years. And that's like, that's a conservative estimate from the Department of Commerce. Renters in our place are extremely burdened right now because we are a working-class city, and we have had intense rent and housing cost increases over the last 10 years. My house, that I, I'm finally a homebuyer, very exciting. I would not be able to afford it today, and I bought it in 2018. These are the realities of the folks that are becoming homeless. And yes, there is a drug crisis. But homelessness is caused by lack of affordable housing and lack of housing, period. And until, until we start to invest in affordable housing, until we have spots where people can afford to exist, we're just going to be pushing people around the city, and you're gonna, it's going to cost more for service providers to connect them to resources because they're going to lose their, lose all of their things in that chase. And they're going to not be able to connect them when opportunities come. So I just, I implore you to...
Okay. Time is up. That concludes our public testimony and the council commentary. Are we ready to vote? Councilmember Catcart.
I'll go. Well, thank you, everyone, again, for joining us for a longer night and sweating it out. Yeah, I'll just be the first to admit, you know, this is imperfect policy, but it is part of a bigger picture in how we address a lot of these issues. We have been making a lot of strides to address so many of the root causes that we do see. But there's a lot more work to be done specifically on affordable housing, you know, activation. I, I do want to see more housing downtown. We need more housing downtown. Because one of the best ways that you can activate and create public safety is more people. And after COVID, with a lot of vacant storefronts, that's where we started to see, I think, a lot of activities that presented a lot of challenges from, you know, drug use, vandalism, you name it. So the strides that we are making to address those that were pretty united on to get more housing, I think, has been a real testament to how this is part of that strategy. I think one of the challenging things for me is, you know, I, I know that we're trying to come together. We're trying to create different solutions. And it's hard for me. I want to try and do my best, but, you know, through recall threats, through people saying Judgment Day is coming for you between now and the last two weeks. And I hope that the people in this room that are privy to those conversations and know what I'm talking about can address that and challenge that. Because what's happening is, you know, you're asking us to try and work together while these kind of threats loom that makes it really hard to have good faith conversations. And I understand the frustration. I understand the place that it's coming from. But I hope that in our civic life that we can do better. Some changes from, you know, this amendment. I think it was mentioned earlier, the 90-day evaluation. So I am really looking forward to that. I think that was an important component of this ordinance to look at. What is the data? What are we seeing with these changes? The, we deferred it today, but the Outdoor Navigation Center, I think some of the questions from Experience Matters about, you know, where do people go? So that is something that we do have money allocated for. The downtown hospitality zone, I am very interested in that. I do see that as part of the activation strategy. Particularly when we look at design code, pedestrian enhancements, I think there's a lot that we can do there to really build the safe, clean, vibrant downtown that we all want. This ordinance, again, it consolidates a lot of our existing laws on unauthorized camping into a single unified policy. It does mention the prioritized and expedited areas from Proposition 1. I know that might not go as far as people like, but in my conversations over the last week, when I talked to people about Prop 1, and, you know, they're surprised when they find out that there was a two-day notice in that. That would reset after five days to a whole new time period. And people go, "Oh, whoa, I didn't know that." And, you know, again, so when we talk about these policies, they can be imperfect. There are ways to fine-tune them. That's why we're up here. I read every camping law in this state over the last two weeks. I've read camping laws in almost every western major city in the United States. And there's a lot that you'll find here that is consistent. One of the policies that I would highly recommend checking out that kind of helped inspire the question about whether to have a seven-day notice or three-day notice or a notice was Bellingham. You know, we've been talking about the Waukem County approach to their public safety ballot measure that they did finally pass. And so that seemed like a good tool to look at, to have that consistency. And they've seen positive results that I think strike that balance between engagement, making it humane, and as well as having enforcement. Yeah, over the last two weeks, I've had more coffees and lunches with a lot of people across the political spectrum, a lot of people that, you know, I disagree with, and they disagree with me, and that's okay. I don't think that this is a Democratic policy, a Republican policy. I don't think that this is a progressive policy or aggressive policy. I think it's a policy that meets the moment. And, you know, I will always, always extend my hand to you openly, even when you approach it with a clenched fist. So this isn't the end. This is part of something much bigger. And I look forward to continuing the conversation and next steps on how we implement this. And I, again, I thank you all for your engagement, all the feedback. You know, it's important to have that input on the front end. I look forward to how we implement this on the back end as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Catcart.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to everybody who has stayed here until almost 10:20 and who were here two weeks ago late into the night. Appreciate your, your time and patience and, and words. They are obviously really important. There are so many things I could, I could really dive into. I've really been struggling as we've been taking testimony to think about what areas to really focus on. So I think I'll just kind of move through this a little bit and make a few comments to let folks kind of understand where I'm coming from. You know, one of the first things, I think the sign of a really good compromise is something where, you know, you get something that you like, you feel a little, everybody feels a little pain. But my, my struggle here is I feel like everybody, regardless of what side, is just confused and not entirely sure some, my, my perception is that this is a very permissive policy. Some of others have shared that, but there's been some other viewpoints that suggest the exact opposite, that this is the harshest, you know, enforcement that we've ever seen. And it kind of goes to the words. They can be interpreted in a myriad of ways. And I think that's the challenge that this ordinance leaves. Some of the provisions aside, it can just be interpreted in a lot of different ways. And so how will officers actually utilize it? How will the hot teams utilize it? How will this come into effect? The answer is, we don't know. And we don't know because the very last section of the ordinance spells out that all of the rules around enforcement will essentially be housed in an administrative policy. Now, the version of this two weeks ago at least added the piece that said it would be a public rule, which sort of guarantees transparency and some public airing of that at least. And if it were to change, there would be more transparency and the public would know it. With this, it can literally change minute to minute because it's completely up to the administration to decide what is in this policy. And we won't know that as a council. The public will likely not know that. And that is a huge concern of mine. Because regardless of the side you are on in addressing this issue, you don't know what the plan is. I don't think anybody in this room truly does. I really do appreciate the 90 days, but my concern there is it's simply a recital. There is no kind of mandates on what would be a part of the 90 days. If it's anything like the review we got from like the Core Program and others, yeah, it's kind of some nice information, but it lacks any sort of specificity. You're not getting into the raw data. You're not really understanding, you know, truly what's going on. So I'm just worried that we're going to get the kind of typical sanitized, filtered report, everything is wonderful, rainbows and unicorns, without the details that we really need to know that, that this is functioning the way it's supposed to. So I'll just throw that out there. I would rather see a whole section that really focuses in on what those details are, and we will have continuous check-ins throughout the, the policy being implemented. So moving along, knowingly obstruct, that's been brought up a couple of times, that it certainly does provide me with some concerns in terms of, again, how will knowingly really truly be enforced and implemented when it needs to be. But then also, if you look at these sections A and B, you know, it, it talks about the obstruction and camping, but it also then says unless authorized by a state of emergency or pursuant to a permit. Now, the, one gentleman brought up the idea of, of going to a 90-day state of emergency. So my question is, would something like permissive camping outright be a part of something like that? That would be a concern. Obviously, that's for something to be discussed, but the mayor has the power to simply put that into place until the council then takes that on to affirm or decline. And so that would simply be a concern of mine as to how that could happen. Then the pursuant to a permit. Now, I've scratched my head on this since this was originally released a couple of months ago, or the first version was, because this is the same language. And I've just tried to understand it. So is there a goal to actually establish a permit system? Or is it something else? And as I've, I've thought about it and gotten some feedback, it, it sounds like there actually may be something else that's happening where we have what is called a special event permit. And if you read the, the, the details of that special event permit, you know, it talks about a pre-planned activity involving the use of or impact on public property, facilities, and/or needs the provisions of, of public safety services. To me, that could, in a, in a stretch, but could be used as a way to permit legal camping. Now, in what circumstances and all that, that would be up to that administrative policy, so we don't know. But that leaves a lot of questions, and that's, that goes to the ambiguity and the lack of real specificity on this. We talk about all of these exemptions, which are more or less the same exemptions in our existing code, which is largely why PD has stopped enforcing it, because it's really not enforceable the way it's drafted. And which is why there has been an ongoing discussion since last fall on all of these topics, well before Prop 1 was tossed, about modifying our camping laws, about modifying the sit and lie laws, and all of this. That's been an ongoing conversation because it has to be addressed. And, and so by keeping all of these in, it's good that we removed the, the other shelter requirements and other things that had been there as a result of Boise v. Martin going way, way back. But the fact is that all of these exemptions make it a very, very challenging policy to actually, truly enforce. And so there, that is certainly a concern of mine. I also am very concerned about where it says, you know, if a person initially complies but subsequently violates, then they're subject to enforcement. I would like to see more discussion of following up on that. So if there are recidivism is, is ongoing, I think there just needs to be a different approach that we're taking. And community court might not be the right one if that's simply where they continue to be directed. And so that is a concern of mine as well. And then you get to 1202-1009, the integrated outreach. "Encampment removal and prevention" is the title. But when you read the section A at least, it talks about that A notice. So it could be for one day, 50 days, who, whatever, it's just a notice, shall be posted prior to a citation issued. So we're talking about a citation, but we're not really talking about any true enforcement. It's simply so that the Spokane homeless outreach team or a designated service provider can offer navigation and relocation assistance. We're not talking about an enforcement mechanism as a part of that process. It's really just the connecting to resources effort that we're going to take. And then if you go to the, the priority area with regards to schools, parks, daycare centers, essentially the original Prop 1 language that we've tried a couple of times to put back into place. And yes, we absolutely 1,000% have the authority to put that into place. We could have done it two months ago. The, the, the piece here also talks about expediting outreach efforts for navigation and relocation assistance. It doesn't talk about expediting the clearing of the camp or encampment that is within 1,000 feet of our kids' activities. To me, that's an easy one. And, and so I'm very concerned that we're not focusing in on the pieces that the public has demanded, has insisted be a part of this process. Prop 1, you know, 75%, people can say, "Oh, I don't like it," or "I don't think it's effective," and that's fine. But I'll tell you what, that is what the public said they wanted. They wanted to prioritize the enforcement around the activities that their kids are participating in. That was the message. And that's not what's in this ordinance here. And so I think we can do a heck of a lot better. I'm, a couple other, let's see, a couple other pieces that I wanted to touch on. Oh, yeah. So two other things. So there's been a little confusion as well because, and this is, I get it, it's an oversight. And the same issue, I think, affected a previous ordinance tonight. I just didn't bring that up. But the briefing paper, the briefing paper still insinuates that this is the original Prop 1. And in fact, I've seen a reporting even as recent as a week ago from a local media outlet suggesting that we were taking up the original Prop 1. And so I just, there's a lot of confusion. It just adds to some of what we've been discussing here this evening. And then the last thing is, if in fact, if in fact, we are going to go in, we're going to spend all this time, all this resource, connecting people to resources, and then hopefully, as a part of that, at some point, we say, "Okay, regardless, this camp has to close." If that's the case, then there needs to be a policy that says that that camp can't come back. And in Houston, one of the things we learned when Councilmember Bingel and I went down there to observe their homelessness system was that once they clear a camp, I mean, it is cleared. You cannot go back. So similar to Camp Hope, I mean, that was an end to the camp. And there's nothing in here that says that. And so again, with no recidivism policies, with, with things that I believe are ineffective and maybe incentivizing the wrong things, it's not going to come to the, the outcomes that we want. I'm out of time, so I will leave it there, but I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Councilmember Klitschke.
Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you all, to all of you who have been giving us input on this for months and months. I, I think folks have been dealing with this for so long that people end up kind of projecting either hopes or fears or both onto these ordinances. But we all want to address this problem. We all want a safe city and a safe downtown. That's something we all share. This is not just about downtown, however. There is some testimony that would have kind of applied, implied that. We can still do things to work on downtown, but this is not just about downtown. Downtown is very important, but we have these issues all over the city. And sometimes neighborhoods have gotten left behind in this discussion. That doesn't mean that they're not reaching out and commenting to us and letting us know that that's going on, that, but they might not necessarily be coming here and you seeing them say that. And to that, if you're feeling like things are changing and you're the voice of the community and we're not listening to the community, things are changing because we are listening to the community. But there is not a single person here today that represents the entire point of view of the entire community. Everything we do here, everything in these ordinances are going to represent a win to someone, a loss to someone else, and a compromise to someone else. This ordinance is never going to do everything. It's not going to... It's not going to fix all problems, and it's not going to address every single what-if that you can come up with. We are still here. We are still a community, and after this ordinance comes or goes, we are all still going to have to be working on this together. And that's the thing, we still all want to address these problems. Some of you are less interested in what happens to the unhoused after they're not on the public right-of-way, but we still have to deal with it. If you want us to figure out the details, that's great, but there are a lot of community stakeholders out there that do want to help with addressing those details. We have to think of everyone when we're talking about this. Folks who are unhoused are also part of our constituency, part of our community. And we do need to remember also that not everyone who is unhoused is addicted. And not everyone who ends up being addicted got there before they were unhoused. Sometimes eviction can lead to those kinds of things, and some of you know this personally, right? So this is kind of a representation of us trying to balance community interests, community input, and civil rights, and a large national problem, actually multiple national problems. Housing affordability, economic inequality, and a national opioid crisis. Yes, it's particularly bad in Spokane, but a lot of that has to do with the pipelines and the way it's trafficked, not just because Spokane is a bad place and that people don't care. You all care. Okay? So you're going to see things in these ordinances that didn't meet your standards, that aren't addressing the things that you're concerned about, and you're going to see some things that represent progress to you. None of us can walk away from this and go home and say, this is finished. We did it. This is all solved. We're still going to be the same community tomorrow, whether we adopt this ordinance or not. We're all still going to have to continue to work together. So if you came down here hoping for a hospitality zone, don't walk away. Keep working with us. Some folks say you've been talking about this since the roundtables. The first time I heard about the hospitality zone was our first meeting with the downtown Spokane partnership, which was just a few weeks ago. And if you were looking for where should people go, absolutely valid question. We need to keep working on where do people go. We need to keep working on public restrooms, garbage cans, storage, showering for people. We need to figure out how to prevent eviction, get people employed, all of these things. And we're we're working on all of it. We have pre-apprenticeship programs for people that have been incarcerated to get into good trades apprenticeships. We have all of these things out in the community, people doing amazing work that you don't see in here. But they are doing it, and we need to keep working together to solve this issue. I'm going to support this ordinance, but I'm not going to look at anyone and tell them that this is the be-all and end-all. We still have to keep working, and we always will. That's that's the role of government, and that's the role of community. We have to keep evolving and working together. We're never going to solve all of our problems. We can keep working in a positive direction if we listen to each other and we keep making the effort.
Councilmember Bingle.
All right. So many of you guys know this, I come from church world. There's a lot of call and response in the church. And so I want to do something here real quick, if you would indulge me, okay?
Councilmember Bingle, what do you intend to do? I I'm just...
You're going to find out in two seconds if you let me say it.
I don't, that's not our rules on the on the day.
Somebody call a point of order. Call a point of order.
Chair's rule.
What, how am I out of order here, Mr. Wright?
So, Councilmember Bingle, it has never been our policy to really engage. We did answer some questions tonight. They were very pointed. I understand church because I like a big amen back too, but this is not the place for that.
I challenge the chair's ruling, yeah.
Council...
I'll just...
We need a second, I'll say.
Please wait to be called on. Councilmember Dillon.
I think there's no problem with the call, maybe it's the response. The audience response, just because that's outside of our roles. That's that, I'm just trying to translate some of the 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 feeling.
We're going to vote on the challenge?
Vote on the challenge.
Yeah, motion is second. Yeah?
It's the motion is second to challenge the chair's rule about the ability of Councilmember Bingle to have response from the audience. All those...
And I'm just reminded that a yes vote supports the chair's ruling, a no vote is against the chair.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Think in your heads and think in your hearts, okay? Now, one of the things that really grinds my gears when people come in here, right? You know, I was a I was a pastor for 10 years on staff at a church. I've done missionary work. And one of the things that really irritates me is when people come in here and tell me that they care more about individuals than me. And so what I want everybody in here to indulge me, but definitely don't respond, is think to yourselves, how many in this room want people to be off the streets, to be in housing, to get the health care that they need, to get the substance use disorder treatment that they need, to get the mental health treatment that they need? If that's you, you can't respond, but there it is, okay? It's every single person in this room. And the holier-than-thou attitude that comes in here sometimes is so tired and so boring, I can't stand it anymore, okay? Every single person in this room cares deeply about every single individual that is on the streets. It's not that we want them to go away. We want them to get the help that they need so that they can be thriving individuals in our community again. And I take offense to people coming in here saying they care more about those people than we do because it's just incorrect. Now that that's off my chest and nobody responded, I want to tell you a story. All right, so I recently went to a restaurant, and I ordered a burger and fries, okay? Now, when I was there, the server took my order, they left, they came back, and they brought me a hot dog and some hash browns. And I said, excuse me, hey, I I ordered a hamburger and some french fries. And they said, yeah, that's a hamburger and french fries. And I said, well, no, this is a it's a hot dog and hash browns. And they're like, what do you mean? You know, it's meat, it's got a bun, those are potatoes. That's a hamburger and french fries. And I said, excuse me, what I ordered was a hamburger and a french fries. And so they said, okay, we'll come back and we'll fix it. And they brought me another hot dog. And it was like, well, this is just another hot dog. No, no, it's better than what you ordered, and you got more of it, okay? This is what happened to me in the restaurant. And then I sat there and I said, but again, this is not the same thing. I know what a hot dog is. I know what hash browns are, but what I ordered was a hamburger and some french fries. And the server said, you're welcome. And then they walked away. And I was pretty bummed because I didn't get what I wanted. And the worst part was that people were looking at me like I was the crazy one for wanting what I ordered. And so then, still being hungry, I decided, okay, well, I will just eat these hot dogs and I will eat these hash browns because I'm hungry. Now, what you're being told tonight is that you asked for Prop 1, and you asked for citywide sit and lie. And what you're being given is totally better. Trust me, it's totally better. You're going to get everything you wanted and more. It's kind of the same thing. We use kind of the same language, right? Like, trust us, you're going to get it. And guess what? You're welcome. This is the frustration I have a lot of times with this body, is that the voters ask for something. And by the way, you're right, the whole community does not support it. Guess what? There's 230,000 people in our city. If one person doesn't support it, that's not the whole community. But if you get 229,999 people to support something, you should probably listen. Now, if you can get close to 200,000 people, when you have 74% of the people voting for it, like, that's probably something that we should be listening to. But we're not. I think the vast frustration that people right now in our community are feeling is that, listen, just listen to us, okay? We care about these people. We also care about our businesses and our families. We want people to be well. We want to provide the tax base necessary to be able to provide the services that you're trying to give people. We want all of this, and it can all coexist. It's not an either or, it's a both and. They can both coexist. We can both have robust services and robust enforcement. And honestly, that's what we're going to need to turn this town around. But what you're being told is that hot dog and those hash browns are going to be good enough, and you're going to like it. And guess what? You're welcome. This is a problem right now. And what we need to be doing as a body is we need to be listening to the people because you are the ones who generate the economic activity in the city, not us. You are the ones who, again, are building the schools because you're paying the taxes, not us, okay? You are the ones who are setting the course for the future because you are building it, not us. This is something where we, in an elevated position here, sometimes get an elevated sense of self-worth, and we think we're the most important, we need to be listened to, and what we need to be doing actually is shutting our mouths and opening our ears and listening to you people. And that's not what's happening right now, and it's a crying shame. It really is. Now, I hear that, you know, threats looming, you know, make it difficult to have a conversation. So is not getting invited to the conversation. So is not getting invited to the table. And even when we do get invited to the table, we're not listened to. Conversations are meant to say things and hear them, so it's not just threats that are ruining conversations, not being invited to the table. Really makes it hard to have a conversation, all right? Now, to my friends who are saying that it's a housing problem, that is part of the problem. I don't want to dismiss that. It is part of the problem. What I would love in this moment are my housing advocates, okay, because I think what you're doing is really good work. I think we do need to add more housing. Let's start with a couple things that the state is doing to us that is really killing us. How about we get rid of the Growth Management Act, okay? That is absolutely crushing us in the fact that it is driving up the cost of land because we have limited the amount of buildable land in the area. That is driving up costs, okay? What what if we got rid of the REIT taxes, the real estate excise taxes? What if we got rid of B and O? What if we got capital, got rid of capital gains taxes? What if we got rid of those awful green building mandates that are sending costs skyrocketing for us to build housing? I would love, for the same passion and fervor that you're coming down here to say it's a housing problem, help us then with our state policies because those things are killing us. That is making it so expensive for us to build housing. You're right, housing costs are getting far more expensive, and they did accelerate in the last 30 years after GMA was instituted, after these green building mandates went into place. Those are massive problems for us, okay? You typically have your land, your labor, your lumber as your cost to build housing. Guess what? They've added a fourth L, which is legislation, okay? Legislation is killing us when it comes to building affordable housing. And guess what? The private sector can build affordable housing far better than the than the than the public sector, because the public sector, you have to add a whole bunch of stuff on top of it where they have to meet evergreen standards. Now, you got to pay Davis Bacon wages, you got to do all kinds of stuff. That 50% is what I believe Mr. Ben Stucker and Slick shared with me, is that it adds 50% to the cost to build housing, okay? Maybe we then allow private builders to build these housing programs for us with government money without all the extra, the extra costs associated. Maybe we might be able to get a lot more affordable housing built, okay? Number six, implementing policies like, number six, I have a list, you didn't know that, but I have a list here. Anne of Burb, excuse me, man. The problem is, is that if we continue to implement policies like this, when the rest of the West Coast is cracking down on stuff like this, what will happen is Spokane will be the destination for people to go. We're seeing it already as Colville is closing it down, Moses Lake is closing it down, Seattle and Portland are even cracking down on this kind of stuff. We see it in our DSP accounts as they're counting folks who are coming in to these areas. As people are starting to crack down on them, they're going to go to a place where certain behavior is tolerated. We in Spokane are creating a ripe, fertile ground for folks who want to engage in that kind of behavior. It should not shock us when those numbers go up, okay? To the question of where will people go, this is an absolutely imperative question. It is an absolutely imperative question because I don't disagree. I want people to have a place to go. This is where tomorrow, we could bond out our $15.90 and actually build facilities that are going to make a difference. We do need serious, long-term substance use disorder treatment facilities with the ability to staff them, and 1590 can help that, okay? We can build those facilities. We do need serious, long-term stay for folks who have serious mental illness. Those are things that we can bond out 1590 to build those facilities because that really is what's going to make a difference, more than housing, more than anything else. If we could address those two things, Spokane is different tomorrow, okay? We do need to answer the question of where will people go. And those are things that we're working on pretty seriously, or at least I'm working on pretty seriously, because it does need to be addressed. Without it, we will continue to have folks who are not getting their needs met, and we will continue to overspend and be inefficient with our dollars trying to address a problem where we're just not even coming close to. Lastly, public restrooms are a really bad idea. If you look at cities that have implemented them, they became places where like, you know, pimps were were taking control of them, tons of drug use, tons of crime, everything like that. Public restrooms are a really bad idea unless you pay a lot of money for security. And if you're willing to pay the money for security, yeah, they might not be so bad, but that's a hefty, hefty cost. All of that being said again, thank you all so much for being here. It is almost 11 o'clock. God bless you, I appreciate it.
Any other council commentary? I'll go, Councilmember's opposed, then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank everyone for coming and talking, not just tonight, not just two weeks ago, but for months, we've been having these conversations formally and informally, so I really want to appreciate that. I know I've personally learned a lot, not just this last couple of weeks, but over these months. And in particular, I've learned a lot about the unique needs of downtown and how much people who work and live downtown care about their community and how hard they work for our community too. I think we all understand that homelessness is a complex issue, and no one particular law or no one, no one initiative, no one initiative, no single initiative will solve it. That's why the city adopted a comprehensive strategy with Home Starts here a couple of weeks ago. I actually agree with Councilmember Bingle that we need robust services and robust enforcement. We need multiple things to make this, to make an improvement in our community. This ordinance only addresses half of it. It's only talking about obstruction and unauthorized camping. And so some things I want to clarify on it that I think we're we're missing is that this ordinance does apply to protecting any public space. I appreciate hearing those concerns, and I fought to include that as a revision to make sure that it protects any public space, and it simplifies it to make it citywide. I believe we all can agree that people shouldn't be sleeping on the streets. And obstruction is about safe passage on sidewalks for all people. It's for ADA compliance, families, everyone getting around on there. I'm a very visual person, so ask Jacoby if he can put up the maps because I I think it's easier to see these. But it has the current law or formal law of Prop 1, sit and lie, that's currently in place, and then the new ordinance that's being proposed and talked about tonight. And on these maps, you can see, sit and lie only applies to the downtown core, and it only applies during the hours of 6 o'clock to midnight. This proposed ordinance, and it says you cannot sit or lie on the right-of-way on the sidewalks. This new ordinance would take that and apply it to the entire city, any public space, all times of the day, regardless of shelter bed availability. So it is a stronger version of sit and lie, and that is obstruction. Jacoby, can you go the Prop 1? This is the area that is covered by Proposition 1. It's 1,000 feet of daycares, parks, schools, and the green areas are along the parks and the river. This is Proposition 1. It also currently is under a camping ordinance that says that takes up to 48, you have up to 48 hours to get out of a camp, to decommission a camp, and then up to five days, and the city starts that process over again. So the current law for decommissioning allows up to 24 hours for someone to stay there, and then expands beyond that. So if you go to the next slide, citywide, this new ordinance makes it the same everywhere in the city. Simple. It also does not have a required amount of time. It is stronger, and any camp can be addressed immediately across the entire city. That is stronger than Proposition 1. So I understand the concerns. I under, I hear that people wanted that, but I think that needing to see the visual change is that this is stronger than Proposition 1, is everywhere in the city, and it is makes it stronger for downtown with obstruction. So I think my support, I will be supporting this, and I think a big part of this is about that we need to be looking at solutions next. We've been stuck on a debate about where people are allowed to camp and not camp. And like I said, I believe we all agree that people shouldn't be sleeping on our streets. And so we need to start looking at those solutions, such as emergency shelter beds, sobering beds, permanent housing, places like safe stays and safe parking. We don't have capacity in the current system for all of that. A lot of people say, well, just send people to jail. They're breaking the law. Jail's full. The current law actually says that people who violate camping will not be cited and go to jail. They'll just be cited and released. That is current law. The new ordinance does not make that restriction. It emphasizes that people will have the opportunity to go to therapeutic court, that they'll have that engagement, they'll do that outreach. I think that we all agree, we heard that loud and clear, that most people agree that we should try and give people opportunities first. We heard tonight that jail's really expensive, and it has a high return rate. If we use a navigation center, only about 9% of people return. Jail also doesn't have the services to help people when they get out of jail, it doesn't have a house for them where they go, it doesn't have rehab, it's just, you're in jail, and now you're out on the street, here's your bus pass. So we need to have those services to help make sure that people are stable and secure. I appreciate the conversations and issues around downtown, and the uniqueness around downtown. I will be definitely interested in exploring the hospitality zone, I indicated that very early on. A lot of folks wrote in about the hospitality zone and said, support this for these reasons, they said, one, hospitality zone prohibits sitting, lying, or obstructing public right-of-ways without shelter space requirements for enforcement. This ordinance does that. Two, hospitality zone would prohibit aggressive panhandling and solicitation on public property and rights-of-way at all times, this ordinance does that. Three, it prohibits unauthorized camping on public property without delays for removal, this ordinance does that, there is no requirement on amount of time. And encourages voluntary compliance for access to emergency shelter and treatment to avoid citations or arrests. It starts with engagement first and enforcement last, this ordinance does that. The other part, it talked about funding, it allocates more resources for outreach engagement, increased foot patrols, and funding to clean up I-90 on-ramps and off-ramps, that, this ordinance does not address funding. That's a different ordinance, that's a budget, so we can address the resources in a different budget, it cannot be the same ordinance. But I will definitely be interested in looking to it, I think there's a lot of other potential benefits of a hospitality zone too. So the folks that are encouraging and wanting a hospitality zone, I think a lot of your concerns are addressed in the current existing ordinance, and there's more that we can keep doing and working towards that. I was really struck by the comment tonight about a person with their family not feeling safe, while also the person experiencing mental health or drug addiction also not feeling safe, like they belong in our city, and how can those two exist at the same time? I think that is a struggle, it's a struggle for everyone in our community, I think that's what we hear tonight, is how can we all exist and belong? I think we have to keep working towards that. This ordinance does not address the whole thing for everyone to belong, it's about allowing obstruction, or not allowing obstruction in public spaces. So it's creating a safety for those on the streets in our public spaces, so they have safe. We need to work on the next half, which is, how do we get the resources to people, how do we get them stable, how do we get them permanently stable and off the streets, deal with the drug addiction? We heard that loud and clear during the roundtables, this isn't addressing the root causes. You are correct, this ordinance cannot address the root causes, that's not how the ordinance works. We need to work towards those things, and so that's why I'm supporting this ordinance, I think we can start having those conversations about what are the other barriers, and how do we start moving people into permanent supportive housing, and that's the direction I think that we need to start focusing our efforts as a community.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll go again. So, again, guys, sit-in lie's totally back, alright? It's totally back, except for in this ordinance, sit-in lie is completely repealed, okay? It's put into a different section, and they say you can't do this action, but again, if what they're trying to accomplish is, again, just reinstating sit-in lie, they voted against a citywide sit-in lie policy that we brought forward. Would have been a simple, easy, clean thing to do, we removed all their requirements, we removed all the references to homelessness, everything like that, it would have been a clean, standalone sit-in lie policy, that failed, okay? If our intention was just to reinstate sit-in lie, why would we not just vote for that policy, okay? Because I hear some of the councilmembers saying, we agree with you, councilmember Bingle, we need to do this, words are nice, but actions are better. Let me tell you some other things that failed, okay? So, five on this body voted against resolutions...
Point of order.
Yes, I can bring up the vote.
Undermining the previous decisions of a body?
It's not undermining, it's highlighting.
Point of order.
Councilmembers, please.
Councilmember Cat Cart? What is your point of order, councilmember Cat Cart?
That this is simply trying to delay a councilmember's ability to speak on his time.
Yeah, can we stop the time, by the way? Yeah.
So councilmember Bingle is speaking to a previous vote...
Yes.
...made by this council.
Yes.
Which is part of the record.
Yes.
Then I will allow you to speak to the record.
This body, by a vote of five to two, several times voted this way, okay? Voted against resolutions opposing, okay, the enforcement of Proposition 1, okay? That failed. If our intention was to enforce Proposition 1, why would we not just support that resolution then, okay? We also voted against reinstituting Prop 1 not less than four times, okay? We could always make a motion tonight to suspend the rules, because we do this regularly, we did it two weeks ago, we could suspend the rules and reinstitute Prop 1 tonight, tonight we could do that, okay? But we don't want to. So when we tell you we're giving you Prop 1+, again, it really is Prop None, as I've been calling it, okay? Why would we continue to say, trust us, trust us, trust us, trust us? We voted against five to two resolutions opposing House Bill 1380, which was basically our attempt to get state, our state partners to overturn Prop 1 without us being able to do it ourselves. Why would we do that if our intention was to give you everything we're telling you we're giving you? It just doesn't make sense to me. Now again, I know I went to Rogers, I know I'm the college dropout, but it still doesn't make any sense, okay? And I hope others here who went to a better spot, sorry, Angel, appreciate you, but again, I just don't see how that makes any sense, okay? Now, some other points of order that were called last week that were fun, a point of order was called on me for speculating about what was going on in the process. I do appreciate the spokesman coming out and saying exactly what had happened was exactly what I was speculating, but... Now again, if our intention is to do everything that we're saying, why not just reinstitute those policies? Or is it the fact that we are playing a language game, we are trying to do something that makes it look as if you're getting what you're asking for, and we're just not going to do it? Or that's fine, maybe we give you a policy close, but we're just not going to enforce it, because we've shown that we're not intending to enforce it, okay? Now, I did appreciate the visual there, but I think everybody here has some visuals burned into their brains from the times that you've had to clean up human waste, or drug waste, or something like that. Those aren't visuals we need to display up here, because they're burned into your brain. Every single person in that room has dealt with that situation, okay? That's a visual that we don't want to see anymore, but we will continue to see it with this policy. Again, you're hearing a lot of trust us, my question to you is, do you trust us?
Thank you, councilmember Bingle. Councilmember Dylan?
I hope the pinky's okay after the pounding. Yeah, I'll just say, you know, with respect to, specifically the comments about Portland and it's doing this research about different policies, urge you to check out an article in ProPublica, "Portland Said It Was Investing In Homeless People's Safety, Deaths Have Quadrupled. The City Responded To An Increase In Homeless Deaths By Intensifying Encampment Sweeps At The Expense Of Permanent Housing. Experts Say This Has Perpetuated The Problem." Thank you.
Councilmember Cat Cart?
Yeah, just really quick, since it was brought up earlier, you know, there are multiple pieces, obviously, to addressing homelessness, and this is really supposed to be the enforcement piece of the activities that we have said that don't meet the standards of our community, but the other part of it really is about actually exiting individuals from homelessness, or at least I believe that that's what it's supposed to be about. And yet, we continue to double down and double down on the exact same policies, the exact same things that we've been doing for many, many years, that are clearly not making a significant impact. It's really, really frustrating. We just adopted our five-year plan to end homelessness, and yes, I know, end homelessness, it's a joke, but we just did, and it's the exact same thing that we've been adopting, essentially, going back. We just signed an ILA with the county in the valley on homelessness, it's just doubling down on what is in that five-year plan that is doubling down on the status quo. And now we're considering our consolidated plan, and our biggest concern is wordsmithing a couple dozen words, not what's actually functionally in it, but just words to make sure that if somebody hits Ctrl+F and types in the word diversity, that something doesn't come up. That is all that we are worried about with the consolidated plan. I don't get that, I don't get that, because these are our opportunities to actually make such a difference, and we just, we treat it like it's pro forma, we do. And I talked to some folks in other jurisdictions when we were encountering the ILA, trying to encourage, hey, is there an opportunity here for us to do something with some vision that's bold, that's big, that's a different way of approaching this? And honestly, the feedback was, well, I mean, we just want you guys to be, continue to be saddled with this issue, and we just want to continue doing things the way we're doing. There's just, you know, there, now, there's a lot of relational issues that probably plays into some of that, that certainly impacts the relationship and how we work together, but it just, it is so frustrating to me that, you know, through, I think, strong and smart incentives, through, you know, just better programs that actually, truly encourage people to change their lives, to do the things that we expected them, to attend drug treatment, to address their mental health, and that we would help them do those things, provide access to those sort of things, but then, when they're doing it, they fall to the back of the line. And it's the people at the front of the line for housing and services are typically the ones who are not improving their lot in life, that are not necessarily doing those things that we want to do. And that doesn't mean that others don't deserve, or we don't, we need to assist others, but it means that we are creating a reverse, if not perverse, incentive for individuals to truly move up. And so I think we need to be rewarding individuals for the actions and steps that they are taking individually, and that's just not where we are. So there's just so many pieces to this overall issue, and I've said from the day I was elected, you know, we need an A-to-Z plan, and I think there is probably some hope that maybe the Home Is Here ordinance that we adopted two weeks ago would be that, and I think, as I said then, it's the outline of what could eventually become a plan, because there is some good stuff, some things that I don't think make a lot of sense, but there is some good stuff in there. But the challenge is, we haven't put it all together, and that's what we really, really need to do, is put it all together and have a streamlined system. We have a navigation center, I don't think anybody has even really addressed it as being a navigation center in months, at least that I've noticed, I think we're just treating it as another shelter, but the whole idea is that we should be directing people there for a very, very short period of time, and then moving them on to the next step, and that should be our goal, is a constant churn, and the ultimate outcome needs to be exiting homelessness. And so often, the data, the information that we're presented, it doesn't talk about employment or jobs that people have been, have received as a part of, you know, their workforce training or as a part of a work with a provider, we don't hear about that. We might hear a little bit about some access to certain services and things, and we certainly don't hear much at all about true, permanent exits from homelessness. And to me, that's what this is all about, if we're gonna spend millions and millions and millions of dollars, frankly, even if we're gonna spend it in ways that I don't necessarily agree with, can we at least be committed to actual outcomes that I think the taxpayers, that the entire community is deserving of? That should be our goal, is actually exiting individuals from homelessness, not policies that aid them in staying in place. And I think that that is too much of what we are focused on, and not the big, bold vision that is actually gonna be a game changer for our community.
Councilmember Averati?
Thank you. So I, I'm gonna be supporting this tonight with the hope that, you know, we're pushing for, we've been pushing for garbage cans and storage units, also the hope that hospitality zone may be established, so I hope that does happen, also a navigation center. One thing that councilmember Bingle did say, it's, we're gonna continue see, to continue to see urine and feces, but if you don't agree with public restrooms, where are they gonna be going? So, it's, I think councilmember Klitschko did nail it when she said that this ordinance will address some issues that will keep people happy, some will not, but, you know, it's an ongoing process, and I'm hopeful that we'll reach it, so, again, I'll be supporting this tonight.
Thank you. Well, again, I appreciate you all being here tonight, another late night for us. I do want to address that we're not making money off of homelessness, in fact, we're struggling to find money to support those folks out there, it is not a cash, it is not a cash cow, as some people might think. And I agree, we all want them somewhere safe, and the elephant in the room is, where do they go? Because we have had such a pushback when we've had ideas or suggestions from the community. That's like, we're so focused on that, somebody said, well, you know, if somebody goes to the hospital with a heart attack, are you gonna ask them where they're from? Or are you gonna treat them? Some of these people are just that sick. We've talked about other systems up here that we do not control as a city, we do not control those other systems that are part of these solutions that we're all asking for. I support citywide, you heard somebody say that, it is now happening in Hilliard. What makes Hilliard any less, or East Central, or West Central? Because people are mobile, and they're going to go where they feel they can be safe. Yes, we need a parking place for women who are actually, mostly women, who are living in their cars. They're not a drain on the system, they just want somewhere safe to park until they get a couple of paychecks to get an apartment. Yes, we need more treatment centers, absolutely, that's Department of Health. We can't just stand up a treatment center. We can support one, we can advocate funding, we can put $15.90 money towards it, that's a challenge for us. There are some programs out there that are coming along beside us that are providing places to be when they come out of jail, and when they come out of treatment. That's been a challenge, something we've never talked about, because they can go to jail, and they come out, and they're right back on the streets again, and it can be a revolving door. We've been waiting, 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 and waiting. We've been waiting. Nothing's working. I will say, you may not like Jules Helping Hand, Scattered Sight, but they're sheltering over 100 people, what if 100 more people were on the streets? You may not like Catholic charities, but what if those peoples didn't have a place to be? So, there is some progress, think about that, think about that. If they weren't here, what would we be doing? How would we be handling that increase? No, this is not perfect, thank you, councilmember Dylan, but I am tired of us being paralyzed, because we can come back and, we can defer this, we can come back and debate it again, we can defer it, we can come back and debate it again, we can defer it, and we are still moving no closer to what we're trying to get to. So, I'm gonna support it, because it is a start. It's a start. Whether you can agree like, oh my gosh, it was already set up, no. We all have our personal experience and opinions. I, contrary to what you may think, am not a rubber stamp. Now, I don't have lived experience, but I care for people that we are talking about. So I live it too, and I see it, and I've seen how they can thrive if they are planted in fertile ground. And some of the things you all want, we want too. I want a vibrant downtown, I want it to be safe, all those things, but if we don't start somewhere, then we'll be just right here. So with that, I will be supporting it, and please prepare to vote. Thank you. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C-36694 regarding aggressive solicitation, adopting new sections 10.60, .005, and .015 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
We have several public comment, David Billsland... Dave, are you coming in?
Good evening again, folks. I need to remind you of something, that this ordinance still makes it illegal to collect signatures on a petition, which is guaranteed right by the state constitution. Do I need to ask the chair to make a motion to eliminate that portion in order to get it done, so you don't go against the state freaking constitution? At a, I believe it's Section D, under solicitation... At a, I believe it's section D, under solicitations, in the first section of this ordinance, under definitions, and the very last one says, collecting signatures on a petition. In the first chapter, fourth section of the state constitution, it guarantees our right to collect signatures, and to gather peaceably. That's how important these rights are. And this ordinance precludes people from operating petitions. Now, I understand that some people get a little vociferous about it. I've gotten in a few interesting discussions when I've been collecting signatures. But that's what it's about, getting that interchange, back and forth. We bring up these different initiatives and whatnot, so that we can change the law. And we've done that several times in this state. It's how we legalized medical marijuana. That's how we legalized recreational marijuana. It was through a state initiative. Signatures were gathered legally, and this ordinance does not allow people to do that. If you pass this with that phrase in it, I'll be looking for a lawyer tomorrow, okay? To get that changed. Do me a favor and do it now, so I don't have to spend that much time with the cotton-picking lawyer.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Is Richard Bochek still in the house? I got to see him. Emily, if you're still, Emily Cameron, and then Tyler Tumush.
Emily with the Downtown Partnership. I don't know if folks realize that the last ordinance repealed panhandling, so this is important. And I want to ask that you support it tonight, so that we do have what are very important regulations to make sure that we are continuing to focus on, not only safety, but really both for the individual, for pedestrians, and vehicles, because panhandling is something that we do in particular in concentrated areas like downtown experience. So I'm going to be brief, because I've already talked, and it is getting late, but I do want to highlight the fact that this is something that we can further enhance through something like a hospitality zone. Whether it be exploring restaurant patios, whether it's looking at line queuing, ATMs, there are important parts of downtown where we need to set boundaries, so that we are not creating a situation where captive audiences continue to be harassed and then avoid our central places. And so when we talk about a downtown zone, whether it be Seattle's Downtown Activation Plan, to San Diego's Convention District, or even Bellingham, who does have a downtown focus area that was announced with some of their state of emergency around the opioid crisis, we have an opportunity to further enhance this. So I look forward to working with you as we think about a downtown zone and make this a place where our public spaces are for everyone to enjoy. I also want to leave one last item for you to consider. When you bring back the prior ordinance in 90 days to evaluate implementation, think about this too, include this in that evaluation, so that we're comprehensive in looking at all the pieces. So thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Tumush, and then Derek Azaro. Go ahead, Tyler.
Tyler Tumush, District 1. Yeah, I agree, aggressive solicitation should be illegal. I don't know if you've ever been to New Orleans, but I've given a dollar to a street performer, and they followed me all the way down Bourbon Street, and I found that pretty aggressive. So definitely agree to that, should not be, we should not be allowing that. I would take it further, and just restrict panhandling altogether. And one of the reasons I have for that is, well, I believe city council passed a fairly recent ordinance that allows, doesn't allow employers to discriminate against housing status. To me, this means there should be some folks, you know, possibly getting jobs that wouldn't, you know, have a, necessarily need to panhandle. So also, I guess an environmental factor is, you know, every time I see a panhandler, they usually leave behind a good excessive amounts of garbage where they were. And what happens to that garbage? Well, if the volunteers, the neighborhood councils, any of the organizations aren't there to pick it up, it's not code enforcement. The garbage ends up in the rain gutters, and then that ends up in the river, Leetaw Creek, it all ends up in our water. So I don't think that panhandling should be legal, unless we're willing to put out more trash cans, hold people responsible for putting their garbage, you know, where it belongs, instead of on the street. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Derek Azaro, Doyle Wheeler, and then Larry Andrews.
Derek Azaro, again, supporting all the children of Spokane that aren't even recognized. If it's got Zepone and Klitsky's name on it, I would say, I don't trust it. As far as panhandling goes, if you do, if you do away with panhandling, you're going to put all the small business people out of business. Because where do they spend the money at? Alcohol. You put all, you're going to put all the dealers out of business, because, you know, they're going to buy the drugs with the money. That's really what they're doing. They're just getting, getting money, and turning it around, and turning it into what's not good for them. You guys have a bottle tax, you got a sales tax with 10%, you got a bottle tax, you know, a bottle of whiskey costs you 10 times what it does anywhere else. But you're going to put the small businesses out of business if you do away with panhandling. I think you should do away with panhandling, but I'm just saying, you might want to think about it. You're going to put all those small little gas stations and that you have, you know, little mini-markets you have around all the poor neighborhoods. They're just victimizing on people there. So it's not just drugs, it's also alcohol in this city is just as bad. Families are broken up because of alcohol, kids are just left without their dads or their moms. You know, you've got to focus on what's really important. With panhandling, no, you should do away with that, because it is something that's not good for the city, any city. But like I said, Zepone and Klitsky got their name on it? I wouldn't go with it at all. I don't trust them, neither does anybody else.
Thank you. Doyle Wheeler, if you're still in the house.
Thanks for being here so late. Appreciate it. Appreciate your service to our community. Just to clarify again, I'm Doyle Wheeler. I live in District 2. I didn't clarify that last time. So thank you to the councilmembers in my district. I own three downtown businesses, and so I'm here to represent them, as well as my family, my employees, my customers and clients, and neighbors. My only concern is that I really don't understand what's going on with this. I didn't get any clarity. I tried reading it, I didn't understand it, and I know I'm not exactly stupid, but I just didn't get it. And so if there's any way, when you're in your discussions, to clarify what's going on, I'd appreciate it. Couple of examples, we heard a little bit about the on-ramp and off-ramp for I-90, entrance and exit to our city, is what I like to call it, the first impression, the last impression. On the way off of the Maple Ramp, there's camping. I don't really see a whole lot of panhandling until I get to the Division entrance. But I will say, when we're leaving the city, at the Maple Exit, getting onto I-90, it is not necessarily aggressive, because my window's up, but they're always there, and it is definitely a, I don't know the correct words, but we have to look around the people that are standing there, and the nose of our cars are always out in traffic. I see people stopping all the time to let people through. It's very, very confusing. So there's, there's those situations happening all across the city. I just don't take time to see them. I see our homeless neighbors panhandling every day, and it breaks my heart. I come to this. It's a survival. It's a survival tactic. It's a primal tactic. When you're at rock bottom, decisions have to be made fast, and advantage is your currency. So if I don't understand the law, and other people experiencing homelessness may not understand the law, I feel like a strong framework around panhandling would make a lot of sense. And finally, I'm going to say it again, I support establishing a downtown hospitality zone. I think it would help lower the numbers of deaths in our community, and it was, it would also lift up the opportunities for people from the north, the south, and Liberty Lake to come and imbibe in a safe place. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Andrews.
Larry Andrews, a citizen of Spokane and a business owner of Spokane, and a great District Number One member. Anyway, the first thing when I get on the freeway and I come off, and I'm going up the South Hill, I see the panhandler right on the right, right there by the Zips Restaurant downtown on Third. Okay, so then, so then I, he's blocking the sight there, because I'm trying to make a turn to the right, you know? And, and so, he's, he's got his shit all over the place, literally. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Dillon. But it's, that's just the beginning, but then you're coming down the hill for Maple and Ash, and you have them both on both sides, panhandling you there, and some of them get aggressive. We've had them even knock on the windows, trying to get money from us. Okay? Okay, so then, so then, let's go up to the crash and bash center of the city, okay? This is where you guys are going to narrow the Division Street, which I think if you look it up, the North Foothills Drive and Division. I want you to see how many wrecks have been there just lately. Okay, I mean, I've seen some real beauties there. They have the whole street blocked off, and I, and I think we've had three or four, and we've probably lost a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of vehicles already this year. And guess what? You're panhandling on both sides of Division there, and people are trying to make turns and do everything else, and now what we're going to do is, we're going to reduce one of those lanes. You've got to be out of your minds, and I seen it tonight, you are out of your minds. Because I, I ended up buying four hot dogs instead of one burger, okay? The panhandling's got to go. I mean, I have to have a business license to run in the city of Spokane, and I know they don't have a business license to run in Spokane. So why do they get a bye, and I don't? Maybe I shouldn't just pay my business license and see what happens, huh? I mean, you guys let the rules go all the time, and, and you don't care, you don't even care about federal rules. And so I don't know which rules I should do anymore, you know? We buy inspections all the time, because I always thought it was good to follow the rules, but I'm finding out here, this council, the five of you, don't follow the rules. And, and, and you get along just fine, so I probably would too. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary? Councilmember Catcart?
Yeah, I will, I'll be supporting this tonight. We, we definitely have to put this back in place, after having removed it as a part of the changes with the camping ordinance. I, a little bit of confusion on my part, just trying to understand maybe how, how it got to be rewritten the way it was, because if you look at the code now, it's, it's much more substantial. But it does clearly delineate that essentially what is in our existing code is intended to be how this is enforced. It makes the reference specifically to 10.6, our existing 10.60, .010, and, and says that essentially the enforcement should comply with, with how it was written. I don't quite understand why we did it that way, but it does seem to me that most all of what is, most all of what was in that ordinance to begin with will remain, and we shouldn't see too much of a, of a gap between the two policies. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, councilmember Dillon, and councilmembers Zepone.
Yeah, thank you. I think that was a really good summary. I think to the earlier question about signature gathering, when you look at the definitions between what is aggressive solicitation and solicitation, signature gathering is protected speech, so, and that could be, you know, gathering signatures for a charitable organization, nonprofit-raising funds. We see this all the time. The ordinance is content neutral, so it still respects people's First Amendment rights, while also defining what is aggressive solicitation and putting it in its own code.
Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I, I'm glad to be supporting this and making sure that there's no gap after the previous ordinance was supported, and I want to thank Downtown Spokane Partnership for really bringing that forward and highlighting that, and noticing that. Another example of the city listening to stakeholders when there are issues that are, come up in our ordinances, and we quickly brought forward an ordinance quickly after that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other commentary? I will say I strongly support this, because anecdotally, I know many people who have housing that are downtown panhandling, and they have a place to go, and it's kind of like a job. Well, it is a job for them, and I've heard stories, some of them can, and I've heard they fight over corner locations. Some corners are better than other corners. So I strongly support this, I look forward to strong enforcement of this, and really, let's just kind of stop that going forward. Prepare to vote. Thank you. Ms. Fister?
First reading ordinances, ordinance C 36708 relating to designated festival streets adopting a new section 12.08.060 to the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C 36709 to ensure that housing development receiving public support is contributing to the availability of units providing long-term occupancy. Modifying Sections 8.15.020 and .040 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C 36715 of the city of Spokane establishing an honorary roadway naming program and enacting a new chapter 12.14 to Title 12 of the Spokane Municipal Code for direction as deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We have several public comments. We have John Alder, if he's still in the house. I don't see him. Sarah Rose, is she online?
No.
No, no Sarah Rose. Richard Bochek? I don't see Richard. And then I have Larry Andrews.
I'm, I live in the city right now, and I have a business here too. So, and I am a member of District 1, which is the greatest district in Spokane. I, I see that Mr. Bingle has sponsored this, and so I'm going to put my voice to him, because I trust this person. The other person, though, that's on the list, I, I don't trust the person, okay? I, I don't trust the person to the point, I, to the point I could even throw the person, which wouldn't be very far. So I'm, I think this is an important thing, a Human Rights Commission, everybody should have the rights, and it's important. And I'm putting my faith into Mr. Bingle, because he's one of the two that I actually trust here. And the rest of them, I don't trust at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. That concludes our legislative session tonight. We are going into open forum. We have, there's 20 here, but I think many of them have left. Remember, your comments are two minutes, direct them all to the chair. We'll start with Christine Quinn. Earl Moore. Open forum, Earl. And after her, we have Catherine Campbell, if she's still in the house, and Lawrence Brown.
I actually was going to speak on camping.
Oh.
Camping, and I'm not sure what happened. And also, I was going to speak on the opioid funds.
That one got deferred.
Oh, okay. So I guess I can speak about anything? Okay. So here's something. We have 75% of the citizens of Spokane that voted, almost 75%. This is what I say, they don't know what they voted for. Because you, most of you do not stand for what Spokane and the people of Spokane want. They don't know what they voted for, and they're finding out. It's crazy, these policies. And you keep digging in deeper. You talked about evolving. You're not evolving. You're doing the same. You're doing the same things that aren't working. And Paul, you talked about going to Bellingham? Go 25 miles east and ask them what they're doing. Because this isn't, and we don't have, as far as housing, we have some of the lowest housing. If you have a minimum wage job in Spokane, you can afford an apartment. And buying houses, first-time homebuyers, yeah, that's, we do not have that, and we don't have a homeless, or I'm sorry, housing. We have a fentanyl problem. These people are not people that lost their apartments. They're people addicted to fentanyl. And maybe they had apartments, but because of their addiction, they were no longer able to, I mean, you lose everything, and...
Thank you, Christine. Your time is up. Earl Moore, Derek Azaro, and Dr. Randall Hansen, if he's still in the house.
Hi, council. I'm Earl Moore, District Three. How many businesses have closed in downtown in the past few years? Do you believe Spokane is a safe and clean city? How are you helping those who live in our city streets here in Spokane? How many people die every day on our streets? Do we as a city have the money to provide for all that come to us because we offer many freebies with no accountability? How much money have you provided to improve the lives of our street people with no noticeable change? Why would a council member resign due to health reasons and then take a full-time job in the mayor's office? Are you here tonight on this council honoring the will of the people? Do you know that 28% of all available office space in downtown Spokane is empty? Are you aware that your policies are diminishing the values of downtown properties? And do you wonder if that decreases tax revenue in our city? I do. How many times have you changed Prop One now, or rather, Prop None? And why would you vote to allow illegal immigrants in our city? My mother is native. I'm legal. How many of you are? I mean, if you really want to get nitty-gritty here, here is a quote to you good people on this council. "All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing." That's Edmund Burke. We talk about trust. My trust is in the Lord, Proverbs 3:5, not, not any one of you here. And I, I thank you for your service, but I'm very disappointed and oftentimes ashamed of what is happening in my city. Remember when it used to be vibrant? Remember when town-town was fun? Remember when we had stores and people came down with their children and walked the streets and shopped? They don't do that anymore.
Thank you, Derek Azaro, Catherine Campbell, Ari Dean.
Derek Azaro, here supporting the children of Spokane. I fought to get the water department to get rid of their dirt pile. My council members did that. So as far as trust goes and lying, it's all a lie. That dirt pile is back, and to cover it up, the water department brought in big containers and lined them up, boxcars, right? Then they turned around and they painted huge pictures down the whole thing. It looks just awful. And one of the pictures is a giant bird. What that bird is, is a phoenix rising from the flame. A powerful metaphor, resilience and triumph over adversity, is symbolizing a situation where something has been completely destroyed or defeated, but then manages to reborn stronger and more powerful than before. This rebirth is often associated with overcoming challenges, achieving a fresh start. That is a major slap in the face to the residents on Marietta Avenue and also the Logan District, and these two council members that went through the whole legal process and told the water department to quit doing that. Marlene Feist, when this first thing opened up, she lied to my neighbor and told her there was no dirt pile in the city like that. This is what she oversees. That dirt pile is back, and I'm, I'm expecting the sidewalk to be done from Marietta all the way down to the end of the street. Are you going to, are you going to renege on that too and take the money away when it comes up? I know it's been deferred until next year, but here's this giant bird painted on the side of those cars, the boxes. It should be maybe a middle finger, because that's what that is. It's giving the neighborhood a bird. It is not reborn or anything else. That's a total insult to all the effort that I made and these two made to fight for that and the children that go to Yashaura School that walk down that street. Drive over there and take a look at it. Nothing, it looks like ghetto, total ghetto. There's a brand-new house just got built across the street on Columbus Street. It's going to be up for sale. I can imagine a realtor's coming there with people and going, what is that?
Is Catherine Campbell in the house? Lawrence Brown is gone. Dr. Randall Hansen? Ari Dean? Sunshine? Are you speaking in open forum?
Me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you're up. I was calling, but no one responded, so please come on down.
My turn. Sunshine Wigan, I was born in Spokane, raised in Santa Cruz, California, Colville. So I've flopped all around the U.S. on the West Coast, seen a lot of different projects, a lot of different things. This weekend, I've been found dead three times. 5:00 AM, I was found dead by a security guard that checks on me almost daily. He revived me. So that's why I'm here tonight. I have long-term health effects from homelessness, and I'm going to pass away from them. I can't save my Hope Girls that are out on the streets tonight with the, you guys took the funding away. You guys said we had three more years' worth, and now it's gone. So that's 58 people. And I keep saying that it's 57 because I can't not remember the women that were in those beds that are dead now, that fought for those beds. Most of my friends, us that fought for those beds to be made for us. We are complexly mentally ill. We come out of prison systems. We come out of domestic violence. We support the LBGQ. We keep them safe because they were getting killed, all that. And this is very devastating. I'm going, you guys have made a system I cannot get in your shelter system at all. So I will be passing away in my car. You guys wrote my destiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Jenny Hansen? Richard Boekuk? Ryle Pena? Come on down.
Ryle Pena, District Two. Yeah, that's a pretty sight, them containers. Thank that I'm blind, that I cannot see. Dirt pile. I live in that neighborhood. It's not safe for kids. I can't even get a, God, excuse me. Our gosh darn, because I don't want to be offending individuals sitting. For kids' safety, whether they're black, brown, Asian, white, or Mexican, they got to dodge cars. Hamilton, it's a speedway, 60 miles an hour. Kids can't even cross, but yet, on spring, you put on two lights, blinkers for people to walk safely. From Mission to Thor on Nora, you tore out all damn handicap sidewalks there and replaced them with brand-new ones. There wasn't nothing wrong with the old ones, but I still can't get a $3,000 crosswalk painted for kids' safety so they can walk to school. It took me six months to get rid of a motorhome that was parked illegally with a extension cord going down a half a block of an alley plugged into a house. Well, by the way, it took two individuals here to help me, Fire Marshal, Avista, and everybody else that I got a hold of, because I've asked five other members to come down and look at this issue, and nobody paid little squat about what I thought was important. But then you all say, just let us know, and we'll come and see you.
Thank you, Derek. Your time is up.
And nothing happened. Now they're still on Jackson and moving.
Your time is up. Bill Conley?
Doing the same thing.
Bill Conley and Curtis Graham and Julie Carpenter, if she's still in the house.
Hi, thank you again for letting me speak. I heard a lot tonight. One thing I've noticed is if we study history, we might not repeat its mistakes. Well, you guys have history teachers somewhere. Why don't you see if they can bring that up? What I'm talking about is other towns are doing better, and the comment again tonight was made, if not there, where? Well, it, it's more important to think, what are we doing? What can we do better? Number one would be getting rid of the low-barrier type housing. We have, you need to have your, think of your brother, not as being your brother's keeper, but be your brother's brother. It's time to think in terms of helping them get off of the, the addiction. I know the scourge. I have it in my family. I've been in Spokane all my life. Well, I disappeared for 20 years over to Issaquah, but I've been here four generations, and I have 11 grandchildren and, and a great-grandchild here. I'm, I'm ready to see our seventh generation be proud of what we're doing today. In order to do that, we need to help lift these people out of where they're at, not have low barrier and no barrier. Even though she was here tonight, it's cute to say something nice to her, but it's not the appropriate kind of care to be given. We need to have, challenge our Catholic charities and the other organizations to improve their success rate. Challenge them. You're giving them money, challenge them.
Thank you. Julie?
My name is Julie Carpenter, and as I said before, Jonathan Bingle is my representative. What I'd like to say to each one of you tonight is, before we came to the meeting tonight, when we had dinner with friends, we said a prayer for everyone on this council. And I want you to know that you had a full audience here. Everybody has their own vision of how they'd like to see the city go, in what direction. You all have your feelings on what you'd like to do and see. You guys are working hard behind the scenes, but for me, as a first-time person coming, it feels like you did not listen. Ms. Navarro, Ms. Klitschke, Mr. Zepone, Mr. Dillon, and Ms. Wilkerson, you guys, I don't feel like you listened to us about the camping ordinance. Mr. Bingle brought up, which I didn't know you could do, why couldn't you have revoted in Prop One minus whatever needed to be taken out of it? I don't understand that. I don't know your process, but I got to tell you, I was dumbstruck. I could not believe that you passed that when you had all these people test, talking. It's sad. You know, I graduated from Rogers High School almost 50 years ago. I know, like Jonathan said, when you get served a hot dog and hash browns, and that's what you did to these people tonight. And it's sad, and I don't know how it can be fixed, because it doesn't, I mean, I know you listened, but it doesn't feel like you did. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Graham? Then the last one is Dave, if he's going to speak in open forum. I think he passes. All right, thank you all. Oh, you are coming, Dave.
You're just saving the best for last. As I said last week, I was going to bring these. These are both rubber bullets. This one was fired during the George Floyd protest. It cracked two ribs. It got caught up in a guy's shirt. 10 minutes later, he handed it to me and said, show them this. You see this? That cracks two ribs. But this one, this will break a rib and send it into a lung. This is less than lethal. This is more lethal. Five years difference. We've gone downhill. If anybody would like to, excuse me, check these out, I'd be happy to share it with you. But this is what they're currently using right here. That's hard plastic. That is not foam. This is foam. Breaks, kills. That's the difference, plain and simple. I grew up listening to a county coroner. My best two buddies, he was their dad. My dad was asked, is it okay if Dave listens to some of our gory conversations? And my dad said, you better invite him in, otherwise he's going to stand around the corner and listen. And sure enough, I learned a lot about what stuff like this does to the body in just general conversations over the course of two, three years. And let me tell you, this is a killer. This one fortunately, you see it's got a rub spot here? It was bounced off of a sidewalk or a street. This one was not bounced off that. If this thing goes straight into a crowd like this one did, this will kill people. Hits them in the face and the neck. Ah, I see.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our legislative agenda. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I'll entertain a motion. We move to second. All in favor, please, entertain by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions? We, we are adjourned. Thank you all. There is no council next week due to the Fourth of July. We return on July 14.